So what we will do, whoa, I do that every time. It's not your fault, it's me too close to it, right? So, good evening, everyone. I know Dr. Wyatt had mentioned that he was running a little late. And so, we do have a quorum and we are committed to, we may even, you know, get through things sooner, but we're committed to at least being done at 6 o'clock. So, we will formally open up our board meeting, which means we will open up our board meeting and we will have the pledge.
So, I just wanted to clarify, is this a board meeting or is this a workshop?
This is a workshop, but it's gonna go all the way through.
Oh, okay, just making sure.
Yeah. All right.
Right hand over your heart.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Dr. Hill, America the Beautiful, please. No, not really, I'm just joking, I just promise you, I'm joking. Okay, well, thank you so much, Teri, for being here. And for those that are viewing, this is our kind of part two. We have went through our norms. And now, as discussed, we're gonna look at our protocols again. And I'm gonna turn it over to you, Ms. Teri.
Start with anonymous information. And again, the reason why we're doing this work is we're creating a governance handbook. Got roles and responsibilities. And now, we're gonna finish up with the last few of our protocols. And again, I will send this document to you after the edits are completed and you can adopt in an open board meeting. So, if you could open that. Start with anonymous information. So, I'm gonna read this and then we'll discuss anonymous information. Every effort will be made by the San Bernardino City Unified School District Governance Team and employees to use their due upon complaint procedures. Thus, if the person sharing information with us follow the acceptable San Bernardino Unified School District complaint procedures. Talking about while, you know, in your travels, going to the grocery store, visiting school sites, parents might approach you with complaints. So, our job as board members is really to point them in the right direction. And so, this is just talking about that you will show them. Usually, it's on the website, Doc, your complaint procedure is on the website.
Yeah.
So, tell them about that complaint procedure and direct in there. Any questions or edits on that?
I think they're, not talking about the edits, but just for us to be clear, because I know Ms. Rosales Medina brought this up at our, I think, our last board meeting, or prior to that, she had reached out. And then, also, I went to the website to make sure that that's where we, in fact, indeed, do direct, you know, everyone to if there's a complaint.
Any questions or comments or reflections on that?
No.
And thank you, Ms. Rogers, for noting that.
Do we, should we put, is it called something in particular? Should we name it or should we just kind of edit that in there so we know?
It's a Uniform Complaint Procedure. And that's up there, the UCP process. So, you can add that in there, we can work with Teri offline.
Why, we're talking about policy 1313?
The anonymous information?
No.
No. Oh, no, the second page, turn to the next one, at the top.
Yeah, we're starting with this document. I, this is a new policy that CSBA just created, policy 1313 civility. And I thought we could talk about that after we're done with our protocols.
So, we've gone over...
The first page.
The first page.
But that was at the last meeting.
Yeah, I have the edits. And then, we're gonna complete going through the rest of the protocols. And then, as I said, I'll create a document with the edits. I'll send it back to you, you can make sure I completed it correctly. And then, adopt at an open board meeting.
And are these the items that we chose or someone else chose them?
So, this is just a list of the most common protocols that boards adopt. So, this is the list that I usually work with. We can add or edit if you don't feel that one is relevant, we can take it out.
Well, I had asked Karen to, I think you all got the...
Yeah, I have pulled them.
The 2014 and 2016. And I thought she would have them, but I just asked her to bring them so that we could look at them.
And those, yeah, go ahead, because I had looked at those as well. And they are, but they're actually more norms than our protocols. We named them protocols, but...
Yeah. So, then the protocols, just to clarify, so does this, you said the governing team protocols, does every district have one of these? Mostly, yeah, most districts, most districts, well, not every thousand districts in California. Okay, that's what I'm asking, do all school districts have this? Yeah. No, no, they don't. Probably eighty to ninety percent have governance handbooks. Okay. That outline their protocols. Just wanted to find out if all school districts follow this. Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, Maida, these are the ones that we came up together with and operated under in 2014 and 2016.
Which is a different process, so you can understand is that we never had anyone kind of... Already come up with a suggestion versus us really getting together and coming up with our own suggestion. Writing us a template, essentially. And we're gonna take and put as we see fit. So, can you explain very briefly to me the difference between protocols and... Your document that you created, it says board and superintendent protocols. They're really talking about how you behave at meetings. So, protocols, I always define as, if you want to go to visit a school site, what is the procedure you follow as board members? These are more talking about how you treat each other and the way you behave at meetings. And where protocols go through confidentiality, visiting school sites, onboarding new trustees. So, they're a little bit more in-depth than norms are.
You're calling what we call protocols norms?
Is there a reason that there's a... Our protocols are not our protocols, even though we're considering and calling it protocols. You are defining our protocols as not being protocols, but are norms. So, these, who's to say that these are protocols? On us that our protocols, what we consider protocols is not protocols. So, I'm looking at this document with the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, those are norms. And so, when I look at the document 1 through 13, those are protocols and they merge with these. You'll see lots of similarities between 1 through 13 and the document I gave you. But we called it protocols. But what you're trying to say is that what we considered protocols, you're telling us that they were, no, they're not protocols, because they're written right here, that this could have been a short version of protocols, but you're saying that it's not qualified by the state standard as a protocol. These are not, these are more norms. And again, 1 through 13 are protocols.
Are protocols.
Right. And so, what we can do is go through the list that I gave you and we can integrate the 1 through 13 with this document, so it will reflect your earlier work and your new work. Questions before we get going?
Well, my question, my comment is, we're trying to align ourselves with the California... Yeah, when we go to the conference, the workshops we do before the BIC conference and I know Ms. Medina and of course, Ms. Sebala, you all know.
Rogers, I've been here longer than Rogers.
Well, have you gone?
No, she was, that's what she was referring to, she wasn't referring to length of...
Yeah, I'm talking about when we go to, I'm not talking about attending the conference, I'm talking about going into the delegates meeting. And that's where a lot of this is discussed. And we try to align with all the districts that's there.
So, then, are we in agreements as a board? That consensus that we want to follow the CBS, as California School Boards Association's protocol?
Well, I would like to integrate the, what we did in 2014, because those are protocols, protocols, and they do align with CSBA.
Yeah, and I think that's a great idea.
Right.
I think that's a great idea, because you don't want to throw away the good work that you've done and this is good work.
And this is, and these guided us and that's how we were collaborative. And that was how we maintained civility and respect for each other, so.
Okay. And that's what we can do, if, whatever your pleasure is, I thought what we could do is go through the document that I gave you and then I can integrate, like you said, both of them together.
For example, like what you just said, like the anonymous information. So, if I was a brand-new board member, you know, this gives me a tool that I can now go to and find it. As before, it's not, that wasn't in there. So, again, what we're just saying was if we take these two and then add, or, you know, we can adopt all of them, or we can adopt some of them, or we can adopt none of them. But that just even stuck out with me right there, because when Abigail, when you, or Ms. Rosales Medina, when you first asked me that, I knew where to look, but I wasn't sure. So, I need to know, you know, be able to look in something and say, okay, that's where I go find that as a board member, because it's hard sometimes to go and navigate the whole website and try to find everything. If I don't know what I'm looking for.
The wonderful thing about having a governance handbook is it's a great onboarding tool for your new trustees, right? Because in there lives roles and responsibilities, norms, protocols. And it's a, like I said, good document just to review. And even as, you know, you've been a trustee for a while, just keeping each other accountable on the norms and protocols that you've agreed to. Comments, questions? Yeah, no, I guess it's just the second one with the chain of command is more of a directive. And I don't feel uncomfortable. A little uncomfortable right now, because I haven't gone through it yet, you're right, we should wait.
Yeah.
Okay. Then I'll go ahead and wait. When we talk about the chain of command, it's really, you know, just directing parents to the correct person if they have a problem or a question or a concern, right? Sometimes, sometimes, or the public like to jump to board members instead of like, if their child has a problem with a teacher, go to the teacher first, then go to the principal. And just going through that chain of command. And it just helps parents keep it clear in their mind, too, of what needs to be done. Yeah, so like I had mentioned, it's more of a, and you just mentioned it yourself, it's a directive. It's more of a direction. So, the thing is that, even before becoming a school board member, I, one of the problems was is that, you know, I don't have connections with, you know, maybe, I didn't have connections with board members, I didn't have connections with certain individuals. And so, I go to whomever I can when it comes to maybe another parent that has a connection. So, when you're talking about that, you know, no, but this, it's like you're confusing me now that I'm reading it. It's not what we're reading. It says, "We recognize that the Governance Board of Trustees only has one employee, the superintendent." It's highlighted and bolded. "We value the chain of command of our district." So, you just, right now, you just said something, that's why it kind of threw me off. You mentioned parents, you mentioned public comments. This one doesn't have to do with that. It's more, in the first sentence, it has to do with the superintendent. The second sentence, "We will redirect our stakeholders to the correct person to speak with about situations." So... I guess my concern with that one is more on the first sentence, when it comes to more of a directive, as highlighted, bolded in a different color, the superintendent. And so, that's one of the premises of governance, that as a school board, we really have only one employee and that's the superintendent. And that's what it's talking about. It's just saying that as school board members, we can't, we can't fix people's problems, but we can help direct them in the correct direction of the person that they need to talk to, right? So, if, as a parent, if I have a problem with my student's teacher, that's the first place I need to go. And it's just like educating the public on the right place to go when they do have a concern or question. But this is for board members. And so, will the public get access to this document, so where they can see it at every school site? I don't understand. So, everyone would have access to it? But it's not intended, let me see, the front. Governance Team Protocols for San Bernardino, okay. So, what I'm trying to refer is that you're saying that this would be a guide for parents and public employees, or, I mean, public, community individuals. It's a guide for school board members. Yes, but what I'm saying is that you're just saying will be accessed online on the website, but yet, this is specifically for governance. Well, actually, it's your choice. Once we create this document, if you'd like to put it on your website, you can. There's nothing that says that you have to, but it's kind of a good, I like it because it's a model of leadership, right? It lets people know how things are gonna go in the district and kind of lets them know expectations. And a lot of times, public don't understand the roles of school board members. So, this just gives them more information of what we do in our job. Yeah, it just creates more of a hierarchy. And I've always had problems with hierarchies when it comes to individuals in communicating. I get communications from parents and individuals, and I honestly don't refer them to the superintendent. I refer them to Dr. Rogers, the superintendent, as one of those in the text, and Dr. Wyatt. You know, because I personally don't have a great relationship with the superintendent. So, this one only leaves it to me as I have to, as a directive, go to only the superintendent. No, and, and I'm sorry, if it's not clear. It's saying that you'll respect the chain of command. So, like I said, if you're talking to a parent and they have a problem with their student and maybe in the classroom with their teacher, that you direct them to try to solve the problem at the lowest level possible, right? So, you go, that parent should go to the teacher and talk to the teacher about the difficulty before they go to the principal or before they go to the board. So, you see what I'm saying, that they need to communicate with the teacher if they're having a problem with the teacher and not go above that before they try to solve the problem with the teacher. Then what's the intention for the superintendent to be highlighted and in separate, kind of like a bold? What was the intention for that, for just to make sure that we understood? Yeah, I think the intention is understanding that as a board member, we don't, we don't, we're not in the day-to-day workings of the school district. So, our only employee is the superintendent, so we... You're not understanding. It's like, it goes back to as a directive, the way you communicate, it, yeah, you're not understanding, I'm sorry.
Okay, and we'll come back if you want to clarify, Dr. Hill?
Yeah, thank you. The superintendent is the one who can fix it, no one else. You know, parents can call us, teachers can call us, students can call us. Bottom line, we can't fix anything. We have to pass it on to somebody. But I don't think you should shake your head. Remember, I worked in this district for thirty-two years.
No, I wouldn't refer to that.
Okay, but the bottom line is, even when I was the principal in this district and parents came to me, they would say, "What's my protocol?" If that's not resolved, then you can go to the superintendent. If that's not resolved, then you go to the board. And so, they always use that. And this information. But I get calls probably every day, if not every other day, from somebody with some kind of... I, I'm sorry, Gwen and Scott, I don't really go through you.
Right, but you have a good communication with him, you have a good relations with him, right?
Well, only because I chose to have a good relationship with him.
Not because I chose, because the way he would speak to me, so.
Okay, well, you know...
Hold on a second.
No, but I think she's clarified.
Okay, I'm hearing, I'm hearing one at a time, then we'll bring some clarity on what was just said.
I'd like to say something.
Okay, and we got an order, but Dr. Hill, I'm waiting to finish.
Well, that's pretty much, and I don't know if I need to respond, because, you know, to each our own. And even when I was assistant superintendent for county schools, there were a couple of board members that I didn't really necessarily want to talk to, you know, on a regular basis, but I respected them as a board member. And I knew that they were the boss of the superintendent. I just can't even imagine being on the board and not having a relationship unless, you know, unless you say, "I'm trying to build this relationship and it's not happening." But, but you know, I strongly suggest you work on that, because it would be difficult.
So, it's only I? So, I need to work on that?
You're a board member.
Yeah, so I, okay.
Yeah, yeah. He's your employee.
So, but see, what you don't understand, it's the way the communication only happens on one side. So, anyways, I'm not gonna go into it, because I'm not gonna go into it, but there's more to it. And I chose not to, that's why I'm doing it more of a respectful way in communicating with Dr. Rogers and Dr. Wyatt.
Okay.
And that way, for me, it's just a better process.
And maybe we need to look at, maybe when we do our retreat, we look at a little bit more at leadership, because, again, you're his boss.
It doesn't, the way he, yeah, it doesn't, when we talk, when we've talked before, it was the contrary. He acted like he was my boss, so.
So, 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 so what I'm gonna ask, and I see we already are there, right? And I'm going to ask us to really be professional and courteous to each other when we're having the conversations. Some of it are one-on-ones, that's what we are trying to encourage. But, again, we need to get through these protocols, so we can also define our work, our roles as board members, and then separate the other side of it. The other thing is, is that if we look at, because I know we kind of suggested, we brought, merged them together, I think maybe the wording of chain of command at the top, it might be the disturbing part problem.
And that's what it is.
And so, let me just finish and just tell you, because if we look at our protocols, we went immediately to the word complaints. And we said, "All complaints made to a board member by a citizen or a member of the staff is to be referred directly to the superintendent, who is to resolve it according to the board policy, making certain all board members are informed." Pretty much the same thing, we just worded it, we didn't put in the chain of command. But I want to just remind the board members, this is just a, this is a sample document of what some others felt that maybe it was okay to entitle or title these this way, but we can change it. Ms. Sabias, and then we'll go to you, Dr. Flores.
As I said, like an onboarding tool, so if I were to first come in, okay, you know, and I read this, what is the chain of command, it's just saying like, okay, I recognize that Governance Board of Trustees only has one employee, right? So, the way I'm reading that is very like straightforward, right? It's not implying, or to me, it's not implying anything, it's just very directly saying, "I, as a new trustee, only have one employee. So, therefore, I shouldn't contact other employees as if they were my employees, because I only have one according to the role that we perform." So, that's how I'm understanding it, but I do see what you're saying in terms of the way it's worded.
Yeah.
So, which, which part specifically? So, then I guess I'm glad that...
Title.
Yeah, it's just changing, it's not just the title, it's the, actually changing the whole language to meet, to kind of match number two, which it is just, and that's what I was trying to clarify with her, it's the way, for me personally, you took it differently, I took it differently in the sense of the way they had it, you know, highlighted different color, the superintendent bolded with a period right next to it. So, the statement was more of a directive versus having the language in number two in the 2014 language, which it kind of flows, it's not, I mean, it's insinuating the same thing, but it's all about how it's worded and the sentence, the way it's framed. And we could definitely use two instead of chain of command. This is your document and this reflects your feelings. So, if you like the language in number two better, we can go with that.
Dr. Flores?
Actually, if we were to use the chain of command, the board is the last line of command. We are the ones that make the final decisions, not the superintendent. And all my years as a school board member, if parents come to me, I always direct them first to their teacher, then their principal, if they can resolve the issue and it's bigger, then it goes to the superintendent, who then will delegate whoever to deal with the issue, right? And that's the way I've operated all the time, and it's customary. I do have a problem with the language as well. And it shouldn't be chain of command, because we are, the board is the last line of command. And yes, superintendent is our only employee, and the majority of the board does direct him. And so, I also agree with Ms. Medina in terms of not using that language at all.
Well, you described it beautifully, Dr. Flores, of, you know, the way it works in a district. So, if it's good with everyone, we can go with number two instead of chain of command. Is that good? All in agreement?
Yes, all in agreement.
So, just to be clear, just to follow, I guess, the document, what will be the new title here?
I wouldn't put chain of command, maybe we could put complaint procedure? We already have a complaint, don't we? Well, we talked about complaint procedures as a uniform...
Anonymous, the first one, is anonymous. But then, if we get to the third one, is complaint inquiry reporting? So, there's some merging?
Yeah, I can put them together, you know, because we are talking about how a parent communicates a complaint to the right person and gets it to the right department.
communicates a complaint to the right person and gets it to the right department or teacher or wherever they have the problem, right?
So just so I'm clear, we're completely removing chain of command and we're inserting number two, and it's going to go under complaint and inquiry reporting now?
That is the will of the board. Or it could be communications, I don't know if that is another- We do have communications the farther we go down. So what we can do is just, I can put a number two next to the chain of command, and we can come back and revisit it after we go through the communication pieces. Dr. Flores?
Can you define the difference between a uniform complaint and just a, a, a parent complaining about, you know, their child or working with the teacher, principal?
So to me, a uniform complaint, you know, when they use that procedure, it's kind of more serious, right?
I want it so that Myra hears it, yeah.
Yeah, and so what we try to do is solve problems at the lowest level, right? We're trying to build capacity and give agency to our parents to solve these problems. So that's why we have these conversations as board members, right? Is to show them the way to help their student the best they can.
So what is a uniform complaint?
So a uniform complaint procedure would be something more serious that didn't get solved at the lowest level, right? So if, if a parent feels like they didn't solve the problem with the teacher that they were having with their student, then it could go to the principal, then it could go to the superintendent, and then they could, you know, file that uniform complaint procedure. But hopefully, we're getting things solved at the lowest level. And that's what, that's what our aim is.
Okay, so a uniform complaint is, is for everyone or just parents or just staff?
Um, so there, you, parents can use it. Personnel has their own complaint procedure, HR has their own complaint procedure. So that, that would be the difference here. Thank you.
I appreciate it. I'll put something in the Friday update and bring some clarity to it.
And also, a uniform complaint, it could be a parent or a community member alleging discrimination. You know, it can be, you know, unequitable treatment, you know, by an employee. It can be persistent disrespect, you know, of, 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 of a particular group of people.
So it usually rises to that level, Dr. Flores?
Yeah, and it can also be even in special ed when, you know, they're not following through, they can file a uniform complaint.
Any other clarifications or comments? That I'll change that, ooh, hit the, I'll change that language to reflect number two. Okay, and so now going down to the one below, complaint and inquiry reporting, it's kind of what we just talked about, right? As, as board members, we're out in the community, and we deal with a lot of, you know, parents, different stakeholders. And so the information that we gather that way, it's just saying that, you know, we'll inform and give a heads up to the superintendent of what you hear in the community. Really, I describe board members as ambassadors for the district, right? We're at school sites, we're going to back-to-school nights, we're engaging in all different kinds of activities in the district. So when we talk to someone and we hear maybe disturbing news, that we'll get that information to the superintendent. Or you could also get it to the board president, who could give it to the board, to the superintendent if that's not to your liking. Any change of language in that?
So just for clarity, really quickly, when it says agreed upon format, do we have that? What is that format?
Format would just be however you want to communicate that to the superintendent, if it's in an email, if it's in a phone call, you know, or you could leave it up to the individual board member, what they're comfortable with.
Okay, so we don't have to specify anything?
Well, it, it would be good to have a, a procedure, you know, and I know we're having a little bit of difference of opinion, but it's, the, the most important thing is that the superintendent gets the information, right? So it's disseminated to the proper people. And I'll give you, give you an example, even for us that have been here, there have been a lot of people retiring and a lot of positions have, you know, just shifted or what have you. And sometimes we don't always know who that person is that's doing that oversight, but the superintendent does. And so if we're making that effort to make sure the superintendent is aware of any and all complaints, I mean, it, it shouldn't be anything, you know, outside of it being the superintendent, of course. But, you know, it's, it, we, we just need to, you know, shore that up, that we know that it's being given, so then we can then follow up and know if it was resolved or not or hear.
And I think it goes to, I'll, I'll be real quick, Dr. Flores, is, you know, we're elected as an individual and we govern as, govern as a team, right? So it, it's hard because as a, when I was first on my board, you know, people would come to me with a complaint or a problem, and I'd be like, "How can I fix that?" And I really had to make that transition in my mind, that we fix it as a team, fix it collaboratively. So that's, that's what it's referring to, to, Dr. Flores, I'm sorry.
Sometimes, you know, this has happened in the past, there are incidences that require immediate attention. So I will also copy the assistant superintendent along with the superintendent, because I don't know where the superintendent is. You know, say there's a shooting, say there's, you know, disturbance or something. I don't, I don't text the, the principal, but I do text the assistant superintendent at Student Services as well as Mr. Irvin. And sometimes I text you, Gwen, as well. So just to advise them that it's like urgent, and I'll put urgent on there, because I, you know, I don't, I don't know. And I do tell them, "Call 11911" or, you know, make sure-
Let me unsee.
All of that, yeah. But those are rare.
So again, the communication, the superintendent should be involved in the communication-
Right.
Is pretty much what we're seeing. It is, it is, you know, of course, I'm on some and, you know, not on some, and Dr. Wyatt may be on, or whoever, maybe I'll say the president, the board president, may be on those communication exchanges, but the superintendent is the one, I know, definitely, I, I hate to say for me, but I'm saying for us, because that's our role, the person that I'm going to go to and say, "Did you get it done?", you know, versus calling the other staff, which are, which, as has already been said, are not our staff.
So, so the reason why I ask is because, and hearing Dr. Flores, you know, on, there's some issues that are more, getting more easier. But there's some things that are 911 type, but there's other things that are maybe not 911 per se, but are still, can't maybe necessarily wait until we all get together. So really differentiating those, and I can think of a really good example from the short time that I've been on here. I, I don't want to get into the conversation of that topic, though, because it's not, you know, we're not going to have conversations, it's not on the agenda or whatnot. But for instance, like transportation, right? And, and so that's an example of not a 911, but it's an example of any prompt attention. So it's trying to understand, how do we deal with that?
Okay, so what I do, a- again, is, and I think we all have kind of said it, the soup, because I know who's transportation, so again, if a new board, you may not know that, because I know it was a long time, I don't know that. And there's some new people right now that I used to, and they're not there anymore.
Staff changes.
But staff changes, you know, in, in certain areas that we would always be communicating. But it's the superintendent, similar to what Dr. Flores said, it is still going to be the superintendent. If I know that the person that's in transportation, I'm putting that person on the email as well. And then I even, the deputy superintendent, I communicate, because the deputy superintendent is also the second in, in, you know, command, if you will, that one of them, you know, they all can't be in it. Now, for example, if you say, because that's transportation, I've done the same thing when it's an issue of emergency, I'll put Chief Paleno on there, because I know, okay, yeah, he will dispatch, and out of the three, one of them is going to know. I don't, I don't call, it's either emails and texts is, is how I do it. So my recommendation is, if we know who's inclusive of it, like if it's Student Services or, you know, you add the superintendent along with that person that does the oversight. And I think that is also another reason why it was so important for us to keep asking for what the chain of command was, because you can go and look and see who's over that particular department as we learn, if something happened. As we, you know, then we'll know, like, oh, it's transportation, I know to put Maria on there, I know to put superintendent on there in, in addition. Or if you, if, you know, if you're calling person two, we should have all the numbers as well to be able to do that. But that's what I'm saying, whatever, who's ever over the area of concern, but the superintendent, and, and I personally think the, the deputy superintendent should be on it as well.
Yeah, and that, and that's kind of, I, I agree with that. I think the superintendent should always be in the loop. And then, "Good afternoon."
Thank you.
Um, you know, I, I believe that the superintendent should always be notified, and then like Dr. Rogers said, add the person that's over the issue that you're talking
So we're on-
So is that, okay, does that make sense to you or?
It does. I, I think, I think we do need to further discuss, I think, I don't want to- I reach out to the superintendent about an issue that's coming up, and then ICC, whatever else, assistant superintendent. I guess what happens, right? What gets done about it? It's, it's kind of like more about the question that I'm having.
So our, I, I have to say, it has been a great communication of these Friday updates, right? Because that question was always an issue. Unless you were a person like me, I would follow up, I would ask, you know, hey, was that resolved? And just made an established, my own established protocol, so I can take it off my list. Now, I know that when I put on the superintendent and the other person that's handling it, they will even ask, they've asked, "Do you want a follow-up on it once we get it?" And many of them will say, "Okay, I call this person," or "I'll be CC'd on the email that I forward." That's why I kind of like the email procedure, but we really haven't had one. But what's in place now is that if you get a, I see things that people call you about, I see things that people call Dr. Flores about, and it's in there, and that's the follow-up. Now, again, the person that would know the follow-up is the person that made it, but we see who that is in there. So that, that to me is what's new and has been working of what happens, because we find out what happens on that Friday update, but you may find out sooner if you follow up, but we'll all know, Dr. Flores.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I, every, anytime I've done it, they follow up immediately to let me know that they followed up, because I don't want to wait for the Friday update. I want to know what, what was done, because it's, it's important, you know? So I did immediately.
And Dr. Flores, I think that's a good way to kind of talk about that, is closing the loop, right? After you give someone the information, what happens with that? So you are definitely allowed to close the loop and say, "Hey, what happened with this incident?"
And, and I'm one board member, but it's supposed to be then communicated to all board members, what, what I inquired about and how it was resolved.
And that's exactly what we get on a Friday update.
So I, 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 but I want to know, because I, I want to know if that parent or that situation was resolved.
And they do. I mean, via email is usually better, because you get the whole, you get it back.
I like texts, because it's more immediate.
And whichever, you know, because we all have different preferences, but I think I said it the first time, we could use text message, or you can use email, that way you have the information back. You know that it was done and resolved.
Any other questions or comments on that? Clarifications? Okay. All right, if we can move to the next one, confidentiality. Confidentiality is vital to the health of our organization. We recognize that items discussed in closed session, as provided for in the Brown Act, are confidential. We take this seriously and commit to maintaining the integrity of the process. Board by law, 9011. And so this is just talking, and remember, you know, for trustees such as Mr. Tillman, who's been a board member for a long time, you know, we kind of know this, but we, we have to understand that this is an onboarding tool for new board members, too, so they understand the protocols and what's going on in the district. So, again, talking about confidentiality and how important it is to keep what happens in closed session, in closed session.
Dr. Hill?
Yeah, and, and that's good, and we, we are all aware of that, whether you've been on the board twenty years or two days, that it should be confidential. So we all know that. But we all know, also know there are some leaks out there. So when we talk about, we take this seriously. What is seriously? Do we talk about what we hear? Do we do that in closed session, that in the community, I heard, I heard this, that, and the other said? How are we going to deal with, how do we deal with it? Because I think in the past, we just kind of ignore it. You know, I know I have, and for ten years, I've heard it, things that leaked, and, but, but how do you deal with it? Again, do you ignore it? Or do you, again, we have one employee, do we share it with the superintendent? This is what I heard? And if I know who said it, I have no problem with saying who said it either.
Right.
You know, so I'm, I'm willing to abide by the confidentiality, but I'm as guilty as everybody else, because I don't say anything about it when I hear it. So what is the recommendation on, we take this seriously? And do we need to, and I guess I'm asking the team now, do we need to put something in here to say? When we hear this, this, this would be a part of our protocol, or this would be a part of norms to report to the superintendent name, if you, if you, you know, if you can validate it, you don't want to get somebody's name out there who didn't say something. But, you know, how do we deal with that?
I, I guess I don't understand what you're, what you're saying, Margaret.
I guess what I'm saying-
What are you saying? Is that my phone?
No, it's just the beep, beep.
Beep back.
He's at-
I guess what I'm saying is- It's when we leave board, closed session, there's some information usually gets out the door by the time we get out the door. And what do we do about it? Do we continue to ignore that? Or do we go to our employee, the superintendent, and say, "This was said," even if we don't know, you know, we don't want to give anybody's name out if we don't know for a fact they said it. But if we do, do we continue doing what we've done in the past?
Well, I think that's gossip, and I don't want to-
I'm not talking about gossip, but when people walk out of closed session and they can say almost word for word what went on, that's not gossip.
Dr. Flores, there's an example, so we had several board meetings ago where we had many dignitaries and community leaders come to speak on issues that some of those wordings were actually coming from closed session. So that's what we have to really look at. So we have to be cautious, definitely cautious.
And holding each other accountable, right? Holding each other accountable, I think, is really important. It could be really damaging to a district, right? We had an incident in my district where we were looking at buying a piece of real estate to buy a school, and it got out of closed session which piece of real estate we were going to buy, and they raised the price by a hundred thousand dollars on that piece of, so, you know, and I always assume good intentions, you know? I don't think people are trying to hurt the district, but sometimes things slip out, and we just have to be careful, Dr. Flores.
Dr. Wyatt, did you?
I wasn't finished.
Go ahead.
I, I don't feel that the superintendent should police us. And I, if that's happening, then it's each board's responsibility to, you know, mind their business.
So, go ahead, Dr. Wyatt.
Can I finish?
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Dr. Wyatt.
And my comment is a response to Dr. Flores. I think minding our business is confidentiality. And if we're not doing that, that's not minding our business. So we don't have to put anything in here, we don't have to change this. We just have to abide by what we say we're gonna do. And that's good enough for me. But I just want to go on record that I'm not asking the superintendent to police or monitor us. But I just want to say, this one board member, anything that I hear from now moving forward, I'm gonna tell. Thank you.
And I think, and Dr. Wyatt, adding to that, the informing is an example of what Terry just said. If it's something like that that's going to cause, the team would have to be prepared to know, how do they counter that? So, yeah, beyond looking at it from the perspective of policing, but just if it's things that's going to be detrimental, and we just dealt with our own, what was happening with litigation of some property and things. And you just have to get that clarity out there and make sure the team that's handling will be able to handle it. Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President. And, you know, I think everybody on this board knows how I feel about this one already. The breaches of confidentiality in closed session, my opinion, is unacceptable. I'll just say that. And I know you all know that because I communicated that. But I want the public to know that as well. Reporting it to the superintendent, I don't know what more he could do, though, in regards to that. And I don't think, really, that's his responsibility to have to, you know, I see, I heard people say, police us. And I don't even know if it'd be fair to him in regards to that. My understanding is when we do have such egregious breaches of confidentiality, that a Brown Act violation should be investigated by the DA's office.
And that's what I was just gonna be, that's what I was just gonna say.
Unfortunately, you know, I think it's tragedy if it comes to that point. But we all know in here that some of these breaches of confidentiality have brought a lot of people into this building to make comments based on what they heard. And they should have never known those things, never. Or they wouldn't even have been here. And they've pointed out people by name. So to me, when we talk about breaches of confidentiality, this is a serious, serious issue that needs to be addressed. In my opinion, it hasn't been addressed appropriately, and it's still damaging to some of us here.
Well, and the hard thing is, once you lose that confidentiality, it's hard to speak your truth in closed session, right? It kind of nulls that conversation because you're like, boy, if I'm gonna talk about this in closed session, is this gonna get out, right? And that's part of the strength of a governance team. We have to trust each other, we have to respect each other. And like Dr. Hill said, we have to hold each other accountable if we hear things out in the community that maybe have slipped out of closed session. And like you said, Dr. Wyatt, it can be referred to the district attorney.
Uniform complaint, district complaint procedures?
No, I don't think, I don't think that qualifies. That would go to the district attorney.
Because I think when I spoke to an attorney, they mentioned that as long as if it's something of a harassment or some type of incident that happened during closed session, then you can, you can. But I guess it's, it would be good to clarify, maybe with another attorney, because that's the information I thought.
With your attorney, yeah. And how I see it is mostly like the example I used with real estate, maybe numbers from negotiations getting out, student personnel, you know, personal student information if you're doing expulsion. So that's what it means to me, and I'm sure you think the same. Anything else on that issue? So, did you want to add language to that, or did you want to leave it as it is?
I support my fellow board members and just add investigation could be done by the DA's office.
Now we go down to site programs or visitations. And this is, this is up to you guys. And I want to hear from you all how it works in your district. So, you know, when a board member goes to visit a site or a classroom, do you let that principal know? Do you let your superintendent know? What does it look like in San Bernardino right now when you make visitations?
I always notify the superintendent that I'm gonna be on one of the sites, that way they are aware. And usually, it's because, a lot of it is because I'm invited. I don't invite myself. It's generally, I'm invited, and then I'll say, like I had it last week, I was invited to a campus, and I'd let the superintendent know.
I'd agree with Madam President, Dr. Rogers, that we do get a lot of invitations for events. And I'll say this on my own behalf. I know that when I get these invitations, I haven't always notified the superintendent. So I'm guilty of not doing that. But, you know, there's times when we go to campuses, a lot of times for our own children, and we just end up on a campus. But I think if we're there for formal visit, you know, business, to look at the program and evaluate maybe not a value for them, just on the observe, it should be...
Are there reflections, comments?
Well, I was gonna say, I'm guilty. Especially pre-pandemic. I was on several campuses all the time. It was by invitation. And I did not always. In fact, I was on a campus yesterday, and I don't think I told the board that I was gonna be on campus. But, so I'm guilty.
Quick email or text, right? Hey, I'm gonna go, I was invited, I'm gonna go to the school site.
It does say as a courtesy, so, I mean, it's, it depends on the situation, like you mentioned. So I don't think so. So here's what's happened to me before when I would notify. That's why I typically don't. If it's something like where a teacher invites, they're gonna do a program. This was back before COVID, so I haven't done that recently. But I would go, and it was nice. The problem is that once you announce, then things shift and change. And all of a sudden, the school sites act, you know, principals really attentive, you know, the environment looks different, they're cleaning up. So it's, for me, it's just better to get it how it is. So that way, it gives me the full picture versus it being kind of staged.
And I think the hard part is, we can never take off our board member's hat. You know, I had four kids go through my district when I was a board member, when I still am. But, you know, so when I walk into a classroom, people have a different attitude to me instead of just as a parent, right? And so I think it's important that we let, you know, the teachers or whatever program we're observing, you know, hey, we just wanted to see what's going on. And just, you know, again, as a courtesy, let that principal know at least, and maybe shoot the superintendent a quick text or, you know? Is that agreeable?
It does say add as a courtesy, so I'm in agreeance with it.
Okay, so now we're going to personal problem solving. If a member of the governance team hears disturbing information that is supposedly come from another member of the governance team, we will act immediately to identify the issue and address the concern with the person or persons involved. We take it to the source of the issue for resolution. The board president may facilitate that conversation. So what this is talking about is just our relationship between each other, right, as board members? You know, I've been board president for quite a while, and I notice certain nuances during my meetings. You know, if I have a board member that's, you know, always asking questions and very chatty, and then all of a sudden, they're very quiet, you know, I might ask that board member the next day, hey, let's go grab a cup of coffee and see what's going on, right? So this is just saying that as a governance team, we're gonna be responsible for fixing our relationships on the team. Any reflections or questions or comments on that? So it's really not one individual responsible for the success of the governance team. Like, it doesn't always fall on the president, but just all of us working together. Are we always gonna agree? No, we're not. You know, I think last time, I kind of described a governance team as an arranged marriage. We didn't ask for the people that we're working with, but we are working with the people. So how do we get along and do the best work we can for the students in our district? Comments or questions on that? It's pretty straightforward. Now we go down to the last one on this page, personal or preferential treatment. We do not seek or accept any special or favored treatment for our children, family, or friends. We expect equal and respectful treatment of all people. We will always model this behavior. So it's really just saying, you know, just because I'm a board member, I'm not gonna ask for preferential treatment in regard to, you know, my students, my friends, anything like that. You know, it's funny, I reflect on my years as a board member. If anything, it was harder on my children, being a board member. So definitely never asked for preferential treatment. But just to be aware, just to be aware of that. Any comments or questions, reflections on that one? We'll go to the next page. And what we're gonna be talking about now is orientation of new board members. And I think this is really important, you know? When we come onto a board, we don't really understand a lot of times our roles and responsibilities. So this is just documenting of what we're gonna do to build capacity in that new trustee, right? What are the steps we're gonna take to get them feeling like they're confident and they have the information they need to be the best board member they can? I don't need, if you want to read that real quick and see if there's anything that you would like to add to that list on onboarding for new trustees?
So the part that it says, as soon as possible, the governance team will abide by an orientation process? What does that look like? What does that mean? Is that like during, like a board meeting? Is that like, when does that occur?
So when you're talking about the process, I think it's really describing the bullets below. It doesn't have to happen all at once. But, you know, just getting those meetings scheduled as soon as you can for that individual just so they understand the processes and protocols of the district.
I would add budget cycles. Familiarize themselves with the budget cycles and policy and procedure.
And we have meet with the CBO, so would you like me to add that to that bullet or make it its own?
Make it a different bullet. Meeting with the CBO is just meeting with them. It isn't like describing the whole process of budget, of the budget process. Because I know Mr. Vios, he was very... Critical is the patterns are, how decisions are made, when are they made? What does, you know, on audit, they actually do what they're...
Anything else? Is there anything from our new board members that you wished you had when you were on-boarded?
So I'll answer that question in a second. So in terms of the budget, I just heard Dr. Flores, that'd probably be the CBO. But in terms of the other, all the other items, who would be the designate or the person designated to provide some of these trainings or information?
Well, I think that would fall to the superintendent to set them up. But I think, you know, he wouldn't disseminate all that information. He would set up a meeting with the CBO, he would set up the meeting with Student Services Director. You know, he, definitely, the superintendent could review major programs and projects, you know, discuss litigation critical issues. So some of that could fall onto the superintendent. And then also, some of it is professional development, you know? So maybe he could schedule, you know, when you're looking at masters in governance or some of the programs that CSBA provides, you know, getting them on that new trustee's schedule to attend. I, what I asked was, is there anything that you would think would have helped you on your onboarding when you're as a new trustee?
Yeah, a lot of information. I mean, I mean, when I came in, I really didn't know even what to expect. I've never been a board member before, right? So you don't know what you don't know. And so I was asking a lot of questions at the time. And I wanted, I did get a chance to meet with the different superintendents at the time. But even then, it kind of felt like meetings were like, well, you ask me, what do you want to know? And again, when you don't know what you don't know, you don't know what to ask. And so I guess mainly what I was seeking was for structure, right? What are the protocols? What are the procedures in place? You know, how do you interact with board members? And how do you, you know, how am I to interact with you, right? What are the systems in place? And I guess I'm still trying to figure it out, that's why we're here.
Right, it's, yeah. And one of the things as board president that I did during the last election is I reached out to the people that were running for office, that were running for school board. And I just said, you know what? If there's anything that I can help you with or clarify or get information for you, please reach out to me. And then after the election, after it was determined who the new trustees were, I met with them individually and just tried to go over some of the things, you know, like the history of what has happened in the district and just give them context of what's going on in the district now. So, but it doesn't have to be the board president, it could be anyone on the board, right? Just, I think it's really good to have a mentor, right? Reach out to a new trustee and just give that friendly hand of, you know what, you're gonna be learning a lot. It's like drinking water out of a fire hose, right, at the beginning? So just building their confidence and helping them. Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you very much. No, I was just, and it's a question, an inquiry to our board. Now, for me, I remember when I came on initially that I was signed up for like the CSBA Brown Act. I don't know if that was mandatory. I can't remember, to be honest with you. But I thought it was very good to go to. You know, it really was a eye-opening experience, like, wow, this is, you know, a lot of us, I think, sometimes we get into it, we don't know exactly what we're getting into and how much there is to it, the complexity of it as well. So for me, it was outstanding training, I'm gonna say that first of all.
Thank you.
I had noticed it's not in here anywhere, and I don't know if it's something that we as a board should expect of each other, let alone new folks that come on the board. So my opinion, I think, you know, Mr. Vios has signed up for the masters in governance as well, and I did that too. So, but that's just a personal expectation. But I don't know if that should be an expectation for all new board members. I just want to put that out there.
Yeah, and that's a decision of the governance team. You know, some boards do require their new members to go through masters in governance. There's also, you know, we're coming up on our big conference, there's orientation for new board members, which gives a quick overview of the different sections of governance, right? So that's a good one to get your feet wet, and then maybe jump into the masters in governance too. So, I mean, it could be a requirement. You could say, you know what, this is an expectation that we have for our new trustees. Or it could just be a suggestion.
And we can add maybe recommended masters in government, just instead of putting how the other ones are reviewed or do. Just recommend it. Because then there's also the other opportunities for the conferences now that are coming back.
Maybe highly recommended?
Yeah, because it's time, you know, so, you know, it just depends on...
Would that one be the one we want to recommend versus the orientation or Brown Act? Because I think those are essential.
Yeah, the orientation one, because that's what...
Mastering in governance takes a little bit of time.
That's why I'm saying, you gotta go, and it could be out of town, it could be different places, right?
So that one is time intensive.
But the other one, you know, the intro one.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Perfect. And you know what I like and what I do? I mean, before I worked for CSBA, is I would attend with my new board member, just even though I've been through the class quite a few times, just to give them support and be able to answer questions for them. And just build the team, right? Build the team is important.
And then another quick, I know that another governing board, I think it was the Water Board, they have a booklet where like it really delineates, like kind of summarizes the history of, you know, the board. I don't know, or the, you know, the organization. I don't know if maybe down the line, that could be... I don't know if maybe down the line that could be something that we can have here, maybe like a booklet of, you know, a historical account, I guess, maybe of the district. I think that that would have been really helpful.
Yeah. And Mr. Vios typically, when I meet with new board members prior to, I do go through a full orientation with each and every new, brand new board member, and that includes a binder that walks them through the history of the district and currently what we've done in the past, what we're currently doing. So I've done that in all my three previous districts. So, but for the next cycle coming up, we'll be doing something similar to that. So, yeah, no worries.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the onboarding of new trustees? Any more
We're about at fif, close to 15 minutes out to follow up.
All right. So we'll go next to handling concerns and complaints from the public and staff, and we've already covered this a little bit, and this is kind of a wordy paragraph. So what I can do with this one is integrate it into the protocol and then send it to you for your review, if that's okay. And then going down to self-monitoring of governance team effectiveness, this is just saying that, you know, you'll participate in a workshop, and definitely, you know, you don't have to use me as a facilitator or CSBA as a facilitator. It's just saying that you'll do self-evaluation and just as a team, you know, talk about what are our challenges, what are our successes, what can we do better, what did we do great, you know, just like our superintendent and staff evaluate each other, just doing that evaluation between the team and just making sure that we understand what our challenges are and celebrating the successes that we've done as a governance team.
And just to ask you, is there an actual format on it? Because it'd be good if we can add that. It's not like we haven't done it before, but we can add that to our upcoming retreat.
There is a form from CSBA, and it doesn't have to be facilitated by, you know, an individual from CSBA, you can do it by yourself. Okay? I'll get that information to you, the template. Okay, now we go down to superintendent evaluation. We recognize the value and importance of a comprehensive and formal evaluation process for the superintendent. We agree to abide by all contract terms and will conduct a formal evaluation of the superintendent each year, and that's Board by law 9000. You know, it's one of our responsibilities as a, as a board member is to evaluate the superintendent. We have a workshop on the ninth, I believe, where we're going to be talking about the superintendent's goals and then doing the evaluation based on those goals at the end of the year. So it's, you know, and per contract, we have to do that as a board member anyways. That's part of our work is evaluating the superintendent. Any questions or comments on that?
My thing is with the word abide, so I'm wondering, I noticed that in our previous protocols, we had, but it's very different. It's more on self-evaluation of the board prior to the superintendent's evaluation. I don't see anything else that's on there that's similar to, to what it's referenced here, kind of use a language, but we agree to abide. It's like, that's, that's, maybe we could transfer, maybe someone can suggest another word, we can switch it out with another word.
Okay.
What about, and also what is already there, Abigail, going back to our, because remember, we can honor this document too, the number 13, is that what you had looked at?
Yeah, I was looking at 13, but the 13 is more on board, self-evaluation, that whole thing.
It just says, I don't know why it says prior to the, we can separate those out.
Yes, and then annual, yes.
I'll make a note of that.
Separate those.
Okay. Now we'll go to the last one on that page, individual board members' requests for action. So this is just talking about making that eye-to-wee transformation, you know, again, we run as an individual, we govern as a team, and just making sure that we're not giving individual requirements or action requests to the superintendent, that we're doing it as a governance team. And I think that's really important, because if you have a five-member or seven-member board, if that superintendent is giving or getting seven different directions or five different directions, it can be very confusing. So making sure that you're talking with that collective voice of agreement on action. Any comments or questions on that? Dr. Flores?
In the past, during our, during our public meeting, we usually request an agenda item, and we get consensus, and then it's decided when it's going to be put on the board agenda. So we have that unspoken agreement, and then it can be any one of us that can ask for an agenda item.
Yeah, and the trustees definitely have a right to ask for that, you know, and that's important that we have that ability. And what it does is, it doesn't come as an action item to begin with, it comes as an information item, and you all determine and talk about and have the conversation if you want to bring it back as an action item, right?
Right. Like Ms. Medina asked for, what was it? I can't remember.
For, I wanted to, and I know I spoke with Dr. Rogers with regards to the facilities.
Right, right.
Yeah, facilities piece.
Right, so that we can discuss it, right?
Right. And then with that item though, yeah, thank you, with that item, outside of the setting, we have no authority. I like to remove that phrase, only because it's, like I said, it's more of a directive. I don't like the, when we're trying to work on these things, it's not a directive of, of kind of losing what our authority and no authority is. And I, and I get it, it's basically already said in the rest of the language that will direct it to the, basically the superintendent. So I'm, if we can, and of course, depending on the consensus, outside of the setting, we have no authority, I'd like to remove that part.
And so what that's referring to is just saying that as a governance team, you'll make those decisions together, that outside of the governance team, that you won't be asking for action as an individual.
Yeah, but it doesn't say that, you see how nicely you framed it, but yet in the language, it doesn't say it like that. So I'm just saying that, since it already says within the language, what you're just saying, I believe we should, we could remove, outside of the setting, we have no authority, as a removal, because it already basically says everything that you just said right now in the other part of the language.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Request action, just moving that one line, that's what you're talking about, right?
Just that one, because it basically, it's already said within the paragraph, it's just that.
Okay. Okay, so it looks like we're, we'll strike that and then just go into a majority, so on and so on.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, and going to the last page. On the back, on the back, individual board member requests for information. So what this is saying is that, you know, time is money when individual board members are asking staff to do things, if it takes more than half an hour, just coming to the whole board, bringing it as an information item on the agenda, and then seeing if the whole team wants to move forward to get that information.
I think that goes back to the agenda. I know this is a lot, lot of words on this one, but that's going back to the agenda, getting consensus or asking. And beyond the consensus, what we did talk about at the retreat was that we're going to move to the future agenda item, so when they bring them up, they're on there, and we know, and then we'll get them, bring them to the board.
Right. Dr. Rogers, any other questions about that? I mean, if it's a little thing, you know, of course, you can ask questions. I never say don't ask questions. We need information as board members to make the best decision, but if I'm saying that it's going to take an hour or two hours for that staff member to get that information together, make sure that it's a consensus of the board that that information is needed. Dr. Wyatt, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you very much. It just, I just kind of wanted to see if we should have alignment with what was spoken about earlier in the agenda development. I would always think that, you know, if it's something that's going to be discussed or brought up in a board meeting or agendas for that matter, the board president should know, because, you know, they're responsible for the agenda development with the superintendent and executive board, executive staff, excuse me. So I don't know, I just, I'm wondering, because it kind of sounds like to me that it's just between the board member and the superintendent, and then the requests will be made in public. I don't know. Maybe I'm off on that one, but that's.
Which, Dr. Wyatt, were you referring to one of the protocols on the 1 to 13?
No, the top paragraph on individual board member requests.
Okay. I can work on that language, so it's not so, I mean, it, it uses five paragraphs to get to a simple idea. So I could, I'll cut that one down.
We're going to cut that one down.
And then just removing the language as, so it's like one, two, three, four, fourth paragraph down, the superintendent takes direction from the board as a whole, so it's typically a consensus versus as a whole, because then it, when I, unless I'm mistaken, so as a whole, it's like a whole apple, it's a whole apple, that means seven.
Right. It could be five, two, four, three, you're right.
So consensus, which would be a four.
Or a majority?
Or a majority, yeah, majority.
I'll put that in there. Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, it's back in there. That majority is good to make it consistent.
And so now we go down to board meeting management, and it's just really understanding that our meetings are our meetings held in public, and we're here to do the business of the district, right? So really staying focused on the agenda and not letting our meetings get hijacked in some way. And it's really important, you know, like when you look at your governance calendar, there's things that we have to approve every month, and, you know, otherwise it really holds up the district. So it's getting to the business of the district and making sure, of course, I respect public comment, I respect public comment during agenda items, but also I, you know, we have to, at the end of the day, we have to get the business done. Dr. Flores?
And I want to be clear that this is the board's agenda, not the superintendent's. He is our secretary, and it is the board's agenda.
And I, I would say it's collaborative, you know, I would say it's collaborative between the board and the superintendent.
Correct, but we, it is our agenda.
So it's our, basically our meeting.
It is our meeting.
So let me look at the, the language if necessary, because you're coming, you're saying something differently. But I agree with that piece, but I don't think it says in there though, Dr. Flores, it's not in there to kind of adjust, but I do agree with you, this is a board, a board meeting, a board agenda.
And the superintendent brings us those items that we need to approve regarding, you know, fiscal matters.
Right.
And also provide us information regarding operations and also updates and so forth.
All the work that we do every month, right?
Right, right.
Thank you. Yes. So, and then we go down to managing difficult topics, and just talking about the respect in that the debate should only, and, and I don't, I don't really like the word debate, I like the word deliberation a little bit better. You know, when we're on that action item, you know, we listen to the public and their opinions, but at the end of the day, the board members are the ones that make the decision, and they're the ones that do the deliberating. So that's just talking about that piece of how we handle each action item on our agenda.
So you're going to change debate to deliberation?
If it's okay with you.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
It's kind of a softer word. Okay, and now we're down to board notification, and what that is talking about, how do you guys want the superintendent to contact you if, if something happens in the district? You know, you, you guys are getting the Friday update, which I think is very comprehensive, and people seem really grateful for that and happy with, you know, the information that's coming to the board. But what is, you know, and like you said, if there was an emergency that happened, how would the superintendent best contact you? Would it be a text? Would it be an email? What's the agreement? Dr. Flores?
There have been several incidences of violence on our school campuses. I don't want to wait till Friday. I want it immediately. I want to know about it, because I get calls from the public and I'm not aware of it, or else I get sent, I don't, I'm not on Facebook, and they'll send me screenshots. And then, I mean, it's kind of disconcerting that I don't know about it, and then I have to, but how am I going to reply? Let me find out. I'm sorry, I don't know. What do you mean, you don't know?
Right.
And so I, I would like to know immediately that there is something.
So that would be that part of that, during the crisis situation, immediately, get that immediately in there?
Like a kid got stabbed at one of our schools, and it was reported altercation. Well, he was stabbed, and it wasn't an altercation, it was stabbing. So I need to know that.
Okay. Any other reflections from the board on that issue? Dr. Wyatt?
No, I do agree on serious incidents that may be like a 911 nature. I know in the past, and it seems even currently, we usually receive a text message actually, and/or an email.
We can put that, those both in there, send out an email or.
I think text, just for me, text is always faster for me than to read an email, but I agree, it should be as soon as possible.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on that issue?
So just for me, same. The Friday updates are good. If it's something more urgent, text is fine.
Right. Thank you. Okay, so now we're on the last protocol, and it's something that I noticed, you guys don't have a position for clerk, and I was wondering if that would be an addition to your officers that you'd want to do for your board. Most, most boards do have that clerk position, so I'm just putting it out there to, for you guys to think about.
What is their role?
The clerk is the one that signs all the documents for the board after the meeting, and they can fill in for the, I see you have a president, vice president, so if the vice president couldn't be there, the clerk would step up into that position for that meeting. So I just, I just wanted to put that out there. I just noticed that you guys didn't have a clerk.
No, I don't think it's necessary. I don't know how the rest feels.
I don't think we need one, because we have a VP and a president.
And my understanding, at least what I've observed over my years, is that the board president signs all the documentation, is it correct?
Yes, yes. And then the VP, if she's not there.
All right. And so one last thing that I wanted to put to your attention, Policy 1313 on civility, you have a paper right here, and this is a new policy that CSBA came out with. A lot of our meetings in many school districts have been pretty contentious, and this is just talking about, you know, our expectation for civility and decorum during meetings. So I, we don't really, you don't have to adopt it right now. Of course, it would come to you as a first reading, then a second reading for adoption, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Could the policy?
Madam President, could the policy committee review this?
Look at this.
And we can then recommend that we, we have a policy subcommittee.
That would be good.
Perfect, perfect. Dr. Wyatt?
And, because I'm familiar with the code of civility or policy on civility, it should actually apply to, I would hope, everybody, right, not just the board, but all employees of the district.
Yes. We, well, I saw a couple of you at, I've been doing the regional governance through chaos training, so I saw a couple of your faces during that regional training, and, you know, it's been helpful for a lot of boards to manage the, go ahead, Mr. Tummitt.
Yeah, I don't think that, my only concern is, a lot of times, national political stuff happens, and to me, if it's not something that's impacted the board locally, I don't like to respond, just because there's this national narrative going on. And for, luckily for us, nothing has changed out of the ordinary in terms of board meetings. And I think something like this would instigate people feeling like we're taking a political attack on certain groups, so I wouldn't even want to consider it right now, because nothing's happened locally to say we should consider it. So I think it'd be a huge mistake. I don't want to be a district that gets pulled into all these national fights and debates, just because that's what the trend is.
Right.
If something were to occur, then we would deal with it, but just to be doing it because that's what they're doing nationally, I don't think is a good idea.
Okay. And so, you know, it could definitely go to your policy committee for review, or you don't have to take it there. I just brought it because it's a new, a lot of districts are having difficulty with this, so, thank you, I appreciate it. And, you know, I just, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
No, no, I was just going to add that, I think one of the benefits of what our district does is we actually, either we agree or we don't agree, we allow public to comment. When we stifle public comment, it has, I've seen other districts where then they have chaos. For our district, because we allow people to be, you know, you know, speak their, their mind and their peace. peace, I feel like it's helped us as a district try to maneuver the chaos, right?
And this isn't a policy to really shut people down, it's just more of a behavior expectation, but definitely have it go to your committee, you know, you're, I'm glad you aren't having problems, that's wonderful, that's good news. And I just want to close our session by saying thank you for the engagement, thank you for your work, I think this is gonna be really helpful in the future to new board members, and I appreciate all your feedback, and thank you for the work you do for your district.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you so much, and we're gonna resume our board meeting in just a moment, and so for all of you that came in, she's gonna merge, because we showed them the protocols that we already had from 2014, I think it was, so we kind of did some merging here, and then we'll get them back in its wholeness, and then, you know, if you haven't seen them, I think they were sent out again, but, you know, some of the information in here is relevant to us, to remind us, you know, of things that just have kind of gotten out of consistency, but we're gonna go ahead and start the meet, we're gonna move forward with the meeting, because we already opened up with the pledge.
Thank you again, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you so much for your patience, sorry, we're a little, little bit behind our scheduled time to begin, but we are going to call this meeting to Order 2.1, and we're going to move to 2.2, which is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I believe San Bernardino High School, Mr. and Mrs. Cardinal City are in the house, and they're going to be leading us tonight.
Place your hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may please be seated.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate you, and we say to you, once a cardinal, always a cardinal. All right, moving to 2.3, Approval of the Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in second, is there, I think, were you all removing something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam President, we need to pull 12.10, the contract needs to be revised to accurately reflect the services, we'll be bringing it back to the next board meeting.
Oh, is that, please?
Dr. Flores, 12.10, that's the agreement with the Regents of the University of California, Los Angeles. That'll be the one that we'll be bringing back with the correct, the accurate services to our next board meeting.
Thank you.
All right, very good, and if there are no others, we will go ahead and vote. We are now going to move to 2.4, Inspirational Message, and that's coming from Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina.
So much, thank you, everyone. Just wanted to say that last board meeting, an anti-bullying resolution was read and passed, and I know that recently we've had, in the past, we've had incidences with bullying, but recently we've also had several alarming bullying incidences, we've had parents protest, and so we need to address some of this, some of the issues that we're having at school sites, and it's not just the school sites, it also starts from the adults themselves too. We need to set an example, and I know sometimes we don't necessarily always agree, but at the time, at the same time, it's how we collaborate and how we talk to each other, it makes a huge difference. So in this case, we have an elementary school, because we do have some great highlights out there, and we have an elementary school, Roosevelt Elementary School, where my children attended, and I want to present a video that they did, that's called Friends, and that's Ms. Abigail's classroom. And if you could share the video.
Great job. Great job.
And it's just a reminder, sometimes, you know, we get caught up of our own emotions, and I think it's always about using filler, not, removing filler words and just saying what the facts are and the truth are and however you're feeling, and I think, like I mentioned earlier, it also starts from adults, and it works our way down to our students to make sure that they are also looking at anti-bullying, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. I think they took us back to the classroom, huh, Mr. Tillman? We attended Roosevelt, so...
Yes, we did. A lot of Doughtys went there, a lot of Tillmans went there.
They had more rhythm than us, they did a good job, so let the class know, we appreciate them. All right, so 3.1, No Kids Hungry California School Breakfast Hero Award, welcome.
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Gwen Downey Rogers, Dr. Squat Wyatt, Board Vice President, members of the board, cabinet, and community members. My name is Daisy Mungia Pinon, Associate Director for the No Kid Hungry Campaign. No Kid Hungry is a national campaign to end childhood hunger in America. We support programs like school meals, food banks, and other community groups feeding kids, and push for legislation to strengthen programs like CalFresh to help feed more kids. We believe childhood hunger is a solvable problem, and the solution starts with school meals. Today, one in six kids in California could face hunger because of the coronavirus. In the county of San Bernardino, it is one out of five, but there is hope. October was Principal Appreciation Month. Principals across the nation work every day on one thing in their minds, the success of their students. They understand that ensuring kids have three meals a day is essential for their development. For this reason, principals have always been a critical part of ending childhood hunger here in America. Today, principals face an extraordinary set of challenges with staff shortages, burnout, and the task of keeping staff and kids safe in school as the pandemic continues. This past Principal Appreciation Month, we highlighted three school leaders in the state of California, who, in the face of these immense obstacles, continue to work hand-in-hand with food service staff and No Kid Hungry to ensure kids have the food they need. One of these leaders is from San Bernardino City USD, Principal Elizabeth Congrin Benoit from Captain Leland F. Norton Elementary. Through her leadership and support from Nutrition Services, San Bernardino City USD launched its only breakfast in the classroom program, joining other districts such as Fontana and Rialto USD. Norton has a student enrollment of approximately 500 students, the majority being students of color, and 97.5% of Norton students are eligible for free and reduced-priced meals. Before the breakfast in the classroom program started, only 175 students out of those 500 were eating breakfast in the morning. Now that number is 400. 400 students are eating breakfast every day at Norton. I personally have visited the breakfast program at Norton Elementary and observed a first-grade class. There were no spills. Breakfast was eaten within the first 15 minutes of the day, trash was disposed correctly, and all COVID safety regulations were followed. But I was most impressed by the students. They were building community, they were cleaning up after themselves, smiling, social-emotional learning. I invite all y'all to witness this program. I applaud Nutrition Services and the staff of Norton for creating such an amazing program. I hope, as time progresses, the board continues to support and sustain programs such as these that address equity and access to food. As we know, hungry kids can learn. Unfortunately, Principal Benoit couldn't make it here today, but I would like to present this No Kid Hungry California School Breakfast Hero Award on her behalf to Nicole Alexandra from Norton School Kitchen Manager. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you so much, so you're not gonna, oh, they're gonna come, okay, are we gonna stand up?
We're smiling.
We are, we are. Okay, so we're smart behind.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, congratulations, and good to see you, Nicole. We're now moving to 3.2, Resolution and Recognition of National School Psychology Week. Dr. Hill.
Dr. Rogers. Whereas good mental health is critical to children's success in school, with research demonstrating that students who receive social, emotional, and mental health support attain higher levels of achievement, and whereas school psychologists deliver mental health services to help prevent or reduce the immediate and long-term effects of children's mental and behavioral health problems, and whereas school psychologists are uniquely qualified members of the school community and crucial to helping students overcome barriers to learning and success, and whereas the National Association of School Psychologists 2021 theme is "Let's Get in Gear," which challenges school psychologists and all educators to grow personally and professionally, engage in best practices, advocate for children's access to mental health and learning support, and rise with resilience and renewal despite challenges. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby declare November 8 through 12, 2021, as National School Psychology Week, and recognizes the vital role that school psychologists play in the personal and academic development of the district's students.
So moved.
Second.
All right, if there's no discussion, then we will go ahead and take the vote. We're now at 3.3, Resolution and Recognition of Veterans Day. Ms. Abios?
Resolution in recognition of Veterans Day. Whereas in 1918, on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, an armistice, a temporary cessation of hostilities, was declared between the Allied Nations and Germany in World War I. And in 1919, President Woodrow Wilson proclaimed November 11 as the first commemoration of Armistice Day. And in 1938, November 11 became a legal federal holiday. Whereas in 1954, after having been through both World War II and the Korean War, Congress amended the Act of 1938 by striking out the world, sorry, by striking out the word "armistice" and inserting the word "veterans," and November 11 became a day to honor American veterans of all wars. And whereas in 1968, the Uniform Monday bill ensured four national holidays were moved to Mondays, and under this bill, Veterans Day was moved to the Fourth Monday of October. However, many states did not agree with this decision and continued to celebrate the holiday on its original date. And whereas, in 1975, after it became evident that the actual date of Veterans Day carried historical and patriotic significance to many Americans, President Gerald R. Ford signed a law which returned the annual observance of Veterans Day to its original date of November 11, beginning in 1978. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education does hereby recognize November 11, 2021, as Veterans Day, and calls upon every person to honor those men and women who have answered the call of service, to protect this great nation, and encourages all district schools to undertake educational activities that commemorate the history and contributions of our nation's veterans.
Move.
It has been moved in second, is there is no discussion, we can go ahead and take the vote. Okay, go ahead, Dr. Flores.
Madam President. Could all our veterans please stand?
Thank you, and thank you for your service to our country. All right, we will go ahead and vote. I think it flashed up there, didn't it? Okay, thank you, motion carry. 3.4, Resolution and Recognition of American Education Week, including National Education Support Professional Days and Substitute Educators' Day. Mr. Tillman?
Thank you, Madam President. Whereas following World War I, when it was discovered that many of the military draftees were illiterate, representatives of the National Education Association and American Legion met to seek ways to generate public support for education, resulting in the first observance of American Education Week in December 1921. And whereas now recognized annually the week prior to Thanksgiving, American Education Week is a time to honor those educators who introduced students to the wonders of reading, how to reason with numbers, explore the mysteries of science, learn about history and how it affects us today, and the importance of being healthy through nutrition and physical activity. The classroom is where students learn to think, solve problems, and cooperate with each other. Now, more than ever, educators work tirelessly to keep student learning on track, and whereas National Education Support Professionals' Day is celebrated the Wednesday of American Education Week and honors the contributions of school support employees. These support professionals provide invaluable services and are essential partners in the education process. The day honors a long list of professionals who keep schools running smoothly, including peer educators, site secretaries, clerks, health aides, office assistants, recreational aides, and the many others that support educators. These professionals do their part in making public school places every child can be safe, learn, grow, and achieve. And whereas Substitute Educators' Day celebrates substitute educators, also known as guest teachers, on the Friday during American Education Week to highlight the role and importance of the guest teacher, and increase appreciation... and increase appreciation and respect for these unique professionals. Guest teachers provide a critical link in the education of public schoolchildren by serving as a bridge to provide continued quality education to students in the temporary absence of the regular classroom teachers. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District recognizes November 15th through November 19th, 2021, as American Education Week; November 17th, 2021, as National Education Support Professionals Day; and November 19th, 2021, as Substitute Educators Day. It is a time to celebrate the potential of all students and to acknowledge and give thanks to the teachers, guest teachers, and support professionals working within the educational system to ensure every child receives a quality education. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. If there's no further discussion, let's vote. Thank you, motion carry. 4.0 Closed Session. We will begin with 4.1 Closed Session Public Comments. Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you, we have a few. The first one is Latoya Smith. Latoya, if you'd like to come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, President, Vice President, Board Members, and our Superintendent. My name is Latoya Smith, the Chief Steward for CSCA Chapter 183. Now, I want to have you guys think of a scenario. And think of a time when you or someone you knew let somebody borrow money. And the scenario is, let's say it's Monday. Monday comes, your best friend, a family member, and associate comes to you and says that they're in dire need of this money. Like, they just have to have this money now. And so, since they told you how much they need this money, you offer them this money, and they promise to pay you back on Monday. You're okay with that? But technically, you really can't afford to let this person borrow money. But because their needs were more important than yours at the time, based on the time, you allowed them to do so. And you just hope that they pay you back more soon than later. Now, that same week, you look online, and they got red-bottomed shoes, Jordans posted, new hairdo. And then, on Saturday, has the nerd to have a picture of them in Las Vegas? Now, how would you feel? A lot of people will say the slogan, "I feel a type of way about that." And what's the reason? It's because of perception, right? Perception is extremely important when it comes to how people look and view you. There's an actual quote that states that "perception is reality and facts are negotiable", meaning that the perception someone may have of you will impact how much they trust, rely, and believe in you before anything else. So, I give you this scenario because what's happening now? The district is telling employees, the public, that they're facing a budget issue in the near future, that due to certain circumstances, making any decisions that will have continual budget obligations cannot be done and would be fiscally irresponsible. And therefore, there will need to be a budget adjustment in the future. And then, online, there are applications for new positions to be made. Now, when we're looking at these applications for these new positions, they're for new management positions. So, what do you think the perception is? We are asking the board to look into what the district is telling us and what they are telling you during our time for CSCA. Thank you for all that you do. We appreciate your time, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you.
Latoya, can you come back?
I think it...
I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, Ms. Rosales Medina.
I just wanted to clarify. You mentioned it was on social media, or was this something... I just wanted to check to make sure I understood you.
So with the new service model, it's allowing or needing to have more supervisors, apparently. And so, the positions are being run so that they can be filled for those positions.
We didn't approve, but okay, I'll leave that as that. All right, thank you.
I wait a minute.
Dr. Force?
Yes, I would like to clarify, what have you seen on social media? Or what positions specifically?
So you have the maintenance operator, the MNO supervisor position. Right now, we have employees working out of class for five of those positions.
How many?
Five.
Five, okay.
And that's with the new service model. And then, we know that we had the ones that we saw that we were going with, the IT positions. That happened in June. So throughout the school year so far, there's been a lot of management positions that have been established. And if it hasn't been established, they have made the positions so that perception would be they can eventually have a position and fill it. Because why would you create a position if you're not putting a body in it?
So, those are the only ones that you've seen?
Yeah, there's five of them, for sure. It was five different IT positions. And for sure, the MNO right now is because the custodial, the service, the way they're implementing the service plan for MNO is now that there's going to be eight supervisors under all the custodians. And all the custodians are now under MNO, and the principals are not responsible for the custodians anymore.
And these are all new positions? And have they been flown and interviewed?
There was a woman who came last time and did a speech, and she had actually tested for it already. Five positions are actually people working out of class in those positions as we speak right now.
So right now, they are working out of class?
Yes.
And they are new positions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dean Upshaw. If you'd please come to the mic.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. And I'd like to say hello to everyone here on the board, to everyone who cares about this district and its employees. Now, I'm visually impaired, so I do a lot of listening because seeing things is just not my thing. So, if I say something that means something to you, I gotta hear you because I can't react to your faces or anything like that. So please respect what I need to hear, what I need from you. And the thing is, when I talk about respect, my kids are coming up in this district, and the first things they learned was be respectful, be responsible, be safe. And as I stand here today and talk about my wife who works for this school district, who, and her coworkers, who are all classified employees in this district, I can tell you that the excuse of responsibility isn't always going to stand up when they don't feel safe or respected. And I know what fiscal responsibility is. I'm the head of my household, and I have people who depend on me to make decisions on how money is going to be spent. But I also know that there is such a thing as being creative with how you do the things that need to be done to make sure that people understand that you hear them, see them, recognize their needs, and not just what you want to accomplish overall. I can tell you that the classified employees have been asked to do, at times, the impossible on impossible timelines. And then, when they come and they say, "Hey, we need", or "we have this issue", or "our families are suffering because you're not hearing us when we tell you we need more than what you're offering us", it means something when they come home and they are frustrated because those who they basically bleed and cry and stress over the jobs they do here are not being respected, they're not being heard, they're not being seen. And the thing is, I know what it is to not be seen. I came up in this school district. I've had teachers tell me that I would do nothing but make hangers for a living because that was the expectation they had for my abilities. Then, my... So when I hear, and I hear a lot, and I hear about how unsafe they feel financially here, how other places are coming up and saying, "Hey, we can offer you more than what you're getting right now", and especially when you include the fact that Amazon is coming to town. And when Amazon lands, fully lands, the prices of everything are going to go way up. And now, you're saying, "Oh, but we understand that, but we just can't help you out. But when you needed help, when the district needed help, they said, 'We'll take that cut, we'll take that hit, we'll take that because we're a family, that's what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to help each other.' And I understand that there's only so much you can do because I understand what a finite budget looks like. It's the only thing I really know what looks like. But when it comes down to it, I also understand that there are things that could be thought about. Say, you know what? I understand where they are, so let me see what we can do. We may not be able to do it this way, but I might be able to do it this way. There's a way to get creative. Have you looked at ways to help them in their everyday situations? Ways of cutting costs in groceries? By allying with certain stores, saying, "Hey, they work for this school district. Can we help them?" Gas prices are going up. Is there a way we can ally with such and such? We are one of the most powerful entities in San Bernardino. Can we work something out? Can we help them? But I haven't heard any of these things come across. And now, because they are saying, "We have this issue, we have this need", and the district keeps coming back to us, telling us, "We hear you", kind of, sort of, not really, they feel disrespected. And I understand that Mr. Irvin is new, so I'm not expecting him to understand exactly how we do what we do here in this district. We get it done. We move forward. We respect, we make sure the people around us feel safe and heard. And I need to know that I'm heard because I can't see anything that you guys have to do with... I can't...
Say again?
My wife's telling me to wrap it up. So I'm gonna say, please hear what they're saying. And please let them know that you hear what they're saying. Because they are valuable, and they need to be treated as though they have value and that you understand their value. I wanted to say amen, but...
Thank you.
That was it for the in-person. I have one virtual on call now. Alejandra Hernandez, if you're available, will you please unmute now?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Alejandra Hernandez, and I am a community member. I am a parent of a high schooler, middle schooler, and I'm also an employee of the school district. Currently, I am a custodian. And I would ask that you guys consider, you know, the 7% raise. And the reason why I ask that it be considered is because the staff is overworked. With the pandemic, with reopening of the schools, there has been a lot of work that has been put into opening the schools. We have a lot of extra duties. And that's not to say the eight-hour runs that we already have. And then, you know, we throw in the shortage of staff. We don't have substitute custodians to pick up these jobs. So, I'm at a high school. There's like six of us at night. You know, the school separated by custodians. When one of us don't come and that job doesn't get picked up, we have to pick up that work overload. Not only are we picking up that work overload on a daily basis, we have after-school activities, games, caps. You know, a lot of things are coming up. And, you know, when we're hearing, you know, that it's being negotiated, that maybe it's too much, or we can't do it, you know, I'm thinking, you know, we're abiding by the district rules. We're wearing our mask in 100-degree weather. We're doing the extra activities. We're doing our target solutions on our own time at home so that we have time to sanitize the classrooms, to sanitize the restaurants. We are getting these weekly COVID tests on our own time, or we're getting vaccinated. So, you know, it makes us feel like we're giving, 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 and we're just not receiving anything. We're not... We're, you know, no one's really seeing all the work that we're putting in for the schools to be sanitized and clean. So I just ask that it be considered, you know... It's embarrassing to say and uncomfortable, but, you know, when overtime...
Alejandra, did you mute yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I might have.
Okay, I can hear you now. I think you might have hit it again.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay. When Maintenance and Operation did offer overtime to custodians, you know, and then they asked, "Why is no one taking it?". Well, the reason is because a lot of custodians have a second job so that they are able to pay their rent in San Bernardino, so that they're able to put foot on the table, you know. We can't. We're struggling to survive, we're struggling to pay bills. You know, and if we have children, you know, now we're having to deal with daycare, and it's a lot. So, I just ask that it be considered, you know, because most of us have children that go to these schools. We have family members, we have nieces, nephews. So, we're not only employees, you know, we're also community members. So I just ask that, you know, it be considered and that all the extra work that we're putting into this, you know, be taken into consideration.
Thank you. And Mr. Tillman?
President, I was just wondering, because it's so close to seven o'clock, can we do regular public comments also?
So no, you didn't have a comment for her. Okay, thank you, Alejandra. Okay, wait a minute, hold on. Okay, hold on one second.
How could we support the custodians? How could we support you? Do you guys have any recommendations?
You know, for...
Let's not, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to ask it like that. You said you had concerns about how... the kind of support that we need. I'd like to clarify what you meant by that.
Well, you know, we're... There's no custodians. We don't have any sub-custodians to pick up jobs that, you know, when someone's out. You know, we're being asked to daily do sanitize, you know, fill up the hand sanitizers, you know. And a lot of things that we were asked to do, I don't think it was really thought through. Like, for example, the sanitizers. If we're filling them in, you know, the kids are spilling them all over the floor. So now, the sanitizer is eating the wax. You know, now we have to go in there more often and try to scrape that floor, you know. Try to, you know, that's just more things on top of what we already have to do. You know, we have these clusters of managers, I guess, from Maintenance and Operation, and I'm thinking, what are they managing if there's no custodians? Why aren't they just working? Why aren't they picking up these jobs?
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, we're going... I think there might be one more, okay. I think, I'm gonna call the name and ask. Amy, were you going to talk about negotiation CSCA? If you are, come forward. If not, I'll call you during public comments. Did you have a last name? Okay. So I'll go ahead and hold off on that until public... Okay, so I am now going to... I am going to move the... Thank you, Mr. Tillman, because we know that our commitment... because we know that our commitment is to come back at seven o'clock for our public to speak, so we're not going to hold you tonight.
Thank you.
And we're going to move to 6.0, public comments, 6.1, and you can go ahead and call those. Ms. Cunningham.
Okay, I'm going to start with Kelly Basoko. If you're here, please step forward.
Thank you so much. My name is Kelly Basoko. I teach second grade at Urbina Elementary School. I appreciate the opportunity to speak publicly to this board. It's not something I'm used to. You're not seven years old. So this is my 15th year with this district. I work very hard for the district, as all teachers do. I give up weekends and family time for lesson planning and redundant trainings through Target Solutions, for which I am not paid, as all teachers do. I spend my earnings on classroom supplies, snacks, and students, as most teachers do. I have been proud to bring my craft, my talents, my compassion, and my whole heart to my profession as a gift to my students and to my district. But now I'm hearing that if I don't receive this vaccination by next July, against my better judgment, for something that I've already survived and for something for which I've already developed my own immunities, then my employers will place no value in me and simply let me go. And every time I have a conversation with anyone in administration or at the district level, the only reply I get back is, well, we have to do this because it's a mandate. It reminds me of the phrase that was popular in the 60s and 70s, if any of y'all were alive during then, I was, I sure was. That phrase said, "The devil made me do it." This phrase was popular and kind of used humorously at the time because it abdicated responsibility for an act that was knowingly wrong and blamed it on an entity that was at that time known for tempting people to do wrong things. Every time someone used that phrase, they knew down deep that their action had been wrong, they just didn't want to admit it. So they said, "The devil made me do it. Oops, my bad." Now here we are, 50 years later, give or take a few, and I'm getting this same kind of abdication of responsibility from my district. We have to because of the mandate, but you know down deep that this action is wrong. and you know that the same man who chose to close down schools and churches told us we couldn't even sing and worship in our churches, but deemed strip clubs as essential. He's the same one who ordered this unconstitutional and therefore illegal mandate. So answer me this. Thank you for your support, but you're sucking up my time. So answer me this, is it in the best interest of students to eliminate seasoned, talented, compassionate, funny, and engaging teachers such as myself? Teachers that students love and connect with because of an illegal mandate? Or do you just bow toward Sacramento and say, as they did so long ago, "The devil made me do it"? Because the truth is, there are many districts in California that are saying no to this mandate. If this board doesn't have the courage to lead in a way of doing what is right rather than what you think is legal, then I no longer know who I am working for. Are you educators who follow the science or could actually teach the science to some of those people in Sacramento? Or are you politicians using your employees and students to further a campaign that is rooted in violating our constitutional rights? As for me, I think this demand by our governor and now by my district as his proxy is unconscionable. It defiles every bit of work that we have built through climate and culture to build understanding and trust with each other. It defiles social emotional learning by telling students that their beloved teachers are worth no more effort than that. You see, this mandate requires a bending of the knee to something that I cannot agree with. I'm not anti-vax. I know many people who are vaxxed and I love them, but I am anti-experiment on human beings, and I am pro-freedom of medical choices. And what is coming down the pike to our students just so they can attend compulsory education is beyond reprehensible. It's beyond reprehensible. My grandchildren will be in this district in another year, and I cannot, in any good conscience, vax them just so they can come to my school. So as a governing board, I beg you to find the courage to draw from the most creative well of people in any district. Okay? These people are creative and come up with different solutions, coercing us to take a vaccine. That risks our own lives and health is not legal, is certainly not a creative way to solve a problem, and is not in the best interests of anyone in this district, teachers or students, and should not be an acceptable solution to any of you sitting on this board. Perhaps those of us who are unvaxxed are a minority and as such are given little or no consideration, but I think that this board can do better than that. I think this board is better than that. I think that teachers deserve better than that, and I think that collectively we can do better than that. We must do better than that. And for those of you who disagree with what I'm saying, maybe the devil made you do it. I don't know.
Good evening.
Hello.
So as a mother of three students within the district, I'm not a teacher, but I will also be speaking to you concerning the threat of the looming COVID-19 vaccine mandates. And I want to say that I know there are believers on this board, and according to Romans 13:1, God appointed you to the board for just such a time as this, and you guys have the power to effectuate real change, and as our elected officials, you have the moral duty to adopt a resolution of opposition, refusing to comply with the mandate as other school districts have already done. And these include Happy Valley Union School District, Apple Valley Unified, Victor Elementary School District, Hemet Unified, East Whittier School District, and many others. So don't tell us that nothing can be done. We will not co-parent with the state or the school district. Today, I'm asking you to consider our right, our right as neighbors, friends, and countrymen to choose for our children, to consider the rights and freedoms of every parent and child in this district. So take note of the following facts. First, COVID vaccines can only reduce symptoms, they do not prevent infection or spread, which is why we see so many breakthrough cases. They are ineffective against the Delta variant as well. Keep in mind, according to CDC data, to date, there have been roughly 700 children in the U.S. who have died of COVID-19 out of 73 million children nationwide. That is point 00009589% of all children. My children have a greater chance of being struck by lightning than they do of dying from COVID-19. The same is not true of the vaccine. This is unscientific, and we cannot inject our children with something that is more dangerous than what we are trying to safeguard them from. And just as a side note, like, my social media account was suspended for saying this. That's word for word what I said. It was suspended because facts are no longer allowed to be spoken. These numbers are from the CDC. Like, this is not controversial, I'm not making accusations, I'm not saying that any of you that aren't vaccinated shouldn't have been vaccinated. You all have to make choices for yourselves. I'm saying that there is a definite repression of information. It's a restriction, it's wrong. And, you know, boys and men under 30 have a higher risk of adverse symptoms, myocarditis from the shot than they actually do from COVID. A study from Israel estimates that 1 in 3 to 6,000 men and boys will be affected. Finland, Iceland, and Sweden have suspended the use of the Moderna vaccine for this reason, but our boys and young men in the U.S., they're still getting injected with it. So keep that in mind. And in the U.S. alone, there have been 1.6 million adverse events, 86,542 hospitalizations, 17,619 deaths as of today. And this is pulled from VAERS. This is public information. And finally, science says that natural immunity protects 13 times better than the COVID-19 vaccines. My children and I have all had COVID already, and we have all survived. So we're asking you to rise up and say no. The legacy of the Nuremberg Code post-World War II includes the necessity of voluntary consent. In the now famous words of the FDA panelist Dr. Eric Rubin, referring to our children, and this is a quote, and this is very recently, "We're never gonna learn about how safe the vaccine is until we start giving it," end quote. That's just the way it goes. That's what he said about our children. So do you agree with Dr. Rubin? You don't have to agree with everything I've just said to recognize that there are serious concerns with a bloated authoritarian government mandating that something that has serious safety and efficacy concerns be injected into our bodies forcibly. This is wrong. This is no longer about leadership but about lives. There is enough data to make a decision. Our children are not experiments, and neither are our teachers. Help us by taking a stand against vaccine mandates. Please adopt a resolution of opposition refusing to comply with the mandate. Thank you.
Our next speaker.
Go ahead, Karen.
Our next speaker is Veronica Sias.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. My name is Veronica Sias. I am a mother of four, all of which have at one point or another attended, um, San Bernardino City Unified School District schools. Our family recently decided to pull our kids, um, out of the school and began our homeschool, um, journey due the, due to the unprecedented state mandates. The terrain is so crazy right now, we would much rather have peace of mind knowing our kids are home and out of harm's way. We have many friends who feel the same and are ready to follow suit should the district comply with the mandate. We understand that you guys feel like you guys need to follow a mandate. It's a mandate, it's not a law. And you must continually follow the mandates because you're receiving CARES Act funds, but I believe our kids should be more important than any amount of funds you receive. We understand that sometimes it's easier to go with the grain rather than go against it. Same way we parents try to understand this, you must understand that we will continue to protect our children at all costs. This means if we must pull our children, if we must pull our children out of school and come together to create homeschool pods, that is what we will do. These mandates are going to cause a mass exodus from the district, such as those you've, you're seeing right now with healthcare workers and first responders, all this we're witnessing across our nation, not just of students, but of teachers as well, and many other staff, faculty as well. But I will tell you that all these teachers here will have options. So many parents are homeschooling our kids now, I have no doubt we will rally behind these educators standing up for their medical freedom. I recently spoke at our county Board of Supervisors meeting regarding the same topic. They also follow the mandates. They also say there is not much they can do, but we all know there's plenty you can do. You can be courageous and stand up for the kids that you are being, are, are to be serving, sitting in those seats up there. You could say no to the mandate as it is not a law. You can have the courage that Apple Valley Unified School District had last week to pass the resolution stating that you will not, that you will not implement a vaccine requirement if one is imposed by state or health officials. I have provided you a copy of said resolution. I personally pray that you find the same courage that Apple Valley Unified School District, in and out, and many other school districts around the state, as, and also San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors found to stand up against this medical tyranny. Now I will address the parents here tonight. If this school board is not willing to hear our voices, the voices of those who elected them to sit there in those seats, it's time to take action. There is another way. We must stop outsourcing our kids to these schools who really don't have our children's best interests at heart. The time has come to join forces and do right by our children so that they inherit the world we want for them. Proverbs 22:6 says, "Train up a child in the way he should go; even when he is old, he will not depart from it." We call the shots for our children. We do not co-parent with the government. Thank you very much for your time, and God bless everyone here.
Our next speaker is Natalie Morales.
Good evening, Madam President.
Good evening.
Superintendent, Doc, um, the board, cabinet, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to speak. Today, I know that we are coming with heavy hearts on knowing that these decisions have to be made, and unfortunately, they've been placed upon your head. And today, I want you to know that I'm not just the employee 33722, that I'm Natalie Morales, a mother, a wife, a senior pastor, an ordained minister, who comes today to say, let me pray for you. Let's pray that God gives us an answer. So many times, we think that we need to move against, be at its status quo, or that we need to be in complacency, but let me tell you that there are so many men and women in the Word of God who rise above the status quo. There is Moses, who stood against the Pharaoh. There's Queen Esther, who stood against all the law that was, that was there to basically create genocide against an entire generation of people. Today, I stand before you unvaccinated, not because I think it's right or wrong, but simply because God has not given me an answer. Over and over again, in the Word of God, Deuteronomy 28 tells us over and over that if we act in obedience, that the blessings will come, but if we act in disobedience, the curses will be upon our head. And today, I encourage you that if you are a believer on this board, to hear the voice of God before you make a decision that will impact lives forever. You will impact not only my children, you will impact all of these members and family members for eternity. This will change history, so we're asking you to rise above the status quo, to do what is right by the people of God and all of the people that are, that are standing here before you. So with that, let me pray for God to give you wisdom, to give you, uh, to shut out the noise of everyone but the voice of God, because He will direct your steps. So if you could kindly bow your heads and bow your hearts, that I pray over you. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before you, Father. We're looking for man, to man for answers, God, but you have the answer, Father. So I pray, Father, for every single board member, every cabinet member, everyone who is making decisions, Father, that you would give them the courage to rise above the status quo, God, to let them hear your voice, Father, in places they didn't even think that they could hear, God. I pray that you would pour your wisdom over them, God. Your word says that if we pray for wisdom, that you would give it abundantly, Father, so I pray for wisdom for this board, God. I pray, God, that you would infiltrate their minds and their hearts, Father, to do what is right for your kingdom, God. I pray that your name would be glorified in it all, God. I pray, Father, for Dr. Funchess, God, that you would help him and direct his steps, God. I pray for Mike Medina, Father, who is also making these steps, and, and Luis Chavez, Father, who are making these steps to do all the things right and make all these systems work, Father, but I pray, God, that you would give them the courage, God, to hear you and to stand up against the enemy, Father. I thank you, Father, for your blessing. I thank you for your goodness. I thank you that this organization has been a blessing to me and my family, God. So I pray, God, that your blessing of obedience would be upon their heads, Lord. Give them strategy, give them the courage, let them walk with you, Father. I thank you, God, for your goodness and your faithfulness. I thank you for all of those that are in this room, God, and I pray that you would quiet the fear right now in the name of Jesus, that you would quiet every ounce of fear and anxiety that we have, thinking that we may not be able to continue the work that we love. I thank you, God, for being so good and so gracious. Be with this board, love them, pour into them, give them everything they need. Love them, pour into them, give them everything they need, Father, to rise up. We love you, Father, and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ashley Hernandez. Ashley Hernandez.
Good evening, President Rogers, Vice President Wyatt, board members, Superintendent Irvin, and cabinets. I come before you to let you hear a little bit about me, because I know there are staff, parents, and volunteers that are unfortunately too scared to come forward. I have been in this district as a student since 5th grade and graduated here from Cajon High School. I've been an employee in this district for 17 years. I am scared. I am scared of losing my job because of a mandate that requires me to get vaccinated. Our fear should not be used against us by taking away our ability to choose whether or not the vaccine is best for us and our families. You have the power to take a stand to not mandate us, just like other districts have. COVID has already impacted my home, me personally, my son, my mother, my extended family, my friends, my neighbors. Some have been vaccinated, some have not. However, I stand firm in believing that I should not be forced to vaccinate myself or my children. I think you guys should know that last week, I received an email that I stated I did not upload my test results, even though I tested within this district. After I uploaded my COVID results, I was flagged in Best Nat the following day as unvaccinated. That is a personal medical information that I did not choose to tell. Somebody somehow, whether it be a glitch or not, changed my status without my okay. That is my personal choice. To close, I ask you, why should I have to be tested weekly when the vaccinated staff around me can have COVID and can get me sick as well? Mandatory COVID testing for unvaccinated employees makes my private health information public and as a condition of my employment. That should be unnecessary, and it is an unintended consequence of this board's policy. Listen to us. We do have a voice. The fear is real. We are scared to talk. And after 17 years, this is the first time I have ever come before a lot of you that I know personally, and that if you don't know me, I guess you know me now. But the fear is real, and we are, there's too many of us. I am one of few classified that knows going to speak tonight, and it is terrifying. But I will say this. The 7%, we are do that. We were here when nobody else was coming to work. We were given the chance to be able to make extra money to come into work. Yeah, that was great. Our families needed it, but what about our health? Listen to us, please.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrea Moore. Andrea Moore, please.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Andrea Moore. I am a single mother of two, and this is my ninth year teaching special education in a neighboring district. I'm here speaking on behalf of my colleagues this evening. To the audience here tonight, if I invite you, that if I say something you agree with, that you would stand to show your support to me and the board. I came here tonight to speak against, sorry, she got me all emotional. I came here tonight to speak against testing and vaccine mandates for your district employees. I'll be focusing on the issue of weekly testing. It's my opinion that testing should remain at the discretion of your employees. First, I'm wondering what your motivation is in enforcing these mandates and what your desired outcome is. If it's to prevent a COVID outbreak, then it doesn't really make sense that it's only being enforced against unvaccinated employees. I'm going to walk you through some data that I gave to some of you, sorry, there's many, that leads me to believe that your motivation is not, in fact, safety, but rather a tactic to bully and discriminate against unvaccinated employees for personal medical choice, or perhaps to coerce them into getting the COVID vaccine. I have included all web addresses and excerpts for the information and studies that I quote this evening. First, testing only the unvaccinated staff would result in approximately 3% to 5% of people on campus being tested. That seems like that is not going to make any impact at all. Next, on page 1, my question is, where is the outbreak? On page 1, you'll see that our county health department reports zero outbreaks in the district in the last 2 weeks. The tests that we are using are faulty. On pages 2 to 3, the CDC states that all COVID tests are under emergency use authorization. Countless tests have been recalled due to false positives and negatives. There is really no way to know whether or not the difference between true and false positives. Why are we continuing to base all of our actions on these tests we know are faulty? Next, vaccinated people get and spread COVID. On pages 4 to 5, CDC data from January through April 2021 shows that there were over 10,000 breakthrough cases reported. Conveniently, the CDC stopped tracking breakthrough cases after April unless it resulted in hospitalization or death. On page 6, you'll see the CDC data as of October 12th showed that there were over 32,000, or sorry, nearly 32,000 hospitalizations and deaths in fully vaccinated people. On page 7, a study found that vaccinated and unvaccinated healthcare workers carried a similar viral load when infected with a variant of COVID. Because that sample size was pretty small, it was only about 55 people. I also included a pre-print study that had the same preliminary findings regarding the Delta variant on pages 8 and 9. It's abundantly clear that people can get and spread COVID, and they carry a similar viral load as the unvaccinated. So there is no logical explanation for testing the unvaccinated. If your motivation is the safety of your students and staff, then I'm requesting the following. An all-or-nothing approach to testing teachers and staff. And if you must test, then make all of those COVID numbers public and separate it by vaccinated and unvaccinated so that you and we are able to evaluate transparently the effectiveness of the vaccine and the COVID measures that you are taking within this district. Your employees have collectively dedicated decades of their lives to educating the students in this district in more ways than one, in classified and certificated. So where do you draw the line? I know that for a fact that if you cross that next line of enforcing a COVID vaccine mandate, you will lose staff members, and they will be hurting just as they already have with all of the low numbers and missing staff and empty positions. So are you willing to choose the enforcement of these mandates over your loyal employees? And are you willing to choose them over the education of your students? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robert Sanchez. Robert Sanchez, are you available? Okay, I'll move on to Nicole, and I'm sorry, I can't quite read your writing. Prasad?
Thanks for giving me the time to talk today. Everybody is real emotional about everything, but when you realize this is an emotional decision to make as parents, and as a parent, you want to know that the people that are standing up for you are going to actually stand up for you. And if you're not, then we need to find other people that are willing to do it. Norwalk Unified School District voted against faculty mandating, citing, "I believe our mandating without testing option is an overreach on your authority as a board member." Also citing, "It's unconstitutional to force any person to undergo a medical treatment that they object to as a matter of faith." There is no medical reason for people with natural immunity to take a vaccine. Natural immunity is overlooked in science. When you compare this shot to the mandated vaccines like polio, polio actually prevented you from contracting polio as well as passing it. There are also decades of data before the mandate even happened. COVID shot does not even compare to these or any of the ones on the mandated list. COVID shot is so weak that in 2021, after evaluating data on transmission and ineffective rate by CDC for 2 years, Dr. Fauci recommended to change the mandate to make everywhere, everyone wear masks, for vaccinated as well, therefore admitting how unaffected it actually was. U.S. death rate in children from COVID is 0.007%. That's almost nobody. They haven't even become close to being affected or the super-spreaders that they were initially thought to have been. Our kids are not super-spreaders. They are not dying, because if they were dying, there wouldn't be this many parents up here. While data from our government website continues to evaluate risk on COVID shot, Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, it's a government website. After taking this shot, 18,853 people have died. The only people that are allowed to report this are doctors. 20,570 life-threatening reactions have happened. 28,342 people have been permanently disabled. There's been 645 birth defects. Hospitalizations, 92,201. If you add that, plus emergency visits and office visits where people were scared after they got the shot, that is 959,984 people being hurt after they got this COVID shot. I will not comply. On October 18th, we took a stand across the state to have our kids sit out. You say 20% to 80% of kids at your schools were absent. If this mandate goes through, over 4,000 students will be pulled from your schools. You know the numbers. That's over $58 million less in your school funds. This COVID shot does not even address the Delta variant. Our kids are not at risk, nor are they super-spreaders. If everyone gets vaccinated, there is no longer control. Basic, real science you teach in your schools that say an experiment must have a control will no longer be available. Eventually, your jobs will be terminated. We will pull our kids out because we love our kids more than any dollar amount on any of your papers. There are doctors on both sides of this story. What I'm saying is you listen to both of them and allow us to make a decision for our kids.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Sanders, Medina?
I was just going to clarify a question, only because it's been mentioned, July 1, 2022 will be the mandate. I don't know if we can get an update, just really quickly, because I know I personally may be not fully familiar with that.
At this time, that's not a hard date yet. There's still some decisions that need to be made at the state level. We anticipate sometime in the fall, though, but that's not a hard date just yet, Mrs. Medina.
Okay.
Still being discussed.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
Ms. Cunningham, can you call the next? Okay, I understand Mr. Sanchez is available now, Robert Sanchez.
Hello, everyone. Sorry, I had to bring my kids. I'm a single dad, and I just found about this today.
You might want to pull the mic, come a little closer.
Okay.
Hello.
Okay, as you can see, I'm a little bit nervous, but I just want to make this point clear. Everyone here, so far, who has spoken to you guys, have pointed out the facts. Okay? And there's nothing else I can do to show you. They already said it. We could all go on the internet. We could all find it with the CDC and everywhere else. I am against this vaccine, and just wanted to let you know that if you guys do enforce this mandate, that these children will no longer attend this district, and most likely, we will be moving out of state. You guys have the power.
Please allow him to speak, thank you.
You guys have the power. You guys have the authority. You guys can fight. My great-grandpa parachuted out into Europe during World War II to fight for what's right. Everyone here, and my future, and his future too, his future great-grandkids. My grandpa received 2 Purple Hearts in Vietnam, protecting our freedoms. If you guys don't have the courage to stand up and fight, even though it is a mandate, it's not law, I lost faith. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amy. Amy, if you're available.
I'll be honest with you. Thank you so much for letting me speak. I'll be honest with you, I was called earlier, but I was first, and I was scared.
Good evening.
It is really nerve-wracking, and I was really scared to come up here today. And I do appreciate everybody what you said, because it's everything I wanted to have be said up here. I've been working for the district for 14 years now. I absolutely love my job. I got my admin credential to move further, but I don't want to leave the classroom. That's where I want to be. And I have 2 girls, and I'm a single mom. They don't have their dads, and therefore, and we've all had COVID already as well, and my family, my entire family, and I'm a cancer survivor. I'm completely scared to take the vaccination, and I'm completely scared to lose my job. So please have value in my life and our families. That's all I ask.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Syndra Weber. Syndra Weber, please.
Good evening, board and cabinet. I am Syndra.
I am Syndra Weber. I am a member of the Lakota Nation. Thank you. And I oversee our Indian Education Department. And last Wednesday, I had the honor of testifying before the California Assembly Education Committee and the California Select Committee on Native American Affairs regarding the upcoming bills, ACA VI and AB 1554. I would like to share a couple of bullet points of the speech that I gave the Assembly. One of them is, I have worked for the San Bernardino City Unified School District, Title VI, for over 20 years and have been involved with the program since its conception in the late 1980s. The program has its origins in the work of tribal elders from the San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, who for decades went to local schools to share their Surrano culture with local area students while exploring grant pathways to continue these programs. I am working with second-generation kids. I, my children, went through the program, and now those kids have kids, and it's pretty exciting. So for the past 22 years, the school district's Title VI Indian Education has partnered with San Manuel to bring students and teachers on field trips and workshops for the week-long California Indian Cultural Awareness Program. I coordinate the workshops that bring teachers in from all over our district and do follow-up work at their school sites with the information learned from the tribally-led workshop and the field trip for the students. In addition to providing a more accurate telling of the mission era in California, our curriculum also provides students the opportunity to recognize the many names of cities, streets, mountains, and other significant landscapes that originate from California Native Peoples. Pismo Beach, it's a Schumacher word for tar, and if you've ever been there, you'll know that's true. Cabazon. Cabazon is a Keweeia word for big head. Malibu, it's a Schumacher word for where the surf sounds loud. Yosemite, it's a Mewoc word, meaning adult bear. And there are many more. If you're in Palm Springs, Takwitz is the demon. That is in Keweeia also. The creation of curriculum that highlights the California Native experience, both in the past as well as the present, is also important because of the understanding, appreciation for diversity, and the empathy that it creates. Having California Indian history in our curriculum is needed not only for our Native students to feel seen, heard, and valued, but for all students to benefit from learning about Native traditions and culture. Per the California Dashboard, the 1920 year, our districts' Native American students had chronic absenteeism dropped by 4.3 percent, and their suspension rate declined for 4 percent. In our 2018-2019 academic year, our graduation rate for our Native students was 95 percent per the California Dashboard. That was the highest in California in or off a reservation. I would like, I just wanted to make sure you all know that we do have a Native American program, and I had dinner with Jose Medina, and he spoke extremely highly of you, Ms. Medina, and Dr. Flores. I just want to share with you the honor I had to do this, and it was quite exciting. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for our hats.
Our next speaker is Maria Jimenez Garcia.
Good evening.
And Cabinet members. My name is Maria Jimenez Garcia, and I have been teaching in San Bernardino since 2008. I'm a dual-immersion teacher, and I absolutely love what I do, and I'm proud to say I'm really good at it. I came today in person so you can see me, know my story, see my face, because I want you to know my testimony. On August 27th of 2021, just a few weeks ago, my husband took his first vaccine, as his job was also demanding it. He took it because he knew that if he didn't take it, he would be placed on unpaid leave, and as the man of the house, he knew he had to do it for his family. On August 29th, only 48 hours later, my 37-year-old husband had a heart attack. This has been life-changing. By the grace of God, my husband's okay, but our lives are changed. I saw my husband on the floor in pain, telling me he wasn't going to make it, and I needed to call 911 immediately. Since that day, it has been such a traumatic experience watching him that Sunday morning. I went back to work that Wednesday with my students. I was there, but I wasn't mentally there, so I had to take three weeks off, and my students unfortunately did not have a sub. Luckily, the support staff was able to take my class, and I was still lesson planning while being the caregiver for my husband. Ever since that day, I have been stressed, full of anxiety, thinking about my situation and what will happen in a few weeks, in January or on July 1st, 2022. Will I be also placed on unpaid leave for not taking the vaccine? Will my district support my right to choose what is best for my body? Why is natural immunity not being considered? Why are only unvaccinated employees being tested if both vaccinated and unvaccinated employees can get and spread COVID-19? Why are we the only ones being singled out? If we both can get and spread COVID-19, shouldn't we all be tested equally? Survival rates in children are so high, I can't even comprehend why it would be even an option for them to get vaccinated. As educators, we encourage our students to ask questions, encourage decision-making, to incorporate all different points of views. I constantly ask my students, you know, your voice matters. Your voice matters. You're important. So are you. I don't feel that way right now. We are not all given these options. We are being singled out. COVID-19 vaccine is so new, I have a lot of questions. Questions for my own children and for my students' body. What effects can it have in five years? 10 years? 15 years? Does anyone know? We don't know. Nobody knows. Why? Because there's not enough data and not enough research. These are all questions that run through my head on a daily basis. If one minor gets myocarditis or has any other adverse reaction, it is one too many. I ask you, Board, to remember my story. Remember the nightmare I lived only a few weeks ago when my 37-year-old husband had a heart attack only 48 hours after taking his first shot. I am a person who respects everyone's opinion, respects choice. What is right for one family might be right for another, and we have to remember that one size does not fit all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alfredo Jimenez.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm just going to make this real quick. I wasn't planning coming up here and speak, but I'm just going to follow up with everybody has said so far. I personally, I'm not affected by this mandate because I work, I'm an independent contractor. I do work with the community in this city, in the surrounding cities, in this county. I'm a licensed field underwriter in the state of California, AKA a life insurance agent. So I do get to see a lot of stories out there with a lot of families having injuries from this vaccine. So this is one of the reasons why these, your employees or staff members are scared to take this vaccine. One, it's not approved by FDA. They have lied to the public to tell us that it's been approved, is FDA-approved, but that is a total lie. It's a lie for everybody to go by, for the people. They're not too busy to do their own research, to just go ahead and buy and trust the government, trust the CDC, all this Dr. Fauci and all these officials who are all complicit on these crimes on humanity. I call them crimes on humanity because they're not informing the public what's inside these vaccines. They're not telling everybody what's inside these vaccines, and they're making it mandate for the children from 5 to 11. Now, let me show you, just in case you guys don't know, some of the ingredients that's on this jive is SN102, Luciferine, graphene oxide. There's a biotechnology parasites inside, all made by aborted fetal tissue, okay? And nobody's saying anything? Come on. When we had the Spanish flu back in the '70s, there was like 20 deaths, and they called off the vaccinations. Now there's more than 17,000, 18,000, and everybody's saying, oh, this is just a little sideverse effect. No, this is not normal. People need to wake up, okay? Because if the parents are getting injured, who's going to take care of the kids? What's going to happen? What's going to happen to humanity, okay? They made it available for the kids, okay? Yeah, sure, but they're adding an ingredient to stabilize heart attacks, okay? This is the reason why your staff members are scared to take this vaccine. It's all freedom of choice, yes, but it shouldn't be mandated because it's still an experimental. It's still an experimental, it's not even a vaccine. It's a gene therapy, okay? And there's the reason why life insurance are now paying claims. Life insurance companies are now paying claims because they know it's an experiment against humanity, and people need to wake up. This is my story. This is what I got to say.
Our next speaker is Andrea Schindler.
Good evening, members of the Board and the Cabinet. My name is Andrea Schindler, and I'm a teacher in the city, the San Bernardino City Unified School District. I'm also a mother of six, two of which were former students that became a forever part of our family. I'm proud to have served San Bernardino families for the last 20 years and hopefully for many years hereafter. To say that teaching virtually during a pandemic was challenging would be an understatement. You would think after a year-plus of navigating distance learning, that educators would be welcomed back to in-person instruction with a sense of appreciation and value. While we did hear words of recognition, the actions told us something very different. In fact, these actions have made many of us feel unvalued, expendable, and replaceable. How did this happen? Well, to start off, I'm amongst those who are being tested weekly, and what does that look like? That looks like me going into a room with my students, who are symptomatic even though I'm not, and their parents that are there in full public, to open to all of them, to either take my test in front of all of them or take my test with me. The message that this sent, that this action sent, was that my medical privacy is not a priority. To make matters worse, the only current testing option is the nasal swab, as opposed to the saliva spit test that's being offered in surrounding districts. If I'm uncomfortable with that invasive test and the lengthy consent form that requires that I assume all risk and liability, the district might be offering that test once a week for two hours here. Easier said than done of a mama of school-aged kids who are on extracurricular activities, including my youngest, who just came into our family two years ago, who is undergoing neurofeedback and trauma-based therapy to help his PTSD and issues that he suffered while he was in his biological family. The message that was sent by this action is that my own family and their needs outside of my workday are not of value and must be sacrificed to keep everybody quote-unquote "safer." And that, valued Board members and members of the Cabinet, is the most ludicrous statement of all. It is a well-known, unhidden, published fact that people who are vaccinated can still contract and spread the virus. So I ask you then, how is testing only the unvaccinated making our schools and our districts' workplaces any safer? Unless you are testing for all, this claim to a safer environment is really just a facade to excuse discrimination in the workplace. And just when I thought it couldn't get any worse, now us, the unvaccinated, are hearing of a possible mandate that would require all employees and students to vaccinate or else... I can't begin to tell you how betrayed I feel to think that the district that I have poured my heart into for the last 20 years would so quickly terminate and replace me for a vaccine that is still in the experimental stages, that is already showing side effects, and we don't even know the long-term side effects, and is still not eliminating the contraction and spread of the COVID-19 virus. This mandate is also denying the value of my COVID-19 naturally-acquired immunity, something that scientific studies have found to be effective in fighting the virus. So it would appear that I am now going to be backed into a corner, face the risks or lose my job. And now are we really going to back our parents into that same corner? They have to decide to put their children at risk with a vaccine that is still in the experimental stages or lose in-person instruction, despite what you've heard tonight about the children and how they are the least affected, but they are becoming the most affected population of the vaccine? The CDC has already reported, observed reports were substantially higher for myocarditis, and these are just the cases that are being reported. There's also other side effects, such as spastic tremors, neurological issues, and even paralysis. Where there is risk, there must be choice. What deeply concerns me is that surrounding districts have already created resolutions to enforce this mandate should it come to fruition. Using language like parental choice in vaccination and other health decisions is important. Vaccination status and records are protected health information and should not be shared by the mandate. Vaccine passports would create a division amongst our populace and violate the fundamental American principle that all people are created equal by establishing two classes of citizens, the vaccinated and vaccinated, and most of all, that a vaccine, that we will not implement a vaccine requirement. Yet, while surrounding boards have been vocal in their opposition, San Bernardino has remained eerily silent. I can only hope that you didn't have the information you had today. So now I'm asking you, are you going to be the voice that's going to stand up against this oppression? Are you going to back your own words in the resolution that you made in 2017 where you said, "Whereas the San Bernardino City Unified School District is committed to the success of all students irrespective of their immigration status, ethnicity, race, religion, sexual orientation, ability, sex and gender identity, socioeconomic status, or beliefs. Whereas education has played a critical role in further acceptance and strengthening our society as well as treating all people with dignity and respect, be it further resolved that the district shall provide public education regardless of a child's family or immigration status, absent of any applicable federal, state, or local law or local ordinance or court decision." This Board was bold in the past, standing up for our students and their families and would not allow a discrimination and the utilization of fear tactics based on immigration status. Will you not do the same regarding this vaccine status? As Desmond Tutu, a human rights activist so wisely stated, "If you are neutral in situations of injustice, you have chosen the side of the oppressor." So tonight, I leave here by saying, there is no more silence. There is no more neutrality. It's time to speak up and elevate our voices now.
Our next speaker is Esther Estrada. Our next speaker is Esther Estrada. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the San Bernardino Unified School District. Some of you may recall me, recall my, having been involved, my friend Margaret Hill and Dr. Flores and, oh my gosh. I'm, I, I'm here because I want to inform you and of course Danny Tillman, how can I forget you Danny? Thank you so much. Inform you about where we're at as it relates to the Ramona School, the old Ramona School that we all loved. It's my elementary school and the elementary school of my nine brothers and sisters and many, many community folks who have come by many times to expect, to extend their grief and to share with us our own mourning on the loss of that building. But I'm here today to share with you a brief report so that hopefully all those parents, all those community people that have been concerned about the future of Casa Ramona and the building, I wanted to make sure that I came and shared this information with you as the board and to share with the community that it has been 18 months since that fire and we have been working with the State Department of Toxic Control and EPA to try to figure a way to clean up that, that site because it has asbestos and lead. And of course, during this 18 months, there has been tremendous amount of additional damage to the site, but we continue to work with the community people in trying to clean it up as best as we can. And we are initiating some fundraising efforts, local fundraising efforts to try to clean around the building debris that's there. We have been told that the estimate for cleaning up that debris could run between $300,000 and $500,000 because of the asbestos and the way it is situated on the ground. When you have a building standing up, it's easier for them to be able to figure out how they're going to get rid of the problem, but because it is all demolished and on the ground, it is very difficult. So I wanted to make sure that at least I come by and let you know what Casa Ramona, the organization that I have been working with for the past 40 years, I am privileged to tell you that we are beginning our fundraising efforts and we are going to be continuing to work with the State Department of Toxic Control and the EPA and the City of San Bernardino and their Code Enforcement Division to try to clean up that site as much as possible, as quickly as possible. But we're also going to be building a new Casa Ramona Community Center. In the tradition of Ramona School, we are going to build a new Casa Ramona Community Center where we will once again be providing the community the many social services that we have provided over our 50 years of experience here in the city of San Bernardino. I just wanted to stop by and give you a quick report because I, it's been a while since I've been before this board and, uh, before we had the academy. Again, I really want to thank Margaret and Danny and Abigail and everybody for having supported the Casa Ramona Academy the way you did as part of this board. And the only reason that we had to close the academy was because when we went to get our third permit, the public needs to know this, the city of San Bernardino had already declared bankruptcy. And because now the city was under the state law and now they're not their local codes, the fire department could not approve the site that they had approved twice before. And we had no choice but to close the school in the winter of 17. So again, it's a privilege for me to have come before you and to thank you as friends and as board and our new superintendent, Dr. Daudy Rogers, who I'm sure is going to do a fantastic job. And I am pleased to be able to answer any questions. Call me at any time. You can find me at Casa Ramona anytime and I will answer whatever questions you may have about the future of that site. I felt it a responsibility, since we bought it from you, to come back and share with you where we are going in the future. Thank you so much for giving me a few minutes.
Thank you so much, Ms. Estrada. And our new superintendent is Doc Urban, but I know you do know me and my family and I'm the board president now. Good to see you so much. Thank you.
Okay, that's all for in-person. Now I have a few virtual ones that I'll start calling. The first one is Laura Norton. Laura Norton, if you're still available, please unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good. Hold on, let me just set up my phone really quick here. Okay. Uh, hello, everybody. My name is Dr. Laura Norton and I'm a family medicine doctor in San Bernardino County. Uh, I also have a master's degree in biotechnology and I was a research scientist for about 10 years and I'm currently practicing family medicine. I'm here today because of my deep concern about mandating an untested experimental vaccine on our children. I'm going to review some of the science. A lot of people have touched on these points, um, that children who contract COVID-19 infection do very well and have a 99.98% chance of surviving. The current available COVID-19 vaccines do not appear to prevent infection or spread of the virus. The vaccinated are shedding the virus, causing others to actually become infected. So it's, why are we demonizing the unvaccinated, especially those with natural immunity who have far superior protection against COVID-19 and pose no risk to anyone? So let us, let me talk about some of the risks that I've actually seen in my clinic firsthand and not just on VAERS reports. And this is amongst patients of all ages, ages. I've seen myocarditis and pericarditis, which is inflammation of the heart and around the heart, blood clots that can occur anywhere throughout the body, including the brain. I've seen seizures, tremors, headaches, and other neurological symptoms, anaphylaxis, kidney failure, heart attacks, stroke, chronic weakness and fatigue, joint and muscle pain, hair loss, strange rashes, weakened immune systems, and even death. And we are yet to know the long-term effects of this vaccine. Most drugs undergo clinical trials for 10 to 15 years before they enter the market. This COVID-19 novel gene therapy was released in less than a year. Most drugs do not even make it past animal trials, yet you want our children to be the animal trials for no concern for their safety or their long-term effects. Any doctor or scientist who says this is safe for children is a liar or completely clueless, clueless as to how safety verification works for any new drug being put on the market. In addition, we have zero data on the long-term side effects for adults or children. There is nothing worse than seeing young people coming into my clinic suffering needlessly from a vaccine they did not need for a virus they could have recovered from. Now that I've talked about some of the awful medical effects, let's talk about the legal aspects in medicine. Vaccine and mask mandates are not laws and are unconstitutional. Prescribing or even promoting medicine is not something that a school district can lawfully do. It violates both the federal and California Constitution, negating people's right to direct their own health and medical care. There is no California law that grants school districts the authority to require additional vaccines to the K through 12 immunization schedule. The only authority that may add new shots to the list is the California Department of Public Health. To date, no such change has been made to the vaccine schedule. Even with additions to the vaccine schedule, the law requires that both medical and personal belief exemptions be allowed. No authority can mandate vaccines that are still under emergency use authorization. It is also unlawful to enroll children in clinical trials when there is no overwhelming benefit to that child. And make no mistake, this is clinical trials right now. Clearly with a survival rate of 99.98%, the risks far outweigh the benefits, it is safer to not vaccinate. Though the manufacturers and distributors of the COVID-19 shot are not liable for any adverse effects, this liability coverage does not include the school district or its associated staff. Any school complying with COVID-19 vaccine mandates or even FDA-approved ones will be exposed to lawsuits and liability arising from any harms resulting therefrom. If the school board passes the COVID-19 vaccine mandate, make no mistake, there will be swift and decisive legal action against it as well as against every school administrator and teacher that willfully participates in and enforces the unlawful mandate. It is not okay to just say that you are following orders. That is exactly what the Nazis in Germany said, yet they were still held accountable. So I'm asking all of you to stand up and do the right thing for the children. Will you be able to live with yourselves if these children become injured or even die? But anyone who hurts one of these little ones who believe in me, it would be better for them to have a large weight hung around their neck and to be drowned in the depths of the sea. Matthew 18:6. And please patriots at this meeting who are wearing masks, it is unlawful to mask you. Please take off your mask and stand up for your rights and stand up for our children. I, I come to this meeting because of deep concern and love for our kids. Please, I ask you board to dig deep into your heart and make the right decision. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Jimmy. Jimmy, if you're available, please unmute now.
Hello, testing?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, members of the school board. Thank you for having me on. CSCA has invited people to speak on the RIAV today. This is why you see so many blue shirts out in the crowd tonight. CSCA asked us to be for the 7% off-schedule raise, but I think it's pathetic that when they want help from us, they stand up and pull out all the stops, but we as a union, as you, as union members ask for guidance, we are shunned, yet they tout that they stand in solidarity with us. I think it's pathetic and vile how CSCA behaves. They are so willing to do SBCUSD's bidding that SBCUSD is using CSCA stewards and representatives to discipline its own union members that are SBCUSD employees. The CSCA does not work for SBCUSD. CSCA works for us, the members of CSCA. CSCA is supposed to talk to us and be transparent, but prefers to make backroom deals with SBCUSD. Of all the things CSCA can be pushing for, they choose to push for money. Why? Because the money also benefits them. What is the point in having a union if all they care about is money? I thought our union was there to help its members not gain a profit. As for SBCUSD, they continue to discriminate against us. They continue to act like we have a choice, but we don't. We only have their choices. Remember, you have a choice, comply or be gone. Who honestly believes we have a choice when for some of us, those options are not a choice? If we actually had a choice, this board meeting would be a lot emptier than it is today. SBCUSD continues to discriminate against its employees who do not wish to disclose their private medical information that are protected by HIPAA laws and our constitution. SBCUSD shouldn't, shouldn't pigeonhole itself when other communities and school districts have fought and stood up for what is right. Even though there has been an attempt to gaslight me by a member of CSCA and SBCUSD, other school districts and other, and local chapter, local chapters are willing to negotiate on these matters. Why is it that S, why is it that SBCUSD refuses to even consider or entertain the idea of negotiating any part of the mandates? As Barbara Flores mentioned during the last board meeting, these are serious concerns and you can't just ignore them. It's your job to work with us to figure things out. We all require more transparency, transparency coming from SBCUSD and CSCA when there are only two choices given by someone else, is it a true choice for anyone?
Our next speaker is Norma Godinez. If you're available, please unmute.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So hello. Here are two stories you can find on the Telegram channel, COVID vaccine injuries. John Stokes, a Division One golf threat at Tennessee State University, may never play golf again. On September 12th, he posted a video on TikTok warning about others about the risk of these COVID vaccines. Like all other athletes, to play in the NCAA requires athletes to get vaccinated. He was hospitalized, he was hospitalized four days after taking the second dose and diagnosed with myocarditis. He goes on to say the adverse reactions are not being reported and people should not be forced to take these vaccines since some people can develop serious complications and there are no long-term studies to prove that they are safe. John has talked to others, other student athletes and they have had adverse reactions to these vaccines also. Grayson Fulmer started Ohio State University during the pandemic. He got COVID in September of 2020 and recovered. He had his first Pfizer shot in April 16, 2021 with minor symptoms. The second shot was on May 7th and Grayson had severe adverse reactions to the vaccine. He was taken to the hospital three times. His mother said he has, he now has high blood pressure, severe chest pain, back pain, elevated kidney levels, hypothyroidism, inflamed lymph nodes, and he cannot work or exercise. He has, he has been seen by doctors and specialists and the family has spent quite a bit out of pocket to cover all medical expenses. He is receiving stem cell treatments, taking ivermectin and numerous supplements to support his conditions. Doctors estimate it will take Grayson about two years to fully recover. There's no information on how to treat myocarditis. He has not gone back to school, he cannot work, exercise, and is in counseling to cope with what has happened to him. His mother is frustrated because she did not know and no one told her about the contraindications of taking these vaccines after having COVID. Also, no one told her about the vaccine adverse reporting system. She has reported her son's adverse reaction VAERS ID number, 1395886, but no one has contacted her and his report has not been added to the system. Ms. Fulner says she will not be vaccinating her other children. She wants everyone to know and not be naive like her, thinking that this cannot happen to your children. In March of 2021, Wilensky, the director of the CDC, stated vaccinated people can care, do not carry the virus and do not get sick. Then in August, she stated that those were, that those that were vaccinated early are an increased risk of severe disease. In layman's terms, the vaccines don't work. These vaccines should never be mandated. It should be left up to the individual or parent. These vaccines are not a cure and whether you are vaccinated or not, you can still get COVID and spread it. Keep in mind, kids do not run a high risk when it comes to COVID. It's the pharmaceutical companies, the CDC, the federal, state, or local governments will not be responsible for any adverse reactions these vaccines may cause. Then will the school districts be responsible if and when these vaccines are mandated, mandated in, in the California schools? It is something to think about. Kids do not run a risk. There is no reason that they should be mandated. Board members, please take a stand for the children of San Bernardino County. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we have one more in-person that I didn't realize. Robin Rucker, if you can come forward, please.
Is that someone still on the line? Good evening. But is it, was someone still on the line? No? Okay. Hello?
Hi. Good evening, board and cabinet. My name is Robin Rucker. I work as a campus security officer in the district for about 14 years. Um, I'm here on behalf of CSCA and wages. Um, I'm asking the district to consider the 7% wage increase. It's a one-time, you know, apparently the district doesn't have money for an on-schedule raise. So we're asking the district to consider the 7% off-schedule raise that CSCA is asking for. As you guys know, today in today's society with inflation, I just saw the Social Security inflation rate at 5.9%. Right now, our, our low wage earners for CSCA making 14 to $16 an hour. Right now, our students are making more than our employees. So I'm asking you guys to consider a 7% wage increase off-schedule. Like I said, it, it seems like to me, just from my lens, we seem to be top-heavy and the bottom people that are actually, I'll say, in the trenches, uh, supporting our students and staff. seem to be forgotten at this point. So that's, that's why I'm here. I'm asking for a fair wage for our employees. It's a one-time wage at this point. And hopefully, the board, the district, can find something for our CSEA employees, our classified employees. I talked to one of my coworkers. He works at a middle school. He said, Rock, we had, we have three cafeteria workers serving our students. He said, at the end of the 30-minute lunch bell, they're still in line, waiting to get their lunches, missing out on their instructional minutes. We don't have, we're paying $14 an hour for these employees. We have to do better. We have to do better. I know we just had or going to have a employment opportunity, district recruitment. You know, our, our kids are making $17 an hour at Baker's, In-N-Out Burger, but our employees are making $14, $16 an hour with a one-time raise at this point because the district is saying, that's all we have. That's all we have. And like I said, it seems to me, I could be wrong. It seems like we keep hiring more managers, supervisors, assistant, our top 10 percenters that are in this room. We seem like we keep getting more of those positions and the people that custodians, security, cafeteria, instructional aides that are making pretty much minimum wage are suffering. So we're asking for 7% off-schedule because the district is saying, we have no money, we're broke, to give you guys even 1%, 2% on-schedule. We have nothing for you guys. So that's why I'm here, asking for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Laslow. Laslow, if you're available, please unmute.
Yes, good evening. Honorable members of the board, my name is Laslow, and I'm a grandparent of several children who I love dearly and care about as if they were my own and are students in your school system, who would like to briefly address the proposed state vaccine mandate for schoolchildren. Can you all hear me okay, by the way?
Yes, we can.
Okay. A lot of what I'm going to say has already been said tonight. I'm sure your ears are probably read by now. So thank you for your time. And some of this may be repetitive, but needs to be said again and again. I'm not opposed to a vaccine per se, but I am not in favor of this vaccine because there still is no truly reliable information out there. The mainstream media has spun this in so many directions, depending on the source, and it's very difficult to really know, to separate the truth from fiction. A while back, I read that this vaccine is 100% safe. Then I read that protection is not ironclad. Then I read that fully vaccinated people have still contracted the virus. And then again, I read that people who did not have the virus or were vaccinated have had severe adverse reactions or have died likely from the vaccine itself. As an example, I recently read that 40% of COVID deaths in a certain hospital in Maryland were patients that were fully vaccinated. 40% of the deaths are vaccinated patients. I will not cite sources, but you can and should do the research yourself. We have heard earlier from apparently very credible medical doctor who stated simply that this vaccine is not safe. I also recently read that Casa Premonente temporarily laid off around 2,200 nurses because they refused to be vaccinated. When medical professionals refuse a vaccine, what do they know that we don't? Doesn't instill a lot of confidence for the vaccine. So why is a vaccine being pushed so hard? Well, as the old saying goes, just follow the money. The full truth of pros and cons of the vaccine may probably be not known for some time, and that is my point. There's still a great deal that is unknown. There simply has not been enough time to fully test the pros and cons of the vaccine. There has even been less time, a lot less time, to test its effect on schoolchildren. Even though it is supposed to be a reduced dosage, it doesn't matter. These children are not lab rats and should not be treated as such. Many teachers and parents have spoken here tonight. I support all of them. But I speak for the children, especially my grandchildren, who cannot really address this issue properly before this board. We don't know the negative effects the vaccine may have in the long term. And perhaps years from now, when we do learn, it may be too late to say no. I would request and recommend, at least for now, that this board adopt a resolution opposition to the proposed mandate of vaccinating these children, as I understand, has been done in several districts across the state. And refusing to comply with such mandate once one is in place in the true interest, in the true interest of the health of these children. Please don't be like the Nazi soldiers of World War II, many of whom stated, quote unquote, "We were just following orders." Ensuring that these children receive adequate education is and should be the main purpose of this board. Let the parents, not this board, nor the government, make choices regarding their health. Thank you for your time and God bless.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Grace Beatty. Grace Beatty, please unmute.
Good evening, public servants and elected officials. I'm Grace Beatty, and I teach at Del Valle Hill Middle School and STEAM Academy. I've taught there for 22 years. I am compelled to speak tonight as a district employee and SBTA union member. First, I would like to caution the SBCUSD community concerning the public criticism of our new superintendent. There are many members that are sick and tired of business as usual, which has resulted in less than glowing results for years. I am equally concerned about the state of charter schools in our district in general and the charter that is housed on our campus at Del Valle Hill Leadership and STEAM Academy in particular. This board is responsible for taking classrooms away from students that are already economically disadvantaged and giving them to a charter owned and operated by a board member's daughter with a ghost count of 189 children in attendance, which you have not even attempted to adequately verify. Let's assume the numbers are correct, and they are not, but let's assume. How do you justify taking 11 classrooms and six bathrooms from our school to give to 151 students? And less than 40 of them are from our district. Savan is required to have at least 80 students from San Bernardino Unified. The contract that this board gift to Savan is violated daily, yet they continue to operate flagrantly with this board's blessings. I believe that it is a crime to misrepresent ADA to the government. Where is the accountability? Dr. Wyatt, please make public all your findings related to the charters we house, including the number of children that they service. I have the facts. You need to make yours public. I'm certain that if you don't, someone else will. Here's the hypocrisy. I've listened to members of this board speak and voice concerns, both verbally and non-verbally, to our superintendent about the money. Where is it going and how is it being used? Yet there was no fervor when you unanimously voted to gift over a half a million dollars to Savan and resources from our sped population. Again, where is the accountability? For too long, members of this board randomly pick and choose which entities you assist, and you bring that same mentality to this public forum, making it all too evident the biases that run rampant throughout our educational community. Certain members of this board insist that Mr. Irving give the report, but you constantly interrupt him and ask to hear from members of his cabinet in the same breath. I have watched you sit here and bicker and pick and prod about your own personal preferences. We are all here to provide the best service possible to children, scholars, and young adults. One of the main problems is that many of you have forgotten that you are public servants first. Therefore, you tend to be self-certain. Some of you have been operating incorrectly for so long that you now call it protocol and fight to the bitter end to uphold your inappropriate behavior. President Biden's Build Back Better Plan has literally been cut in half. Amongst other things, there will be no free college for youth in our country. Are you prepared for the ramifications of this cut? Have you even considered what this means for school districts around the country in general and our district in particular? COVID has revealed many flaws in our system. One major flaw is the export of our manufacturing. Therefore, we will need a sustainable workforce. Rather than investing taxpayers' dollars in these failing charter schools, we must invest in vocational programs throughout our district. Have we even considered a district vocational public school? There are bootcamps for all types of industries. Reach out and form legitimate partnerships. I hear this board has been giving out contracts like candy at Halloween. Call in some of those favors and put students first by asking for apprenticeships or fellowships. Vocational and certification programs will provide for our students a stepping stone to lift themselves up and onto better and bigger opportunities. Your role as members obligates you to provide opportunities for success for all SBCUSD. And college is not the only road that leads there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, and our last public comment is from Hardy Brown. Mr. Brown, if you're available, please unmute.
Mr. Brown has asked me to read into the record his, his comments tonight. This is Cheryl Brown. And I'm, I'm reading them for him because of his ADA requirements. Okay, good evening, President, Dr. Gwen Rogers and other board members and Superintendent Doc Irving and staff. Since my, since my appearance before you, a couple of meetings ago, I stay in touch with what's going on by tuning in virtually on YouTube. The technology has made it possible for people with disabilities to be more engaged with our civic duty and responsibilities to keep our elected officials accountable in the performance of their duties. I want to commend Dr. Margaret Hill on receiving the Catalyst in Education Award from Cal State University, San Bernardino. Let me quote the letter. You, Dr. Hill, are nominated to receive the Catalyst in Education Award for your many years of service to the community and your dedication to excellence in education. It is given to individuals who have made significant contributions to the field of teaching and learning in the Inland Empire region and helped to facilitate the mission of Cal State College of Education, which is to inspire students and to serve our communities through teaching and learning. Congratulations to my friend, Dr. Ernie Garcia, a former dean at the California State University, San Bernardino, and a consultant to San Bernardino Unified School District of Board of Education when I was president. He guided us for one year under school board training. The program was funded by the Danforth Foundation. Dr. Garcia, for many years of his service, is being honored with a lifetime achievement award, and they're also announcing a scholarship in Dr. Ernie Garcia's name. Let me also, let me also say congratulations to Superintendent Doc Irving for being invited by the U.S. Department of Education Secretary, Dr. Miguel Cardona, to be a panelist for education webinar for school-based mental health, a national priority. They selected him because, I quote, "We are impressed by your qualifications and feel as though you would be an ideal fit for the panel." In my opinion, this brings the kind of prestige and honor to our district that we need. Again, congratulations to Dr. Margaret Hill, Doc Irving, and Ernie Garcia for your service to our children, staff, and community. Your examples should inspire us to be better served, for better service to the community and what good leadership should be. Thank you, Hardy Brown.
Thank you. Dr. Rogers, I have one more.
Okay.
Jay, if you want to come forward, please.
Good evening. And come up closer a little bit to the mic or pull it up.
Okay. Yeah, my name, my name is Jay. I just wanted to bring up my sons. This is my youngest. Both of my sons grew up in the, in the San Bernardino Unified School District. They, from pre-K to senior, he just graduated last year. And I just want to, you know, support the, the free choice, you know? Give, give your employees, give, give your, your students' families free choice, you know? I think that, that's, you've been hearing all, everyone come up. I'm just trying to go off the floor right now. Just, just listen to them, the classified. I, I worked for a school district over 20 years, local, local school district. And, you know, work with your employees, you know? I encourage you guys to, to just offer the swap test, you know? The swap test, just work with them, you know? You're hearing them about money raises. We all know there's millions of dollars from COVID. They're just, they're asking just for something, you know? Just not even on a schedule, but that would be good to be on schedule. But, you know, get, hook them up. I mean, they're the ones, I'm a custodian. They're, they're on the front lines. They're dealing with the variants. They're dealing with all that stuff. They're feeding the kids. They're keeping the, the school safe. They're, they're maintaining the facilities. They're doing security. They're, they're doing, they're teaching the kids. Just work with them. I, I just want to encourage you guys to do that. I regret not speaking up for, for my son here when he was, spent his whole senior year online and he was struggling. But by the grace of God, you know, he, he, he graduated. And, you know, he did the hard work and he graduated from Coe-Hone. And, you know, I just, it was hard, you know? He, he didn't have a choice to do that. Give your students, give your employees choices, you know? What they want to do, what's best for their family. You know, you hear all the people right here talking. And let's see what I got. Yeah, I just encourage you guys and, and, and we're going to keep you in prayer like, like my sister was praying for you guys earlier, you know? Just not only this school district, all the local districts, man, that God will give you guys wisdom and direct you guys. And I don't want to break down right here, but like, this is crazy times. I know it's difficult, but just, just, you know, listen to your people. Pray, trust God, and that's, that's pretty much I got.
Well, good, good evening? Well, hi, I'm Francisco. I just recently graduated from Coe-Hone High School. I just asked to work with teachers and students as well because they feel the effects of everything that you guys do. It's hard, it's hard for us. So just to work with them, that's all you gotta do. Just help the community, help the people. They want to work with you, work with them. I know teachers that will talk to me about they're scared of their job and they don't and they don't want to speak on behalf of them. Just work with teachers. They love teaching, they love us, and we want, we love them. Just help them and help the students. This mandate's in it. I don't know what the students are going to do if we need to get vaccinated. Just, it's not going to work. Let the parents choose for the kids, not the board choose for us. It's not your choice, it's our choice. We want to work, we want to learn. Let the teachers teach. And you know, as you heard, some parents are willing to pull their kids out of school because of this mandate. Just let the kids have their friends, let them enjoy their life. As soon as you graduate, you don't know what to do, but you have your friends. It's hard, it's hard to deal with that. But help the kids, help the parents and have them choose what they want to do with their kids. Let them grow in a good lifestyle that they have room and comfortability to be with their kids and their families. I just thank you, thanks for letting us speak today.
Thank you for your time, God bless you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Cunningham, you said that's the final comment?
That is all.
All right, thank you all for your comments. We are now going to go back to 4.2 and adjourn to close session. Thank you. Okay, I think, let's see, Dr. Wyatt is back. All right, we're back from closed session and we are now at... Let me get there. 5.1, appointment of Director of Categoricals. Uh-oh, Karen, I don't know if my... Let me see if it's opening. Okay, no, I think it opened. Dr. Wyatt, so be on the... Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employee. Kimber Sargent, Director of Categorical Programs, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined.
So moved.
And we're going to finish the vote and continue to clap. Okay, it's been moved in second. If there's no further discussion outside of the claps, let's vote.
Sorry, I didn't hear the second.
It was Dr. Flores. We got to be at... All right, motion carried. Let's give it up again officially. Congratulations to you, and I guess you can go home and get a little sleep. All right, 5.2, appointment of Elementary School Vice Principal. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employee. Rebecca Quesada, Elementary School Vice Principal, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. I think Dr. Hill caught on that one, on the second. And if there's no other discussion, let's vote.
Dr. Flores?
All right, motion carried, thank you. Is Ms. Quesada here? If not, congratulations if you're watching us. All right, moving to 5.3, claim number 541368. Settlement, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves settlement agreement claim number 541368 in the amount of $64,200.
So moved.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? If not, let's vote. Thank you, motion carried. 5.4, numbers SB 085-5458, SB 15-8840, SB 15-8730, and 549008. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the settlement agreement claims. Number SB 08-5458, SB 15-8840, SB 15-8730, and 549008 in the amount of $96,000.
So moved.
Okay.
It's been moved in second. If there's no further discussion, let's vote. Thank you, motion carried. 5.5, expulsions of students, positive youth development. The Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendations and findings of the hearing panel based on the review of the panel's finding of facts and recommendations and orders. The expulsion of the following students with the identified numbers as listed below in accordance with the Board's rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code 48900. And that is ES 421277, EC 48915A-2, EC 48915471799, EC 48915A-2, and S 510439, EC 4900A-1, EC 48900A-2, 486522, EC 48900C, EC 48915A-3, and C-3, and 462466. Oh, it went off my screen. 462446, EC 8900A-0. And the last one, I can't see it. Yeah, that one's hard to... Hold on a second. On the... Dr. Rodriguez, this one, I can't move over. It's the 427545. Okay, 48915A-2. I found it. Okay, I was able to do it. Thank you. All right, those were the readouts, board, or the expulsions?
So moved.
It's been moved in second. If there is no further discussion, let's vote. All right, motion carried, thank you. And now 5.6, students recommended for suspension or expulsion, excluding mandatory offenses, but remanded to youth court for other means of correction. Positive youth development. The Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation of findings and the facts of the Positive Youth Development Department and orders the suspension or expulsion of the following students with identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the Board's rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900. And 523375, EC 48900A-1, EC 48900A-2, 450113, 48900B, 451738, EC 48900B, and EC 48900C. And the last one, again, let's see if I can pull it over. Is, oh gosh, hold on. Yeah. Okay, 417285, and it's 48900B and 48915A-2. Thank you.
Moved. Second.
It's been moved in second. If there is no discussion, let's vote. All right, motion carried, thank you. And 5.7, petition to expunge, rescind, or modify youth court or expulsion, positive youth development. And that the Board of Education authorized the expulsion and/or youth court modification, expungement, or rescinding of the following students with identification numbers as indicated below to Schools of the San Bernardino City Unified School District in accordance with the Board's rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code 48900. We have 353362, EC 48900RN, EC 48915C-4, 422642, EC 48900F, EC 48915C-1, and 40316, EC 48915A-1.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? If not, we will go ahead and vote. All right, motion carried, thank you. We are now at 7.0, public hearings. 7.1, public hearing and school board reappointment of Michael Salazar to the Personnel Commission. So I'm going to open up the public hearing. Are there any... Okay.
Comment?
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to, you want to comment when we vote?
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I'm going to close. Be it resolved, be it resolved that the Board of Education authorized the reappointment of Michael Salazar by the San Bernardino City Unified School District Board of Education for a three-year term effective December 2nd, 2021 through December 1st, 2024. I have a motion.
Second, and I'll second.
Is there, okay, there's a second. All right, is there discussion?
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Salazar for all of his work for the past years. We really appreciate you for being so thoughtful and so professional and for all your work in the Personnel Commission.
Welcome back, Mr. Salazar. Ms. Salas, Medina?
I wanted to dittle the same thing, but I would also like, maybe take this opportunity to ask with the Personnel Commission, because I know that they used to come to the board and do a brief presentation, if we can ask them to do one. Maybe schedule it for our agenda so we can have... I know we have three commissioners in that Personnel Commission, but we also have maybe staff that would like to also speak. Just so we can get an update from them, it's been a while since we haven't heard from them.
Right, okay, very good. And if there's no other discussion, let's go ahead and cast our vote. All right, motion carried, thank you. All right, we are now at 8.0, reports by union organizations. And 8.1, San Bernardino Teachers Association, I believe, are they not on the line? All right. Probably. Thanks to us. 8.2, California School Employees Association. Hello? Thank you for waiting. Uh, no.
How do I, oh, there we go.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, President Rogers, board members, superintendent, and cabinet. My name is Juanita Upshaw, the chapter treasurer for San Bernardino 183. I am also a proud SBCUSD classified employee of 16 years, working as a computer operations technician in the Information and Technology Department. Tonight, I stand strong and proud alongside my fellow brothers and sisters who are still remaining, who collectively represent the voice of 2,000 members. I can't express enough how proud I am of my fellow brothers and sisters who came up to this podium to stand up for what is right, just, and fair. It took great courage for each and every one of them to approach you this evening with their concerns and those of our fellow classified employees. Tonight, I'm here to speak on good faith bargaining. What does that mean? It means meeting with the other side, exchanging bargaining proposals, and making a sincere attempt to reach an agreement. It's a sincere effort to reach a common ground. CSCA has been in negotiations with the district for the past three and a half months for our re-opener agreement. We only brought three items to the bargaining table. So far, we've only been able to agree upon two out of those three items. Where do you think the hangup is? Wages. During this time, CSCA has provided the district with several counteroffers regarding wages, including an assortment of on-schedule and off-schedule salary increases. Each time we present the district with a new counterproposal, they continue to say, "I have to take it to the board to get my parameters." And yet, the district continues to return to the bargaining table with the same exact counteroffer every single time without expressing the aforementioned parameters that they supposedly received from the school district. School board, I mean. How do you think we feel every time we see that same exact counteroffer by the district? Let me tell you, we feel like we're basically negotiating with ourselves. The district isn't showing us that they are sincere about taking the offer to you, the school board, nor are they sincere about conveying their understanding of the position that we're in as classified employees. But for those of you who don't know the meaning of the word sincere, let me break it down for you. Merriam-Webster defines it as "free of dissimulation," meaning honest; "free of adulteration," meaning pure; and "marked by genuineness," meaning true. So with this definition in mind and based on how we've been treated during this negotiations effort, we feel that the district has not shown sincerity in their approach to these matters. It seems to us, with all the hard work and effort that we put in on a daily basis, that the district would recognize how important it is that we be able to at least feel as though we are properly compensated. Inflation is a real thing. Those of us who live in this city and surrounding areas should feel as though these common everyday truths of life should be recognized and addressed in how we are compensated. This includes looking at alternatives to helping us meet our everyday financial goals. We, the classified employees of the San Bernardino City Unified School District, have done our very best to respect, to move, and change when called upon to do so. I can tell you that we don't feel respected or heard in the ways that matter. We go hard every day for you all, and we just want to see that you are trying, that you are stretching, that you are pushing to do the same for us. But we're not blind, like my husband. We understand that your job is to be fiscally responsible. We're not asking you not to be responsible. We're asking you to show us that you understand the position we're in and that you are willing to show us by approving what we've requested. CSCA has been putting our best foot forward in negotiations, but unfortunately, we're not receiving the same in return. I'm here to ask that this school board seriously considers what the classified employees have been asking for for months, and that the deal that is accepted is one that you, each one of you sitting on the board and the cabinet, would accept if you were in our position. According to the Consumer Price Index, within the past year from September 2020 through September 2021, it's been reported that fruits and vegetables rose 3%. Meats, poultry, fish, and eggs rose 10.5%. Electricity rose 5.2%. Electricity rose five point two percent. Gas rose twenty point six percent, and gasoline rose forty-two point one percent. These are just everyday items needed for the classified employees and their families. So please show the classified employees that you understand their needs and value what they do and agree to accept our latest proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the energy this late. I appreciate you waiting. Okay, is eight point three is Communication Workers of America? No? Yes? No? All right, and eight point four, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association? All right, thank you. Well, thank you for being here. Okay, we are now at nine point one administrative reports.
And we have four reports for you this evening, uh, Listening and Learning Tour, Teaching and Learning Update, Anti-Bullying Update and Strategies, and Custodial Staffing Updates, and we'll keep them short and sweet.
A good evening, Board. So I do want to give you just an update really quickly about the conclusion um, as we're wrapping up the Listening and Learning Tour that Mr. Irvin's been doing. Um, I know that about a month or so ago, we were able to come and talk to you a little bit about what had happened to that point, and I just want to update you on some of the, the details about that. So all told, we held sixteen different forums for employees and stakeholders in the district. They included parents, students, classified staff, um, managers, as well as certificated staff. Uh, over eight hundred and fifty people participated in those forums and contributed to us uh, two thousand four hundred and fifty-seven different ideas about the topics that we were asking them to share. We had thirty different meet and greets with nearly four hundred people. And, uh, Mr. Irvin has made eighty-nine site visits, um, to schools, uh, sometimes visiting schools more than once, uh, since the beginning of the school year. So he's been in a hundred and seventy-eight classrooms, talking to teachers and students on our campuses to hear about what they think, um, is important for our district. And I know that he's had, um, in-depth conversations with each of you, as well as Cabinet, um, and to get input and feedback. I wanted to, uh, share, although I know you heard already in some of the public comments, that one of the, the things that recently came out of the Listening, Learning, and the Meet and Greets was an invitation for Mr. Irvin to speak, um, on a panel with the Secretary of Education, Dr. Miguel Cardona, um, on the twelfth of November, where he will be, um, discussing mental health in schools. Um, and this forum will be facilitated by the Kennedy Forum. So we're really excited about this opportunity to, to showcase the work that we do in mental health services here in our district on a national stage. And I know that Mr. Irvin will represent us well. So, um, just wanted to share those updates with you.
Thank you. And are you adding anything?
Yes, I, I just wanted to ask, uh, Mr. Irvin. So what are we gonna, what are you gonna do with, uh, the two thousand, um, how much was it, two thousand eight hundred and so recommendations by the, the teachers? Uh, could, could you just tell us what you're gonna do with those?
Oh, the two thousand eight hundred recommendations. So basically, what we're gonna do is, are we coming back to the board on November ninth? Well, first of all, we're gonna start condensing that information. So it'll take us two, three months to go through all of it. But right now, there's a few emerging themes, almost five emerging themes that have, um, that have risen to the top. So one of the things we're gonna do is I'm gonna come back to the board. We're gonna be talking about some short-term goals just for the remainder of the year, based on what we've heard. And then, we're gonna come back probably around February with the long-term goals, but a lot of that's gonna be with a strategic planning session, working closely with the board. So we'll give you a timeline, um, of next steps. Again, we'll put it in the next Friday update, but on next week, on the ninth, all along the way, we were taking information, thinking about short-term goals. So our team has been working behind the scenes. I believe every Tuesday, I believe you guys have, um, tactical on Tuesdays, and they've been, we've been working behind the scenes, so.
And are these, um, two thousand eight hundred recommendations from teachers?
Not all of them. Some of them are from students, some of them are from parents. Some of them are from classified staff.
So you're gonna, you're gonna categorize them and then put them by priority and so forth, okay?
There's, there's several emerging themes, and the, the goal would be is whatever those emerging themes are, we want to make sure that they're uniform across the entire district. So we're not having four or five different goals. We want to make sure that they're, we try to make them uniform, so.
I think it would be really important to, once you have that out there, that, that we get input from as many, um, stakeholders too, in terms of, uh, their response. I don't know how you do it, but, you know, through thought, through thought exchange, or, you know, where we can do it virtually, um, because, uh, you know, just to, to confirm if those are the, the themes or the, um, priorities. I think it's good that, that, uh, we have identifying those, but, you know, how, what's the input from everybody? That's what I would like to, who wants to participate, yeah.
So the Listening and Learning Tour will be a phase two. So we'll continue the Listening and Learning Tour, but Phase two will be, we're gonna say, once I go to the board and say, here's what we're hearing, we're gonna take those, those emerging themes and priorities, and we're gonna go back to everyone we've met with. Does that make sense? We're gonna go back to each and every group and share those emerging themes and get feedback a second time. So we're gonna be doing that throughout the process up until February. And once we confirm that those short-term goals are those emerging themes, then we'll start that strategic planning process with the community, with the board, whatever the process is, around February, March. So this way, by July of next year, we're all in agreement on what does it look like for the next three years. So Phase two of the Listening and Learning Tour would be every group that we've met with, Ginger. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ginger. Everyone we've met with, we're going back to them on Phase two of the Listening and Learning Tour, saying, here's what we heard, here's our goals, overarching goals, here's our priorities. And then, we're gonna talk about how we're gonna measure those. And again, the short term for this year only, though. Does that make sense? Because we don't want to put long-term goals in there, because we haven't had a chance to sit with the board and the community.
I really, I really like when you guys had the town halls. And so when you, um, had, you know, parents that couldn't participate, or teachers that couldn't participate, they were given a venue possibly to weigh in. Uh, uh, I, I would recommend that you do that again, so.
And Dr. Flores, we'll get to hear some of it on the night, or get to see it first as a board, and then, all right.
I just, I just respond.
Yeah, that's good. All right, um, Ms. Rosales Medina?
Yes, well, thank you for that, uh, thank you for the report. I do want to ask with regarding the strategic planning update. And, and I know that, um, I was part of the process back when I, even before being a board member. Um, so it may look different, uh, with the process that you're gonna do. So I would like to, I know you briefly mentioned who was gonna be part of the strategic plan. Um, but how were you, um, envisioning that to be? Uh, because I know that I was, uh, what I've been through was maybe a little bit different from what you're planning to, um, bring the strategic plan.
So we're gonna be coming, I believe, on November sixteenth, we're gonna be coming back to the board to walk through the process and get input from the board on that project, on the next step. So we want to make sure that the board weighs in on the next steps, uh, on, on, in terms of the next steps, in terms of Phase two of this Listening and Learning Tour. So when we lay out the process, we'll come to the board, I believe, is it November sixteenth, Dr. Miners? And then the board will weigh in and say, okay, yes, add this. So we want to make sure we're working collaboratively with the board. And then, once we get that information, we're gonna continue to move forward in, in terms of planning, because it's gonna take us two to three months to plan out, uh, the strategic planning process.
So when you're referring to the, so there's like the committee or the more, uh, the smaller circle, I imagine. So within that, who's gonna be involved? And, and I, and I imagine that's also gonna be part of the conversation with who's gonna be involved? Because I know in the past, it has been, you know, community leaders, it has been unions reps, uh, different union reps. There was also school board members. I mean, it was, you name it, individuals in community.
Absolutely, everything you've mentioned, that is part of the process. But, but again, we're gonna get your feedback, because what we want to make sure is that whatever process you've used in the past, and any thoughts that we have going forward, we want to make sure we merge it to, or the board may have some thoughts as well. So everything that you just talked about, I, I believe, and I'm correct, I think I'm correct, they're in, they're in that process, right? Dr. Miners, we, we included them.
And we also had students, too.
We had students, yeah.
Yes, all of those, um, various groups of people that you mentioned are going to be part of the strategic planning process.
All right, thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Mr. Irvin, I just want to say congratulations, being a part of the Secretary of Education Forum. How many superintendents, are there other educators on that?
Only selected, Ginger, you were involved with the process in terms of, I think it was only one?
I think there are two, including Mr. Irvin, on the panel, the superintendent. So, um, we're pleased to have him, um, participate in that. But there's an other, there are a couple of other leaders as well, in addition to the Secretary of Education, so. Yep.
I believe only one superintendent. I think I'm the only one, uh.
I would have to go back and look. I'm sorry.
I believe I'm the only one. I think the other ones are healthcare professionals.
One or two. I think it's absolutely wonderful to represent the United States of America. Uh, thank you and congratulations.
All right, thank you for the Listening and Learning Tour update. Next, teaching, oh, Dr. Flores.
I also want to congratulate you for, for that. It's an honor. And I hope you do, I know you will represent as well in terms of that. And I know that our, we've worked on this mental health for a long time. And, uh, so using, you know, our, our, uh, our model and, and so forth will be great, because it, it is, it is a teamwork. I mean, it has been a team effort, uh, from our employees and also Board Direction, uh, in terms of supporting that. So, um, you know, I know you'll represent as well. Thank you. And then in terms of the strategic planning, I just wanted to clarify, um, is that, is that for the teaching, learning, or is that, what are, what, what's the focus of the strategic planning? Because we have in place, um, you know, we, we have in place our, um, key indicators already. Uh, so what will be the focus of the strategic planning, uh, that, that you all have in mind? I'd like to know.
Very good question, Dr. Flores, and we want to be sure that we honor.
You're gonna answer it?
I'm gonna answer it, yeah. We're gonna honor the work that's been going on in the district, right? So wouldn't be, it would not be okay just pretend like there hasn't been, it would not be okay to pretend like there hasn't been a lot of work that's been going on over the years, right? So the plan with this, this strategic planning is to take all the data, as you said, that has, that, um, Mr. Irvin has accumulated during the Listening and Learning theme, all of that, and then look at the history of what's been in San Bernardino City. So the Community Engagement Plan two point O. We plan on looking at the, um, our Basics for Excellence, because what Mr. Irvin wants to see coming out of all of this are clear values, mission, vision for the district, and then goals that will include teaching and learning, but not solely teaching and learning. So teaching and learning, probably something around wellness, because we know that that's a big need, always a continued need, um, as, especially as people are learning more about it, but it's just been a, a very clear focus.
We're gonna support our programs like ASAP that we have already in place.
Exactly. And, and just strengthen, deepen, refine if need be, based off of the data. And then, if it's been something that's in the Community Engagement Plan, and yet we're still hearing that, that, that's a need, then it'll be our responsibility to dig deeper to see, okay, so where's the gap? If we're saying this was in Community Engagement Plan, and, and we're still hearing it a need, then there's obviously a disconnect. So we need to go deeper with that. So it'll be in alignment of, and then, um, deeper coherence.
Because we want to, we want to continue to make sure that we look at what's been done previously, because what, what we're really doing is taking all that in, in information and building upon what the district's already done, and how do we accelerate or enhance? So there may be, because remember, we gotta look at the, the three-year plan, the strategic plan, as you know, is three years. So we have to look at what does it look twenty through, two through twenty-five, so all that feedback that we've received. We're gonna try to make sure we do the strategic plan, and we want to look at what we've done in the past, what we're currently, the input that we've received, and how do we make sure we build the plan going forward? But remember, those emerging themes that we bring to the board, those are just short-term goals for this year. We're not, it's not gonna be like forever or long-term. These are short-term themes. This is what we have. These are overarching goals for this year only. Knowing that we gotta get to the strategic plan to, to, to look at those emerging themes.
I highly recommend that we include our unions all the way, that we include our leadership members of our unions, so that they, um, are part of it and that we have their input and, uh, you know, genuinely, uh, practice collaboration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and we'll move to the Teaching and Learning update.
Okay, thank you. So good evening once again, Board. The focus for Ed Services has really, um, fallen on total curricular alignment. And what I mean by that is making sure that our, um, curriculum guides, our assessment, our instructional strategies, they're all in alignment with our academic priorities, which you'll be hearing more about, um, at one of the later board meetings. As you know, we did implement the new district-wide assessment system, MWEA. And we had our fall administration with over ninety-five percent participation, which is great. All of our schools participated. All of our students were tested in reading and math, and we did bring you the results on October fifth. Our winter administration is around the corner. Will begin in January, so we'll have some comparable data to see how our kids are doing. We are also in the middle of implementing our curriculum guide, Scope and Sequences. They contain an instructional pathway that's pretty well laid out for, for all of our students in the district and all of content areas. They include the grade level standards in all the content, pacing, assessment, modifications for our diverse learner groups, like English learners, special ed students, and all of our other groups. And, um, we really anticipate collaboratively working with our teacher groups, our advisory committees, to get feedback on these units. This is the first year that we're gonna really strive for full implementation. And so along the way, we want our teachers to, to give us feedback, and our site leaders to see what's working, what we need to improve, so that next year, we can get even better. And then along with that, our professional development, as we know, it's been a struggle, because we know that, um, our teachers are, you know, busily teaching, and we don't have as many subs as before. Dr. Funches has done an excellent job getting our subs, and, and it's been challenging to pull our teachers. So we're really working to streamline our professional development around our academic priorities, making sure that we are working with our site leaders. We have the Administrative Leadership Institute. The focus there has been on professional learning communities and bringing in those academic priorities as well. Then we do the same type of training for the vice principals, and then we do it for teachers as well. So everybody's getting the same type of PD around our priority areas. We're really trying to streamline all of that. And so that has been pretty much our, um, focus beginning the year. And we hope to, again, bring you more information about the academic priorities in some of the future board meetings. Thank you.
Mr. Tillman?
From a practical perspective, um, let's say a fourth grader, for instance. I say fourth grade because I'm assuming they still learn their multiplication and timetable in the third grade. So we're coming in now, and I'm assuming we did some benchmarking or test to see where students are at right now?
That's correct, yes.
And if the students didn't learn what they would have normally learned in the third grade, what are we doing?
The schools provide a structure where they can pull students based on the, the academic areas that they need to then, um, refine. So some schools have learning labs, where they have a time dedicated during the day where they pull students in small groups to really teach them those, those skills. Other schools do, um, inter-grade level changing of students, making sure that they're also helping them with those skills that they haven't learned. They have before and after-school tutoring. Some schools have Saturday school. Uh, we're really looking at a, a pretty heavy-duty comprehensive intercession during winter break, also during spring break. So schools have structures in place where they're pulling smaller groups of students according to need on top of the regular teaching.
Based on the enterprise-wide or district-wide data, can you say that in elementary school, there's been a twenty percent, fifty percent learning loss compared to a normal year in terms of comparison to the previous school year, compared, compared to a normal school year?
It can bring you percentages. I don't really want to guess. We do know there's been heavy learning loss. Um, but I can bring you exact percentages compared to other years that we can look at.
Is it that by the time we get to the end of the school year, that the students will be caught up? Or we're saying that it's gonna take years to catch up?
Our hope is to catch them up and accelerate as much as possible. Realistically, we're looking at a couple of years.
And, and the grading, because I had a parent contact me today, I had a concern that, um, if they're, if they didn't learn everything they're supposed to learn in the third grade, then when they get to the end of the fourth grade, are there grades we measure based on where they're at in terms of knowing the curriculum for the fourth grade? Or is it gonna be that they'll get credit for learning from where they're at now and progressing, and they'll get the credit for progressing, but to give them a passing grade?
Right now, the good thing with the state is that now, it's not only a status model that grades them based on where they're supposed to be by grade level. The state has actually come out with a new, um, grade, well, grading model or assessment model, where they show you whether that child has had a year's growth or not. So what's good about NWEA is it shows you that based on their level, where they are, whether they're a grade level below, two grade levels below, it'll tell us, did they make a year's growth from where they were? But then it'll also tell us, how far are they from grade level? So we get kind of two indicators there. And so the hope is that we can set some aggressive goals, so that when students are getting instruction in the classroom, and then also getting instruction outside of the classroom, we can be a little bit more aggressive about setting their goals, so that we can try to close that gap as much as possible. So we'll know where they're at. So we'll know where they are at their level, and we'll also know how far they are from their grade level.
I guess the thing I like to be able to communicate with confidence is that we're being realistic and the students are not gonna be won't have to suffer consequences.
Penalized, you mean?
Because of the, the pandemic education, if that makes sense. Do I have, should I have the confidence to say that?
Yes, you will. Because we do wanna take them from where they are and grow them as much as possible, but also be aware of where they should be grade level-wise. We're gonna be working on both.
I would just caution the messaging, because as soon as a teacher tells the parent that your student is not at the grade level they should be at, and then say that a lot of it was because of the COVID experience, they have to reassure that the student in this school year will only be graded on the growth they make from where they're at now and to the end of the school year. You have to make sure that the.
Thank you. That's correct. And more than ever, we do have that type of data, which is why we went to that assessment system. So thank you.
That'd be great. That way I can assure the parent that it's a fair process in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And adding on to what Mr. Tillman, in that same question was, the, and I think Ms. Medina, somebody might have reached out to you about just making sure when students are out because of the pandemic, you know, the COVID time periods. And I know that it keeps coming up about students, you know, it could be three weeks they're, they're out. But then if they didn't get their participation, then their grade is dropped. And, you know, that, that's a, you see a F, you know, you feel some kind of way. And so we want to encourage, you know, whatever the, I don't know if there was a change of policy or whatever is being said to our teachers, but it's just important to recognize that they're, they're out kind of no fault of their own. And to penalize them there, we'd have to know that ahead of time. And we're getting close to the end of, you know, like a semester, and they're talking about that. Parents are truly concerned about that.
Yeah.
We gotta bring clarity around that because, but I will say, Mr. Tillman, and I know we're gonna go to Mrs. Rosales Medina though. I agree with, so, so, Mr. Medina, I think you've raised some good points. So one of the things that we know that when we did the NAIAE assessment, remember, we're gonna be looking at growth. So a student could be at a 3.1 just when they took the assessment, right? But by the end of the year, if that student's at a 3.6 or 3.7, he or she has still shown growth. We still have to celebrate that growth, maybe because we know it's been challenging. The second thing, you know, and I mean, Mrs. Applegate is right. We do have the universal access structure, and we're gonna continue to provide teachers with supports around those strategies. But as I'm visiting classrooms, a large number of schools do have learning labs. A lot of them do have structures and systems in place where they're pulling students based on that data. They've already identified those students who are struggling grade level, either in literacy or math. And they have that universal access time or that block of time where they're providing the supports that those students need. And I gotta be honest with you, Mr. Tillman, it looks pretty good out there. And I know tomorrow I'll have a chance to take, I think a few people are going with me tomorrow on the visit. So Mr. Tillman, Mr. Rosales Medina, if any time, any of you, any board member wanna join us, please do. But we're gonna get there. But I do agree that we're not gonna punish the kid because of that, that, that learning loss. And secondly, to your statement, I do think that we gotta continue just to be thinking about how do we make sure we're providing students? So for example, I have an example where my daughter was out ill, and it was 10 days, and we had to go back and forth. Again, the teacher's made sure that she got the work that she needed. She had to be online. So our, our teachers are very good at making sure that students get the support and the work that they need when they're out ill. And so that happened even in my case. So, but I don't, I didn't see them penalize her as a result on the grade. They just said, you need to turn this work in. She was able to turn in the late work and so on. So our teachers are being flexible out there. And I think the team, I don't think we've heard anyone really upset or parents. We didn't get, having getting a lot of calls or complaints about parents when their kids are out. I mean, we've gotten calls, but not a lot of calls, right? Okay.
And Ms. Rosales Medina?
And I appreciate you using that as a, as an example, because it's, I guess what I was gonna go with and mention with Ms. Applegate is, is this happening across the board? And, you know, you know, that's a great example, you know, what they're providing, what they provided your daughter, is that happening across the board? And there's elementary, there's middle school, and there's high school. And so there's different levels too. And then there's even a high school, a teacher has, you know, how many classes and plus how many students? So it, I'm curious to see how that's really, what that really looks like. And if we haven't started that across the board in every level, then what are we gonna do? And I, and I'm glad that you have a plan set, but I'm wondering, you know, if we have already started it, what levels have we, you know, what capacity has it been done? And then how do we make sure that all school sites are, are, you know, providing those, those support systems as well?
Oh, I'll, I'll take a stab at that. So we have trained teachers at all grade levels at all school sites around how to use Google Classroom to be able to engage students when they are out. We have point of contacts at every school as well through specialized programs. Usually at the high schools, it's like the CalSafe teacher. And then at other schools, they've designated a teacher who will have to facilitate the short-term independent study as necessary. So that is across the board. We've given time for teachers during their MOU time within the last two months to be able to set up those Google Classrooms, to be able to upload work. Ed Services has provided supports as far as scope and sequence and materials for students so that teachers wouldn't have to just keep generating and generating information for students. So there's been a variety of things that have been done. And personally, I've, I've had the opportunity as three of my family members had been on quarantine. And they were able to access, one is in middle school and two are in elementary. And they were also able to utilize Google Classroom for their assignments at two different schools.
Thank you so much for that. And I know it's gonna be an additional to that, but I totally blanked out. But it'll come back to me. Thank you for that.
Okay, Ms. Seviles?
But just to kind of quickly chime into that, listening to the conversation, I think one of my biggest concerns is not the accessibility that the students have for the work when they're out, but the ability of them to engage in the work, right? And so just like we're not expecting teachers or staff members to work when they're quarantined, I wouldn't expect students to work when they're in quarantine, especially if they're sick, right? And so making sure that we are, you know, providing that, that grades to the students as well in terms, you know, how does that look, especially to our secondary students where they have, you know, grades to, you know?
Good question. So at the, so we are with you in the sense that if a student is sick and they have their COVID or whatever it is that they're sick, we're not expecting them to be caught up on their work daily. Cause they know, you know, they're in bed and they're not feeling well. There's, there's issues. Well, students who are on quarantine, they are not ill. And so there is an expectation that they're logging in every day. Now, they may not be able to complete the volume of work because, you know, it's intermittent, there's other things going on in their home. But our teachers are making allowances for late work. And so even at the secondary level. Personally, I've seen where grades do drop, and then when the student returns, they're able to get the help that they need, turn in the work, grade goes up. But our teachers have been very understanding, and I think that kind of adds to just their stress level of what can they do and how can they do more to support the students who are out? So, you know, as we're noticing kind of trends in complaints, haven't seen that. Seen other types of complaints, but not necessarily that a student is failing and that they're not working with them. So that's positive. And if we do get those, we do reach out to the school to, to rectify that. And I've even personally gone to schools with a parent to engage with the, with the principal to make sure that they get what they need.
That's good. And I highly encourage that in the next town hall for clarity on that. Some more, Ms. Rosales Medina?
And I just remembered the question. So it was regarding monitoring. So now that we have this, you know, this is what we're doing, we have the teachers trained, we have everything, you know, aspect. How are we monitoring? Cause one thing is we set out and do, and this is what everybody's supposed to be doing, but yet it may fall through the cracks and some are not doing it, or, or, I don't know. I just need to do a process and monitoring.
So there are logs. So whenever there is a student who is placed on a short-term independent study for those up to 14 days, there is a master agreement that needs to be signed by both the school and the parent. And so we do keep track of that and keep track of the amount of time that a student is on the short-term independent study. We have been showing a lot of grace because COVID isn't five days or 10 days. It could be 30 days, you know? So we have to really be flexible with that. Even though the, the guideline's saying 14 days, we have to look at the law and the spirit. And we wanna make sure that students have what they need, especially when they're sick. So we are monitoring the number of students who are on, on short-term independent study. We also monitor with having artifacts. So students do have to turn in, teachers have to turn in a sample of work to make sure that students are doing what they're supposed to be doing during that timeframe. And so the, it's not within the virtual academy. It's within a short-term independent study and specialized programs in Atlas. We do have a coordinator, also a program specialist, who helps to coordinate that. So there are systems in place. Volume has slowed down some. And like I said, we haven't, we haven't noticed a surge. And so we, we hope that we have a handle on it because it hasn't really spiked and we haven't really heard an outcry of concerns.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. And we will now go to anti-bullying update and strategies.
Thank you. I wanna acknowledge Mrs. Rosales Medina in her inspirational message. I wanna say this morning, earlier this afternoon, to really highlight that bullying has no place in our schools and we're not gonna tolerate that. And so I wanted to report to you what we have found so far. Again, just to make sure that, that we have an issue with it, but it may not be as pervasive as maybe we think it is. So since the beginning of the school year, we have 102 cases that have been reported to the district. And that's out of 46,862 students. And that equates to 0.2% of district students. So one case is one case too many. And so we are addressing those situations as they have been reported to us. Out of those 102 cases reported, 60 of those reports have been deemed as conflict. And so there's a different way to respond to those concerns because by definition, they're a little different. And so we have deployed the bullying intervention team, as well as some of the directors and cabinet members to various school sites. So we have been to approximately 25 schools to work through these bullying concerns. The undercover anti-bullying team is a strategy that we've been using as our signature intervention. And basically, we stay with the case until the student who's been bullied rates the problem as a zero, meaning that they're no longer being bullied at the school. So it isn't just, you know, have the conversation, everything's fine, shake hands and we're gone. But it's really a methodical, deliberate way to make sure that the student who's being bullied, because it's all about their perception, that they feel safe at school. And so that's what we've been using for, for bullying cases. And then we have also been using restorative mediation for our conflict mediation situations. We have, we have rated that to be one of the most successful strategies that we have implemented so far. All counselors in the district have been offered the training, and over 60 counselors who have actually been trained. We have over 100 counselors. So we continue to offer and support those counselors. And then if there's schools who have a deficit in that, we are deploying the anti-bully team to those schools. We're also monitoring social media. And so we know that many of these cases are being reported by families, by parents, other concerned community members. And so we are monitoring social media. And as soon as we find out that there is a situation, we are launching the anti-bullying intervention team. As we're looking at the volume of cases, we are looking at how do we create a more robust system of intervention? So we're recruiting expert counselors throughout the district because we have a lot of cases at the beginning of the year. And so to kind of create a team across the district that will deploy at different school sites. Because right now, the capacity is not that robust. And so as I mentioned earlier, with that response of positive youth development counselors, Swiss counselors, and counselors within the school district, we've been able to, to work through those. And as I mentioned earlier, cabinet and directors have been working with principals, holding town hall meetings, and really responding as best we can to make sure that parents feel safe, that kids feel safe, and that they're listened to, and that we're gonna do something about it. So we actually have done a couple of school visits where we're engaging with students from TK to sixth grade to make sure that they understand that bullying does not have any place at schools, but also to really show kindness and civility. So it's really been something that's been very special, to see the babies being kind and being respectful. It, it's really something that has been really fulfilling and eye-opening for me. So that's our anti-bullying report.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
I know there's two aspects to it too. There's the, the one being bullied and there's the student that is bullying. And sometimes there are students that, you know, grew up in environments, well, that's all they know. And so I, I guess it's, is that what you're referring to? Is that we're also working in that kind of council, the counselors that are kind of special-trained in those areas to work with those students that maybe might have a little bit more trauma? And, and that's their, that's their, you know, what's, how they protect themselves. And, and it's not the right way. So I'm just making sure that, and it seems like we're doing that as well with those that are doing the bullying.
Yes. So looking at it as a holistic view, we know that there are students who are being bullied and the bullies. And as you mentioned, in fact, one of the cases that we're dealing with, you know, the, the student who was the bully was experiencing some extreme trauma in their home life. And so when we find that and we're, as we're digging deeper, we are referring them to additional counseling more than what we do within the district. So whether we're utilizing Victor Community, you know, the county services, so that is also another layer to that. Because it's, bullying is not just a one-person situation. Usually it's a community. Because you have the bully who might recruit three or four other people. And so it's, it's not just one. So we do have to look at it holistically so that we can fix the problem and not just put a Band-Aid on it.
Oh, and, and, and just to add with that piece, are we also looking at cases where we see a student, and this could be either bullying, non-bullying, or just maybe something going on at home, where students are doing well and all of a sudden they start to regress? Or they start to, I mean, their grades are starting to fall? It could be bullying, or it could be something going on at home, or it could be, we don't know what the situation. Are we creating, and I, and I've heard this from Redlands Unified School District, one of the parents over there. It says, over there in Redlands, they have, if they see a student all of a sudden decline in something, they try to find out what's going on. Either at home, or maybe health issues, or a parent no longer has a job, so they have to, and so there's several things going on. And they have an alert system, and they have someone that's really reaching out to them. Do we have something like that in our school district where we're able to, you know, really analyze what's going on with the student?
So that would be something that's separate from bullying. And so our teams are working through MTSS to be able to address students and needs as they see dips in student performance. Our teachers are also implementing SEL strategies where they're having students be more self-aware of how they're feeling and be able to express how they're feeling. And so those are some things that we're doing as a pervasive across the district to find out how are kids feeling? If it's consistent that they feel sad, consistently that, you know, they're angry, then the counselor will come in and provide additional services like pull-out groups. Maybe there's some grief counseling. If it's something that's more pervasive, again, we'll bring in outside providers. It is something that is in progress and really dependent on how the teacher is interacting and observing the student. But once the student has been identified, then support is provided.
Ms. Seviles?
And so just really quickly, I am quite familiar with the anti-bullying, especially the program that you mentioned that they do. It just slipped my mind right now, and I'm very familiar with it. Yes, the undercover, thank you. Only because I got a chance to shadow the ladies for a couple of months, actually, as they were going through it. And I really got to see the ins and outs of, you know, how they go about doing some of the, some of these interventions across different schools, across the different grade levels. So not. So not just something that works in the lower, you know, elementary, but it also really works in the middle school and high schools. So just really want to commend, you know, especially Dr. Rykandova's department and the two ladies that I kind of shadowed, you know, or followed around for a couple months were Ms. Myers, Michelle Myers and Stephanie Fletcher. And so I personally would like to see more attention to programs like these because, like I said, I was able to witness firsthand the way they went about doing it. And it's very, very restorative, it's very like, you know, through the steps. So it's, they're counseling the students, they're walking, you know, the students through the whole process. They're creating this environment of support. So even after they leave, they're leaving the students with, you know, the tools and stuff. So I really enjoyed it. And, you know, hopefully in the near future, we can bring some of these programs and maybe expand them, because I do know that they were, you know, very, very heavily impacted. They, the work was too much, right? So, you know, just really encourage fellow board members to look into some of these areas because I think that, me personally, these kind of services is what I want to also see expanded.
Thank you, and I'll pass on the kudos to the Positive Youth Development Team. They work hard, they love their work, and I'm just really proud to represent them because they do have a care consideration and a deep commitment to this work. And so it's their calling, and it definitely shows. So thank you for that.
You know, they're doing a great job, and it was a good thing. I remember the last time we saw them when we were in person and able to do that, they were even teaching other districts. Other districts were, you know, were adopting what we were doing here. So thank you for that. Our last update is the custodial staffing strategy.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. I'll give a brief overview and update of what we're trying to do to continue to augment our custodial workforce and to bring a little bit more clarity around what we're doing in terms of cleanliness and disinfecting in our schools. And I want to thank Dr. Flores for speaking up during our last board meeting, asking cabinet to do something. It's our job to figure out what to do in terms of moving forward with addressing some of the concerns that we've heard. And so I'd like to just share a brief four points. As you know, cleaning and disinfecting, they're the strong components of a layered COVID-19 mitigation system or mitigation strategies. And our goal, board, is to augment our custodial workforce so that we can ensure that our daily absences, because that's what it boils down to most of the time. As a large district, we're going to have vacancies, people come and go. But what exacerbates our issues right now are some of the absences when custodial workforce have to call in, and there may not be subs to cover. We want to make sure that we augment our custodial workforce. And if you've seen, if you are familiar with our recruitment event that we had with the Personnel Commission on Saturday, that was a part of this effort to engage our community and bring on staff. So our plan, board, is to hire at least 20. We'll start with 20 limited-term custodial substitutes, which will be deployed from maintenance and operations on a daily basis where they are absences. For example, if a high school has one absence not covered, and we prioritize that high school, we'll deploy that limited term or substitute custodian to that school so that we can cover that absence, so that the disinfecting and cleaning can still take place. And then the district is also focusing on cleaning our classrooms and restrooms at our schools over the winter holiday break as well, meaning a modified version of that summer deep cleaning. We plan to go in during the winter break and do a modified version of the cleaning in the classrooms and restrooms so that when our educators return, they will see that that has been done. So the 20 limited-term custodial substitutes that are being hired right now, we're in the process of that, that may take a few more weeks to get them all onboard. It will be deployed to our school sites where we need to cover vacancies, right, or daily absences. And then the winter months, cleaning our classrooms and restrooms so that we can attend to those concerns. That's a short-term goal right now for us as we continue the hiring and continue the training for our custodians in terms of disinfecting and cleaning.
Thank you, Dr. Funches. Ms. Rosales Medina?
It was, thank you for that update, and I'm glad that we're looking at the 20 limited-term substitute custodians. And I appreciate the things that you're planning to do by January and so forth. I did, you know, we heard during public comment that there was a concern that there's MNO managers that are being hired. And of course, it creates a perception as well. So, and I didn't get a chance to clarify, so I'm trying, want to clarify with you what's going on in that aspect.
Understood. Right now, there are three supervisor custodial positions. And the district at this time are in negotiations with CSCE to transfer custodial oversight from our school site principals to MNO. Meaning, MNO supervisors would have oversight over custodians so that we can help train them and oversee them better. Because one of the things that we have right now going on, we have a variance of oversight and training from site to site. For example, we have, we may have one site leader that has different expectations than another. And in order to mitigate that, we'd like all those custodians to be under MNO. But that's, that's down the road, we're in negotiations with CSCE around that. In terms of those positions, we heard the board loud and clear, when we're creating management positions, bring them to board for discussion and approval. So those positions that were discussed tonight, they were in the process of being recruited for. We did pull those back under the direction of myself and Mr. Sullins because we did let the board know that we would bring those positions forward for discussion and/or approval management position. So even though they spoke of those tonight, those positions are on hold until we bring them forth.
And thank you for clarifying, because I think some of the confusion was, is the process of what was going on. Like, for instance, it wasn't that, you know, positions were being created, they were going through the Personnel Commission, then they come back to the board for approval, and that's where we kind of have the intention to say, right? So I think, and I'm glad that you're putting a pause on that, but I think that's what was going on. Maybe people started hearing that there's this positions being flown?
Yeah.
Or however you're framing it? Because I think the process was in reverse versus how it was done before.
So past, thank you, Ms. Medina. In past practice, in this district, from what I understand, in the time I was a director in HR, we went through the process of flying positions, going through the Personnel Commission to get the job descriptions written, and then go through the process of interviewing and such, and then bring them to board. Now that we do have the board's understanding, hey, we want to make sure, you requested that cabinet bring them to board, talk through them, review the job descriptions for management positions, we are in line with doing that.
Thank you, and I appreciate the district moving in that direction.
Dr. Flores?
Thank you, Dr. Funches. I know 20 isn't enough, but it's a good start. Do you, do you think that we may need more than 20?
Dr. Flores, we may need more than 20. We're going to start based on the data that we see with our absences and our fill rates. We feel like with the 20, we can prioritize elementary schools because our secondary schools have more than one or two custodians. And then we'll see what the data tells us, and if we need to move forward, we will, right now, using the Esther funds, we identify 20 as the availability.
You know, a high school versus elementary, I mean, is a big difference. I mean, the workload is huge, very, very, very different. So just, you know, I just, I'm glad to hear that, that if we need more, then we'll get more. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Ms. Viles?
And just really quickly, I wanted to kind of go back off of what Ms. Medina was saying in terms of the positions for management for MNO. First of all, you know, I want to appreciate you putting those on hold, listening to the board's direction, you know, of bringing them, you know, before the board first. But I also want to make sure that, so in previous board meetings, you know, we've heard community members, parents, teachers come before the board or reach out to different board members and really share their concerns about the lack of alignment of custodians cleaning, especially during COVID times, right? So when I heard about these new management positions, of course, the first thing I thought was, okay, you know, alignment of services, again, you know, across the board. So now that these positions are going to be put on hold, and I understand why, I just want to make sure that the intention is still being taken care of. So, you know, I know that you said that you're, you know, kind of going back and forth to try to see if we can move the responsibility from the principals, you know, to what would have been these new management positions. If these are on hold, though, we still need to make sure, and we need to be clear on who's going to be supervising, who, where, how, when, and, you know, all those details.
Sabios, we definitely will continue to work with CSCE on that piece right there, the transitioning of custodians from site oversight or school site oversight to MNO. And what we plan to do is bring the board that information, the job description, to talk through it in the coming weeks, so we're not delayed, so that we can definitely attend to the concerns of our parents, of our educators, of our staff that are saying, hey, we need to do a little bit better job cleaning and disinfecting and taking care of our school site. So we do hear you, we thank you for that, and we will bring that to the board.
Awesome, thank you, because the last thing we want is to, you know, get some of those complaints back. You know, trying to solve one, but then we unstabilize the other.
Understood.
All right, thank you, Dr. Funches, for the update. We are now, okay, 10.0 reports and comments, 10.1 board members. I wouldn't start with Mr. Tum, but I'll go ahead and go to Ms. Rosales Medina.
Board comments we're doing?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so yes, I do have actually two items that I will be speaking on. And I did pass this to, and I did give this to Ms. Dr. Sullins? Harold, and if I can pass these along to the other board members? Yes, well, to as many, I think all the board members. And so, and this is just so you can get clarity with the board update or the superintendent weekly update with the boards. So I had put in a request, and it was actually the facilities vendor piece, and with PCN3. And so it shows that there's a violation. And I guess one of my concerns was when a member of the public brought this to my attention, is that we approve agenda items when it comes to facilities construction, like for instance, there's Martin Luther King. There's, right now, they're working on Pacific. But yet, there's a violation, from my understanding, and that's why I wanted to get clarity, is there's a violation in the, let me read my comments here.
And this is, are you referring to a vendor?
Pre-qualifications, these are vendors.
Vendor.
Yeah, so these are construction vendors, the pre-qualification packet when they apply. And so there's a question there that they mark, have they had any violations? And there's a specific area within the application process or the pre-qualification packet. And I wanted to find out if they marked yes. If they didn't mark yes, then it shows that they are under violation. And the document that I just passed out, that's from EDD.ca.gov, and it could be found under the archived fraud convictions in 2018. So that's, just to give clarity, when you see that in the board update. Does that make sense? No?
No, when you say, when we update, are you asking, so when they kind of bring the construction vendors?
Well, they're currently working with the district, but the thing is that it seems as if they're in violation. So, yes.
You're talking about this?
Yes, the specific company.
This one, we would have to touch base offline.
Okay.
I don't think we can talk about it in a public setting.
Oh, no, you can't.
However, however.
Provided.
As an example?
I will touch base with you offline with Mr. Sullins, and we can get this cleared up, yeah.
Okay, and so I guess.
I hear what you're saying, though, I know what you're saying.
Well, I guess I'll try to push forward and really kind of, in the future, for any kind of, and I know that we are providing the contracts within the items, which is great, because now we have, where we can easily, I can go on to check on, a great example is on the consent calendar, and I could see the attachments or shows of contracts, I'm able to read through it. In the past, we weren't able to do that, so we can catch these violations. And I just wanted to make sure that with any contract that we do do, that we do the full research in making sure that we, what we bring to the board, it's something that is legit.
Mr. Sullins, were you getting ready to weigh in on something?
Yes, so we do have staff currently investigating this information because it is legal in nature, it takes a little bit more time. So what was included in the update was just an update to let the board know that we were working on this and that we would be bringing that information forward.
What I wanted to do was kind of give the board clarity, because it was very, it didn't really give specifics within the board update, so that's why I'm bringing this up.
And Dr. Flores?
I wanted to ask her, where did this appear? You just said it was on the board update, not, it isn't one of the items in the consent item, right?
No, 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 it wasn't. And so it was actually in the board update.
But we've already approved them.
Yes, we have, we have, but.
And they're in our district?
Yes, but this goes to any of the contracts as well, so we can really review.
So you're recommending that we thoroughly investigate them before we bring them to the board to make sure they're not having fraud claims?
Yes, and to make sure that we're following certain protocols where it comes to approval process. And that's with really looking at the pre-qualification packet when they do apply. Just in case there's another company, another contract out there that we, that they're not necessarily complying. But I just wanted to bring this to the board's attention, because I don't think in the, in the board update, it kind of specified what I was referring to. And so that's one piece. And I know the other piece, I've already spoken with Dr. Rogers, and she will be having this on the board agenda. So I'll just be brief, and this is regarding the.
Welcome Center?
The Welcome Center, the District Police Headquarters. And I guess what I, when I read that they're moving forward, I just wanted to get clarity with that, so I do appreciate Dr. Rogers bringing this up to a next board meeting. Or not, I'm not sure if this next board meeting, but.
I think we said the 16?
Okay, okay, good.
Okay.
And that's another, yeah, and that's another piece. And that's it, basically. All right, thank you.
Okay, and Dr. Flores, did you finish your other question, too?
Yeah, no, I have just two.
It's time for you, okay.
Two board comments. I know everybody's asleep, except us. And I just want to recognize our employees, our classified workers, our teachers, our administrators, our counselors, our school psychologists, our speech pathologists, our school police. These are hard times. Everybody is tired, everybody's, sometimes gets depressed. And there's a lot of stress on everybody. And I just hope that somewhere within us, that, you know, at each site, that you figure out how to, you know, lessen the stress. Maybe not do everything that you're supposed to do, maybe cut back on certain things. Because we have to take care of each other so that we can take care of our kids. And so I just want to thank you all for your effort, for the extra mile that you all go, and for our kids and our families. And then the second, and that's really sincere, it's from my heart, and I really appreciate it. A second recommendation is related to the kids from ICUC that came last time, related to the wellness centers. This is just my insight. I think that it would behoove us to do a three- and five-year strategic plan for wellness centers in our high schools, our middle schools, and then our elementary schools so that, you know, we engage. you know, we engage our community, we engage our kids, engage our nonprofits like ICUC, you know, all our organizations that cope, all our organizations that work with our families and our kids. And really, you know, map out a very, how would you say, doable plan, right? Not something Band-Aid, but something that, you know, is planned and is strategic. And I know that we're going to be applying, I hope, for the community schools money that will be coming down the pike. I don't know when the RFPs will be out, but that will be a pocket of money. And I believe that within the community schools, there is like a wellness, a mental, you know, health and wellness component in it, so that would be, you know, something that we could, I know, it's more work, but I know, but I think that, just, you know, to think ahead, perhaps, look at it, so that's it. Thank you very much.
All right, and Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning to everyone. One, congratulations, Doc, on being selected to represent our city and our district and our community at a national level, that is outstanding. And I had this written down as well, to go along with Dr. Flores was saying, and I do appreciate Mr. Irvin sent out an email asking us to establish a subcommittee on discussing wellness centers, and so I'm asking the board to agendize that formally, so we could have a discussion on moving forward with a plan, because I think we can do that right now, actually, and identify areas, you know, strategically throughout the city, so our families have access to those wellness centers. It's maybe not what we want on a larger scale, or maybe, you know, long-term, but there is, I believe, a short-term solution to it right now, to where we could start getting these wellness centers established. So that would, something I would be asked to have agendized, so we could talk about as a board on establishing that plan. There was discussion quite a few years ago, and I know this is pre-COVID, about possibly moving forward to develop NPR multipurpose rooms and gyms on our middle schools. And, you know, Mr. Solins, this might be a question for you, just to find out, you know, if there was an update on that, or is that something that maybe, you know, just went away, if it's something that we're still considering? So just wanted to inquire about that. And I will say, you know, we had a lot of folks come out and speak tonight on, you know, their belief systems and with how they feel about the vaccination. And, you know, I will say this, I do support freedom of choice, whether you want to get vaccinated or you do not want to get vaccinated. I know that it means a lot to people. It was a difficult decision in my home as well, and so I absolutely respect that. And I'm hopeful that, moving forward, that our staff, our families, our students, our community does have a choice. I know there's mandates in place, but I still believe that folks should have a choice, so those are my comments tonight.
Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. I just have a couple of, few short things, and I just want to say, Ms. Medina, Rosales Medina, I appreciate you bringing up the Personnel Commission. I think it's important for them to come here, and I don't know how many of you have been to a Personnel Commission meeting, but I think it'd give you a greater understanding of what happens and what happens with the hiring list and things of that nature. So hopefully, they can come and make a presentation, so I'm recommending that we also include them in one of our presentations. I had an opportunity yesterday morning to go to Aurora Valley High School, where I did a video for the African-American Museum that's going to open in Riverside in March of 2022. And I also had an opportunity to attend FLI. Colonel Kikbush did a great job, but I also had a chance to talk to Stetman Graham, so Dr. Rogers can no longer say she's the only one who's talked, spoken with him. So now I've spoken with them also. And my last thing, I just want to say to Cabinet, Superintendent, parents, teachers, classified, everybody who works for this district and get a paycheck, we're proud of you, we want you to continue working for the district, and we hear you, we hear you loud and clear, so don't ever think we aren't listening. So with that, I just want to say thanks, and I'm keeping it short. I invited my brother and sister-in-law, who are visiting from Virginia, and I said, oh, this won't be a long meeting tonight, so they might put me in the trunk when I get ready to go home, because I know neither one would want to talk to me, so thank you, everybody.
Oh, my God. Ms. Abios?
Then I'll keep it short as well. Just really quickly, I want to second some of the comments that have already been made. I would also like, as Dr. Hill has mentioned and Ms. Medina, to, you know, bring the Personnel Commission to, you know, do a presentation. And I would also like to second what Dr. Wyatt has mentioned in terms of the Wellness Center, I think that I would like to get that also on the agenda, so that we can start, you know, getting on that sooner rather than later, even though it may not be exactly what we would want it to be, at least we can, you know, get started on that. And then also, also just want to congratulate again Mr. Irvin for his participation and, you know, selection to be part of the panel, and also congratulate Principal Benoit, I think it's how you pronounce her name, from Norton, as we've heard earlier, for her recognition. And what am I missing? Oh, also, just want to address, you know, the public that came out today and, you know, say thank you. As mentioned before, we are listening to your comments, and we do, you know, take them, and it resonates with us, you know, and they're always present when we are having to make those difficult decisions. I also want to just, you know, express, you know, gratitude and also share in the sentiment in regards to, you know, the whole vaccination and, you know, the freedom to be able to choose for yourself and so forth. I understand and I empathize as well. That's all I'm going to say about it, but, so thank you, everybody, for, you know, that came out earlier today, I know we're, everybody's gone already, but if you see tomorrow, thank you so much, and we appreciate you all.
All right, so, yeah, I'll be quick, too. Congratulations again, ditto on the congratulations, and I don't know if we had gotten it in on, I know the chief on the 20th will also be being recognized at the event with Roland Martin. So lots of awards in this district, and that's one of the things that make us great. We are on the radar of many, and the catalyst, I don't know what to say, is there anything left, Dr. Hill, to get? But you are definitely a catalyst for education, and we salute you for that, and we know, Doc, you will represent us well. And the Wellness Center came up again, too, and, you know, definitely, that's near and dear, and I'd love to be a part of that. I think that might look like a workshop board, rather than trying to just put it as an update at a board meeting. I think that warrants, looking at, you know, maybe we can start a little early like we did here, and just have a little bit more deep discussion, but I know you had sent something out to do something early on with the few individuals. And then in addition to, we heard you on the Personnel Commission, and I've asked also that our parent groups also rotate coming in, we haven't heard from them in a while, all of the groups, so I think we just got to get that calendar back going. The Personnel Commission at one point in time did used to come as well, and then our parents had started, but I think COVID just kind of threw us off in a crazy way. So if we can capture those back and get them calendared, then we'll know when those times are coming up. And then lastly, to the board, on the 20th, ironically, we were looking to have a morning retreat, but I'm also asking, if it's possible, then we can move it as late as to do it, like four to seven, or, you know, something like that, or five to eight. So I'll have Karen send it out to you again. We're definitely being mindful of the holidays, so we don't get you, and I know a couple of board members had concern with the earlier time, but it won't be long, it won't be a long workshop, but just give us a few hours. So I'll send that back out to you all, and if you could please respond, I would appreciate it. And I think that is it for me, and we're now going to move to 10.2 Superintendent Irvin and Stan.
Okay, I'll try to keep it brief. Congratulations to San Andreas High School, they were the first school in the nation, actually, to earn the Premus Global Food Safety by the Riverside Food System Alliance. So that's incredible, and actually, in the direction of the demonstration teacher, Barbara Passachet, they're actually selling to local restaurants and businesses, so that's a good thing. And then also, UC Riverside was awarded the five-year renewal by the U.S. Department of Education for their Educational Talent Search. So that grant, they'll continue to work with the high schools specifically, Aurora Valley, Indian Springs, San Bernardino, Pacific, and then San Gregorio, and that's a $1.6 million grant, and they're going to work with almost 592 students. And then, I'm sure no one's up at almost one, but I'm going to say it anyway, and I'll probably put it out in the parent square, but we got to remind our families who are starting the planning for their kids to start Kinder and transitional Kinder for next school year, they can start enrolling November 8th, and I know, Ginger, we're going to be doing a huge campaign, because we really need to get our enrollment up. And I know that this may not be important, but it is, tomorrow morning, we're going to be visiting Kendall Elementary School at 9:00 a.m., for those of you who are still going to join me at 9:00 a.m. We'll be up at 7:30, but, I mean, we'll be in the office at 7:30, but also, we'll be at Hillside Elementary at 10:00, and then we'll be at Selena's Elementary at 11:00 a.m. tomorrow. So I know we have several board members going, but those who are not going tomorrow, if you're interested in the future, just let me know, and we'll get you on that schedule so you can join us to visit the classrooms, again, because there's a lot of good quality teaching and learning going on that's taking place. And I think it's important for us, at some point, to begin to continue to showcase that, because regardless of the pandemic, our teachers have come back and our staff, and they're hitting it head-on. They're going strong, and so that is really good news out there. And on the Wellness Centers, yeah, you know, I think, you know, I have some experience with Wellness Center from the past, and I do think that, looking at what we can do here in the district, because it came up, I do think, because I think, Ms. Medina, Rosales Medina, you said it was like five years, or someone said it was five years we've been talking about it. I really think, though, that, because I know I'm always, people always say I move too fast, but I do think that the Wellness Centers, we actually can do, we can move on that one. I think, you know, I talked with Harold a little bit, I talked with Sam, there's things that we can do to map out a three-year plan, maybe a two-year plan, to really look at Wellness Centers regionally. It's not impossible, I mean, we got to look at the funding, we would have to look at the systems and structure, it fits really good with the model we're looking at, so I think there's a way to do it. I think that, though, that the board has to be really committed to saying, we're going to do this, and then we have to commit to getting together, talking it through, hashing it out. But I do think it's possible to get it done sooner than later, but again, it'll really take some serious planning at the highest level, starting here at the board, the Superintendent Cabinet, and then obviously, we got to get on the ground with our staff, because they're going to be on the ground working with us, we got to get to the schools, so there's a way to do it. And I hope if the board is really serious about it, I think it will be a really good thing for the community. And usually, a community has one or two a district, but I think there's a way for us to really put one, and even looking at our high schools, there's a way to do it. So I just want to throw that out there, it's not impossible, but it is going to take some planning and prepping, but I'm confident that, and it may also help us with recruitment, it'll also help us with students feeling that, I mean, because it could be a hub of social emotional wellness support, you name it, dental care, you talking about vision care, you can get a lens craftsman in there, there's a lot of things you can do with a Wellness Center. And so I was excited about it last week when we talked about, I think we talked about it a week ago. So if you're interested, and when we talk about it, let's talk about it, because that's a good thing, and the community will rally around something like that. So anyway, that's all I had. I know it was 1:00, and people just like, yeah, it's time to go.
Thank you, and I feel to say acknowledgement to the Police Department, I think in their coordination with San Bernardino PD, we had, you know, one of our elderly community members that had dementia, they think it was, and was lost, and was out, wandered into one of our schools. And, you know, that just is something, because I have family members that are experiencing that as well, and what you guys did, that was awesome. The last report I saw, that she was back home safe, so that was just good, so thank you all for that. Action items, we are now at 11.0, 11.1, approval of the Personnel Report Number Nine dated November, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Flores, did I miss you? Did you?
On this item.
I got you. November 2nd, 2021, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations.
As presented.
Is this when I asked for the three items we pulled?
They're going to.
What do we do first?
Because you're going to vote, your vote, but they didn't.
No, I want to pull three items.
Okay, so on the action item on this one?
Yes.
Okay.
On page 45, I thought it was only two, but it's three. I would like to pull, so we can have discussion, Executive Assistant Deputy to the Deputy Superintendent, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent, and Information Technology Security Manager. I would like to pull those.
I would second it.
Okay, was there a motion? Did I hear a motion? I don't think I heard a motion yet, so are you making a motion?
I'm moved.
So, yeah, so this is what I'm asking, because we can vote on, and you said you were going to, but when we get to the discussion part, because you're not pulling it off, we're still going to move forward with the vote, but you're going to have discussion on those particular ones, right? Not taking them off completely, or are you requesting to take them off?
I thought we could do it like we do our, like we do our consent calendar.
No, this is different, this is, you're pulling a time report, if you pull anybody off the report, that person wouldn't work tomorrow morning. It doesn't work that way.
So we have to vote first, and then we have the discussion?
Right, on those particular ones that you want to discuss.
I just wanted to clarify, only because I was listening to.
We have discussion first. I mean, we have a motion and a second, or no?
We don't, no.
Oh, then we should have a motion and a second, then discussion.
That's what I'm trying to get to, first, because Abigail said second, so I was asking, is it just, is a motion now and a second, and then we'll go into the discussion?
Oh, I see.
That's what I'm asking, is yours, do you want to be a motion?
Well, I could motion, so we can have a discussion, so it's, we need a motion, and there's a second.
Yes.
Or I could be the second, however you want to do it.
I don't, just, she wants to know.
So Dr. Wyatt was, made the motion, I'll make the second.
Motion, too.
Okay, all right, so Dr. Flores, we are now, we have a motion and a second.
So on page 45, I want to discuss the Executive Assistant to the Deputy Superintendent, and the Executive Assistant to the Superintendent, and the Information Technology Security Manager. As Ms. Medina brought up about the MNO managers, this is the same situation. I want to make it visible to the public that even though, well, I'll say it this way, we as a board customarily approve all new positions, these are new positions, we get the description, the title, and so forth, and I know that they've gone through the Personnel Commission, and I don't think the Personnel Commission knows that we formally did not approve these. I know that we've agreed from this point forward that no new positions will go forward without board approval, Mr. Irvin, and you have agreed. So I, you know, I'm, how would you say, relieved that that is the protocol from this point forward, because it does impact the budget, because these are positions that are ongoing with benefits and so forth, and that's my discussion. And I want to, I want to make a statement, I will be voting no. I will be voting no because we did not, it did not come for board approval. That's just my position. I, I, I just want my colleagues to know that. Thank you.
If I can respond to that, Dr. Flores.
Ms. Rosales Medina, okay. Okay, you want to hear him first? You said, okay, go ahead.
Just wanted to make sure that I responded to Dr. Flores. I want to thank you for that. And I did just want to respond with our past practice that we've had in the district in terms of flying it through the Personnel Commission and then bringing it forward to the board. We follow that. And yes, moving forward, we'll make sure that we adhere to the wishes of the board in terms of bringing them and discussing them and such.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Okay, and so then here's my, my, I have some questions with regards to the positions. So are these, it seems like they're new refurbished positions. So I just want to know, before last week, how, or before, let's just an example, before the superintendent came on board, what did the positions look like for a superintendent? What do they have at their office compared to what we are looking at now as of today with these three positions?
Thank you, Mrs. Medina. Before Mr. Irvin came on, Mr. Marsden was in the seat. And his office consisted of superintendent's assistant, a secretary four, and a secretary one bilingual. And so under Mr. Irvin, when he came to restructure his office for what he needed, it would be an executive assistant, a bilingual clerk, and a secretary three. Similar makeup.
I'm missing one position. So before with Mr. Mar, Dr. Marsden, there was superintendent...
Assistant.
Assistant four.
Secretary four.
Yes, secretary four.
And then a secretary one, or secretary, bilingual secretary.
So there's, that's two.
That's three positions.
Okay, I didn't, I, I...
I can repeat.
I'm sorry, so maybe I just...
Yeah.
Missed one of them.
The superintendent's assistant. Then there's a secretary four that was in the office, and then a bilingual secretary.
Okay, and then currently, it is now, if we were to approve this, it's the executive assistant?
Yes, bilingual clerk, two, and then a secretary three.
So then the executive assistant is basically replacing the, the superintendent assistant?
Correct.
Okay, and is the salary any different?
The salary is different, Mrs. Medina.
Different?
It's different.
The salary is more.
All right, and, and the thing is that this is good for clarity, but the reality is, is, you know, for me personally as well, I do agree, you know, it didn't come before as board members. When you have like these movements and changes, especially now that it's a, a higher pay, I would also vote no, but that's just that way, the point of view. But I'm glad, thank you, Dr. Funches, for giving that clarity as well.
Welcome.
Dr. Hill?
Thank you. Have we ever had an executive assistant in that position, in that office?
We have not had an executive assistant in that office. We had a superintendent's assistant in that office, not executive. This position is designed to do more high-level work in terms of project management, in terms of professional development, and assisting the superintendent with high-level projects for classified workforce and the workforce in general.
Well, you know, one of the things when you hire someone new, they sure need a staff that they can work with, you know, to get the work done because we want the work to get done. And all assistants aren't the same. And if there's a need for this higher, higher level of work, I will, I will support these positions because again, we have one employee, and our expectation would be no more, well, yeah, a lot more, but certainly no less than what is happening now. So you, you know, it's almost like telling somebody, I want to, I want you to build a house, but I'm not gonna give you a hammer. And so, but some screwdriver might do. But I think in this case, the superintendent needs to have the support staff. And is there, is there a big difference in the pay?
So from the, the superintendent's assistant to the executive, it's probably about $8,000 annually.
Well, that's not a whole lot. Okay, all right, well, I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Clarify something?
Sure.
I just want to clarify that. When we went through this process, again, I just followed, I just typically, when we restructure something, I typically go to HR and work with them.
Right.
But again, when working with HR, they say, here's the practice in the district. So up until today, that's been the past practice for the last, I don't know how many years, probably during getting here, 20 years? So it's been a past practice, so. And I think you checked with Mr. Dr. Volkumer. Didn't you meet with him as you went through this process as well?
I did run some of our work by Dr. Volkumer, who...
So this has been a past practice. So I didn't do anything differently. I typically, I go to HR, I say, here's what I'm looking at, here's my thoughts. They take it from there. And then they go through the process. So I, and, and listen, we hire hundreds, hundreds of positions. I'm not sure why this position is special, but neither here nor there. I'm not gonna get into the, the, you know, I'm not gonna get into the minutia on it. But I will say though, I did follow the practice. And as a new superintendent, typically, most new, also new superintendent going into a new situation, a new, a new, a new district, always look at, how do, how do we make sure we take it to the highest level? So I'm good with it, and it's, it's as presented.
And I...
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Rosales.
And so I just wanted to, because I forgot to ask regarding the deputy superintendent because that's also is very, that's an additional position. So I guess I just want to clarify too, because I remember back when we were, you know, there was many positions with the previous, previous superintendent where they did bring us and we, they brought us positions to, to look at. And, and many times, we did not approve them. So in this case, I mean, it's, it's, had it been the same, I think it wouldn't have been an issue. You could have hired anyone you wanted to. But it is an, it's a higher position, meaning the changing, is to a superintendent assistant to executive assistant. So it is a tad different. Different title plus the pay increase, maybe not as significant, but it's still a, a pay increase. But I did want to clarify that with the previous superintendent, they would come to us board members. So I'm not sure, you know, the information Harold gave you is, I, I'm not sure what information he gave you. But from my knowledge, it was different. And then if you can clarify, with the deputy superintendent, there's that executive assistant as well. So what did it look like before Dr. Monarch has joined? And then what, what does it look like now?
So before Dr. Monarch was named as deputy superintendent, the deputy superintendent's office consisted of an administrative assistant, secretary three, and a senior clerk. That's what I'm aware of. And today, it would be the executive assistant that's there. Secretary three clerk. But we also have the superintendent's assistant that is serving the deputy superintendent at this time.
Okay. So then it's a similar situation where it's admin assistant to now executive assistant? Is that, is that the case? Or is that the senior clerk is what's different?
Right, so it would be the admin assistant, no longer, but an executive assistant.
All right, and then I know that one more, information technology security manager. Is that a completely new position for a department that didn't have an, any replacement of? Or if you can clarify for that one?
So this was actually a previously established position and budgeted position. This was a position that was intended to be established in response to the data breach situation so that we had a security manager that could oversee our, the security of our network to prevent likewise occurrences. So this was, again, a position that was previously established and approved during Dr. Volkumer's term, but had not yet been post or flown and filled. But it was included in the adopted budget.
Okay, so it was included, that's a little different. Okay, all right, thank you. Dr. Flores?
Mr. Sullins, I don't recall that we approved it. Do you know when it was approved?
I'd have to verify. My understanding is that this was previously approved during Dr. Volkumer's term. So I will...
I don't recall it, but, but could you find that out? And Mr. Irvin, the reason I stated what I stated, I just want to clarify again, that I spoke to two very successful superintendents that I know very well for many years. And they said that any, any new positions, whether they're classified or management, they would always bring them to their board because it would physically impact the budget. And, and if we had a Personnel Commission, of course, it had to be approved by the board first. And then we would, you would, Dr. Funches, like you did, move it to the Personnel Commission, and then it comes back to us for you to be able to fly and post the position, right? And so that's, that's the policy practice since I've been on the board since 2008 that we've conducted. And so that's why I brought it up. And, and now, moving forward, I'm good with it. We're gonna first bring it to the board, so majority board rules. And of course, we'll ask Mr. Sullins what impact on the budget it'll be, and then we move forward. So I just wanted to clarify all of that. Thank you.
Okay, so, yes, it's time to vote. Okay, good. So, and I, and I hope we got clarity on this because I, it is, you know, we, some, we, some we remember, some we don't. But we know under this leadership, we've established what it needs to be. So if there are no further discussion, let's go ahead and take the vote.
I'm sorry, I, I have one question. Could you tell us what we're voting on?
So we are voting on the personnel report in its entirety. After the discussion of the three, we didn't, they're not pulled off. They're involved in the same report. All right, so what, can I see? Okay, the motion passed, four to two. All right, 11.2, signature authority revocations?
11.2 is measure T.
Oh, sorry, I clicked. Approval of measure T and measure N bond, citizens oversight committee appointments? I heard, I heard.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. I never did, yeah. I, I never, no, I've never...
Barbara and Dr. Hill, Dr. Flores.
All right, we are ready. All right, motion carried, thank you. And we are now at the signature authority revocations of business services.
I'm moved.
I can't...
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? If not, we could go ahead and take the vote. All right, motion carried, and now we are at 12.0, consent items. Keeping in mind that 12.10 has been pulled already.
I'm moved.
Been moved in second. Is there anything to pull? If not, I'm not gonna ask you twice. No, not really. If not, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carried, thank you. We are now at 13.0, review of board requests, 13.1. And I believe that you, Ms. Antoveros?
Yes, it is. Thank you, President Rogers. So I captured a few requests from you this evening, starting with Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina, later echoed by Dr. Margaret Hill and Ms. Myra Sabios to request an update from the Personnel Commission. Dr. Barbara Flores asked that we would include a town hall for parents and incorporate union leadership into the planning process for the strategic planning as of, after the listing and learning tour. Mr. Danny Tillman asked that we have a comparison to prior years to identify the learning gap and that we would describe how we would ensure that students were not penalized for unfinished learning. And Dr. Rogers echoed that one as well. Ms. Myra Sabios asked if, that she would like to see programs like the undercover bully prevention program expanded in the district. Ms. Myra Sabios indicated that she would like us to bring information about how the new custodial structure would improve cleaning in our schools. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked for a review of the PCN3 pre-application package, and Mr. Irvin said he would follow up after the meeting. Ms. Barbara, I mean, Dr. Barbara Flores asked that we would create a three- and five-year strategic plan for wellness centers in our schools together with community organizations. Dr. Scott Wyatt asked that we would agendize a discussion about a board subcommittee about wellness centers, and Ms. Myra Sabios echoed that one. Dr. Scott Wyatt asked for an update on the middle school gymnasium construction project. Dr. Gwen Rogers asked that we would schedule updates for our parent groups. Dr. Barbara Flores asked for information about when the information technology security manager position was approved by the board and that we would bring positions forward to be authorized by the board moving forward.
And I do want to add to the, where the contractors' bids are being reviewed by the district, which is through the prequalification packet. Just making sure that we are doing that across the board if we're reviewing them for any violations.
And did you capture that, the possibility of the wellness centers being a workshop outside of just to...
I'll update that one, sure.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are moving now to closing. We're at 14, 14.0 and moving to 14, 14.1 adjournment. But I do want to remind the board members, we are here for the duration unless something comes up, and we all should know if something does come up. Hopefully, and I have been working, and Dr. Wyatt, we have been working with the cabinet members to try to streamline where we can, to try to, you know, avoid these late, 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 late nights if we can. So we'll go back at it, we'll look at it again. But perhaps, just so everyone knows that, you know, if we find ourselves in a, a longer discussion, we might need to create workshops as well, just so we can kind of streamline. Because we're really no good at this, this time of the night or the morning or whatnot. But again, so if the board members do have to leave, you know, it's important for us to know, you know, where we're at or what's going on.
Rogers, whenever we have long public comments, that's why our board meetings...
Yeah, tonight was, yeah.
This was unusual.
Yeah, but we added, yeah.
And then we also had long. So, and I thought it was important that we, we hold those long discussions. And here are our public, so it's unusual.
Yeah, we ran a few...
Otherwise, I think we would have been done faster.
Tonight probably would have around 9:30, 10:00. But just want everyone to know that we are doing our due diligence to try to, try to get back on task. All right, so 14.1 adjournment? All right, thank you so much. Good night, every... God bless you all.